All right, good evening, everyone. I like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Welcome, everyone. All right, this evening, I do not believe our agenda has changed. We are looking, it's the month of July.
Yeah, here it is. Sorry.
And we have tonight's meeting and then next week on Wednesday, July 18th, our City Council meeting will be here at 7:30. We'll have a presentation from the Police Chief, an update from him. And then we will have public comments on voting items. Our voting session includes first reading ordinance authorizing the 2019 Budget Amendment Number One, first reading ordinance authorizing FY 2019 Stormwater Budget Amendment Number One, first reading ordinance awarding a contract for the Lincoln Avenue sidewalk construction, first reading ordinance authorizing purchase of five replacement police vehicles, a first reading ordinance authorizing a contract with the International Association of Police Chiefs to conduct a promotional process for the Police Department. And then our other voting item is a resolution authorizing the temporary closure of Anne Street on September 29th for a night market. So also mark your calendars for September 29th. We also have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for the purchase of replacement of a trash truck and replacement recycling truck for the Public Works Department, a single reading ordinance awarding a contract to provide recreation services for people with disabilities, a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of a space saver storage system for the Police Evidence and Property Room. And that'll be all our voting items for that evening. Then we will have public comments on other items. And our work sessions will be on a discussion of the formation of a Legal Services Review Group and discussion of legislative priorities to submit to the Maryland Municipal League. And then on Wednesday, July 25th, that will be our last meeting of the summer. We will meet here at 7:30 PM. We will start off with public comments on voting items. We will have the second reading ordinance of the Budget Amendment, Lincoln Avenue sidewalks, replacement police vehicles, and the contract with the International Association of Chiefs of Police to conduct a promotional process for the Police Department. We will also have a resolution authorizing submission of legislative action requests to the Maryland Municipal League and a resolution setting forth dates for the City Council's summer recess. And then we will have council comments and other public comments on, oh, and then we'll have the voting session on the resolution regarding the Tacoma Junction site plan. And then we will be in recess for the month of August. So those are our agenda items. Seeing any other additions to the agenda? All right, I will move on then. And I think we have something for the record this evening? Is that keyed up for the?
Do we have something?
Oh, all right, we'll move on then. So we'll move on now to public comments on voting items. Our first voting item is the single reading ordinance authorizing award of the FY 19 Community Grants. Do we have any public comments on that? All right, seeing none. The next is a resolution appointing the Tacoma Park Poet Laureate. Do we have any public comments on that voting item? Okay. We will now take up our voting session. The first thing we have is a single reading ordinance authorizing award of the FY 19 Community Grants. We had a work session on this and I don't believe there were any changes.
There's no changes from what was discussed at the work session.
All right.
And these are the recommendations of the committee.
Before I ask for this to be moved, does anyone in the City Council have any comments or questions? All right, would someone like to move this ordinance? Councilwoman Circe, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of the single reading ordinance authorizing award of the FY 19 Community Grants? I think we need a roll call, right?
Yes, and I think I'll do that.
Okay.
The City Clerk had to step out. Just to make sure who moved this?
Councilwoman Circe moved it, Councilwoman Dibala second.
For this item, Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Councilman, Mayor Stewart.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have the resolution appointing the Tacoma Park Poet Laureate.
And on this, the, there'd been solicited nominations for the Poet Laureate position and the Arts and Humanities Commission has forwarded the name of Ms. Kathleen O'Toole for consideration. And the information in the packet is really very interesting about her, so it should be a delight to have her on board. The poet laureate receives a $2,000 stipend distributed over the two-year appointment.
Great, terrific. Any questions on this resolution? Would someone like to move it?
Move it.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick, any comments or questions? All in favor of the resolution appointing the Tacoma Park Poet Laureate, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
When do we get to meet her?
I don't know the answer, sorry.
We will find out soon.
We will have something nice.
Mm-hmm. Wonderful. All right, well, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. It's rare that that happens. But if you are here to speak to the Tacoma Junction Resolution, please sign in in the back. Before we begin, public comments on the resolution. I just wanted to give folks updates on a couple of things. One, last Friday, July 6th, myself, the City Manager, and Rob Zgrinsby on the city staff, as long as, along with the two, thank you, traffic groups that did the studies in Tacoma Junction, met with the SHA Administrator Greg Slater at his offices with our district's SHA staff as well as representatives from his office. During that meeting, the Administrator recommitted to working on the Tacoma Junction intersection to address the safety concerns and the traffic concerns there. He said he, I asked him for a formal letter, so there was no confusion about what he is committing to. And he said that he will send that right away to us and as soon as he had, we have that, we will make it public to everyone. But I think it was an overall excellent meeting and this will, as he noted, will set a precedent because he promised that it would, this project would be out of his office and not the district SHA office and that he is committing his office, the Administrator's office, to this project. So I was optimistic on that. I want to thank Tracy Ford of Community Mediation and her colleague who assisted us on Monday evening and thank all the residents who came out to the one-on-one dialogues. This was something new we tried in response to requests that people had to have more back and forth and ask questions of the City Council. So as with other types of things that we've done in this project, like the pop-up and open houses, this was something we wanted to try. We received some feedback on Monday night and we're always open to additional feedback on how they went and whether or not we should use this for other issues. And then just the third thing, I know Representatives of the Co-op will be speaking tonight. And as we had promised before we made the resolution public, we did share for comment the sections that pertain to the Co-op to their lawyer and the Co-op Board got their feedback and we're looking forward to continuing the dialogue. We're trying to set up a meeting next week with them to continue the conversation on the input they have on the resolution. So we'll do that. As I mentioned in the agenda packet, we are planning to vote on the resolution on July 25th. I want to emphasize, as we have over the last couple of weeks, that changes can and will be made to accommodate the operational needs of the Co-op and to reflect agreements made during mediation if that mediation is not completed by the time we vote on the 25th. The process moving forward, if the resolution goes forward, is that the proposed site plan would proceed onto the county level. At that, we would get more information back from the County Planning Board, Historic Preservation, and State Highway. And we anticipate, once they look at it, we'll probably have to go back and forth a few times to react to their comments. I want to state again that we have assured the Co-op that we will uphold the development agreement and ensure accommodations are made for their needs as we have said. In addition, we will schedule a meet-work session in September, as soon as we're back from recess, to review the mediation that's taking place with NDC if that mediation is not completed by July 25th. So the bottom line is that if the project moves forward, all of us, the City, NDC, and the Co-op, will be working together for a very long time. The overall goal, as we see it for the mediation, is to build trust and a stronger relationship among all the parties. And so as changes arise, as they are likely to over the project, we'll have a stronger relationship to address these situations. And before I do turn it over to public comments, I just want to say, as I've said in the past few weeks, regardless of what happens with this project at the junction, we are a community of people. And that's what really defines us and will define us for the years to come. I understand that there are substantial differences of opinion regarding this project in our community. And we don't all agree on the project. And we all don't agree up here on this project. And that makes it difficult. And I ask that we just remember that no matter what the decision is over the next couple of weeks, that we are a community of individuals, of neighbors, and that we all work together over the next few weeks, months, and years, no matter what the decision is. So with that, I would like to open up to public comments. And I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce your name. The first person to sign up was Steve Saletta.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
I'm Steve from 13th Avenue. A few days ago, somebody said to me, "If there are so many people in favor of the Tacoma Junction redevelopment plan, why don't we see more of them here at City Council?" I am here to speak in favor of the redevelopment plan. I can't believe that I have to say this out loud in person, but I do not believe that the redevelopment plan is racist. I think that there are real and genuine issues around race and labeling the redevelopment plan as racist only dilutes the real concerns around equity we should be addressing here in Tacoma Park. I also wanted to address some of the language I've seen around the plan describing public land for the public good. Speaking as an economist, I have to state that a grocery store, no matter how well politically connected, does not meet the definition of a public good. A public good is non-rivalrous and non-excludable. And the Co-op meets neither of those aspects of what a public good is. I appreciate the fact that there are so many people who love the Co-op, love to shop there. Personally, as a person involved in the management of a nonprofit organization, I can only dream that VFW post 350 had the political and social capital that the Co-op has and has demonstrated coming to these meetings throughout the past few months. I think that if an asteroid fell from the heavens or a chasm opened up and swallowed the Co-op hole, they would figure out a way to survive because of all their resources. And I think it's fantastic. This is a piece of public property. The city needs to be concerned about what is best for the community. There has been an open and inclusive process. There's nothing new under the sun. There's nothing that I can say that has not already been said. But I am here tonight to strongly encourage you to vote for the redevelopment plan. I would like to invite the Co-op to please explore commercial real estate down in Langley Crossroads where I live. We would love a grocery store like yours. But thank you all very much. I know this has been a trying process and I appreciate everyone's comments, everyone's feedback, and the public spirit that has been shown during this project. Thank you.
Joan Duncan?
I'm Joan Duncan, 25 Pine Avenue. And I appreciate that you, Mayor, and all the City Council people have spent a significant amount of time on this project. And as you said, we know there is disagreement on the success of the current plan. There are goals for this project that are difficult to define. Let's take one example, public space. This is what we're looking for. A large amount of vibrant, comfortable, and easily accessible, street-level, public space that functions as a community gathering spot, does not require the purchase of food or beverage to use, and is accessible for year-round use. This starts to set a direction, but there's much we need to know. What activities happen here? How many people to accommodate? What are the hours of use? Where on the site should this happen? We have more questions than answers. How do we decide what our public space is and if the current plan accommodates what we want? How can the community be engaged in this decision-making? We are now at a crossroads where a transparent systematic process needs to be put in place to identify areas of agreement, disagreement, and goals that need developed and prioritized. There's an action plan recommended in the letter from 15 architects and designers. We include individuals who have extensive experience in similar scale and complexity of projects. The current president of the American Institute of Architects is in our group, contrary to a previous email you received. This action plan can take us from where we are now towards consensus. We need to look only as far as Montgomery College down the street to see an example of an ongoing charrette process for the design of a new math science building. Their process is based on a feedback loop where designers use input from stakeholders, including neighbors, to shape ongoing design iterations. There is an opportunity for stakeholders to drive the design at each phase. An independent consultant is on board to ensure that the process is authentic and transparent. The Junction project has a different set of challenges, but a real charrette community engagement process is possible here. Most architects and designers will tell you that creative solutions often result from complicated constraints, complex requirements, and demanding clients. There are a lot of good ideas out there, an opportunity of public land, and an eagerness to come up with an innovative project that truly reflects our community.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
Thank you.
Ashley Nugent?
I want to start by thanking the Council, City Manager, Deputy City Manager, City Clerk for your dedication and hard work on the redevelopment project. Similar to what the Mayor said at the beginning, we're all part of a wonderful community, one where our neighbors care deeply for one another, one where we not only express concern for disadvantaged communities, but one where we take action when we need to help others in need. It's no surprise I'm in favor of the NDC plan and I hope each one of you will vote yes next week. I'm excited to be able to spend time in the Junction with my daughter who will be here I'm excited about the job and business opportunities the new development would create. And I'm excited about the revenue the Junction will generate, which will be able to fund and support the myriad of social issues that our community places so much value in. Less than a year ago, the Junction was a very hot topic in our city election. When the previous Council voted, who is he here? When the previous Council voted to move forward right before the election, many voters didn't expect that eight months later, we'd be expected to race home from work or our family dinner to attend Council meetings every week to voice our continued support. I didn't think I'd have to be sending email after email of support. Glad to do it, but we didn't think we needed to find babysitters to spend hours waiting to testify at the project, given that we've already voiced our support for it through our votes to you all. Instead, we expected you all to continue to be a voice for the community and to build on the positive momentum the city has made with this project without repeated affirmations. I worry that this prolonged process, we are neglecting many of the critical issues in our community. It is important that we take action and move forward with next week's vote. We need to return our focus in investing in affordable housing, to addressing overcrowding in schools, to improving our parks, our rec center, and to coming together as a community. So thank you for your time and looking forward to next week.
Next, we have Linda Colko and Barbara Griffith.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and staff of Tacoma Park. My name is Linda Boris Colko and I've been a resident of Sherman Avenue in Ward 3 for almost 32 years. I have sent you all several emails and I testified on April 25th, 2018, in support of the development of the Tacoma Park Junction. I was pleased at the April event that so many residents, much younger than me, are supporting the Junction development. That's the future of our community. I joined the Co-op, the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op, when it moved to the Junction several years ago and shop there often. I am confident that we will find a way to ensure that the Co-op remains viable while allowing other small businesses to thrive in a new reconfiguration of the space. I support the vision of our Mayor, Kate Stewart, who has carefully and thoroughly laid out the issues related to the future of Tacoma Junction numerous times. I thank the Mayor and the City Council for continuing a long process of dialogue with the community, including public comments at regular City Council meetings, conducting the open house, the pop-up event, one-on-one meetings with residents, and authorizing two traffic studies, which concluded that the development is not predicted to make a considerable difference. In addition, the city is sponsoring a mediation process between Neighborhood Development Corporation and the Co-op. I am sure there is even more the city has done, and I'm not even listing, to facilitate communication about the Junction development. Enough time and resources have been expended on this. I strongly request that the city move forward and adopt the draft resolution to develop Tacoma Junction into a viable commercial and community space. The city of Tacoma Park cannot continue to invest any more valuable time and resources beyond the reasonable efforts already established to accommodate the vocal few who want no development at the Junction. That is totally unacceptable to me and many residents. The City Council needs to have time to focus on other critical issues, and Ashley listed many of them affecting our community. Thanks for all the time and effort that the Council and the Mayor have expended on the Tacoma Junction development. I wish the Mayor and the Council the best tonight and look forward to the city of Tacoma Park moving forward on the Tacoma Junction development as described in the draft resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council members, I'm Barbara Griffith and I live at 108 Brand Avenue and I've been here for 29 years. I have very few words to say to you this evening, but my words are, it's time for this project to move forward. You need to vote for this draft resolution. I am sure that, given the high citizen interest in this development, it has been made better for all of the input from its citizens. And they have, and we have had the chance to do that. And every, a lot of people have participated. But I look forward to the increased vitality of my neighborhood, the Junction. It's where I go. And just the fact of what's happened recently up there, it is fun to go, see neighbors, see friends, as they go box, eat, do yoga, all of those good things. And I look forward to more of that happening in the Junction and it gives me an opportunity to interact with more people in our community. I hope that the energy that's been going into trying to stop this development turns into the work of supporting the Co-op during the difficult time of the construction and then participating in helping new businesses join the Co-op in a successful and welcoming new opportunity for our community. Thank you.
Can we get the microphone for Mr. Lovelace?
Hello, this is Pat Lovelace, official peace delegate, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I want to tell you people out there that when you are doing this, when you are deciding on what you want to pick and how to vote, I want you to realize, that's not your money you're playing with. That's not your money. You're playing with our money, the city's money, the people's money. That has to be done wrong. If that's being done wrong, we have to correct it. So we have to really think, do we, what we need it to stand up to our environment and make sure our environment is preserved, to stand up for our prices, to make sure that that's preserved, and make sure our historical quality is preserved and our traffic is preserved. Foot traffic, public gathering spaces, enough greenery, we need that as a city of Tacoma Park. Otherwise, it's just going to turn out to have a, you're going to turn out to have something like, you're going to have a horrible mess later on. You're going to have a situation where people don't want to shop there, they don't want to gather there, they don't want to do anything there. It'll run down like a gangrenos sore that in a few more years will have to be amputated. And we don't want that. We want to have something that has a good circulation around it, of people and customers and good feelings. Otherwise, it's going to rot and have to be taken off. Thank you very much.
Jackie Moore and Lee Peterson.
Jacqueline Moore, 7005 Aspen Avenue. So Monday, July 9th, was our region's first Code Red Day since 2012. With expected increase in traffic and traffic fumes and pollution that will be products of this development, our city of Tacoma Park will bear a chunk of the responsibility for future Code Red Days. I appreciate the efforts by our Council and staff that made the July 9th conversation with Council possible. I managed to give all Council members, with the exception of Mr. Siemens, an oyster shell on that night. Whether you keep that shell on your desk in your pocket or if you pitch it into your garden to add calcium to the soil, I hope you remember how development in our part of the watershed affects the water quality as well as the plants and animals that live downstream. You may have also noticed the Maryland Watermen's Association t-shirt that I'm wearing tonight. Keep in mind the people who count on clean water and the healthy animals to do their jobs and to feed, clothe, and house their families. As you can tell, I'm still vehemently opposed to the current NDC plan and the Council's draft resolution. The change in language from environmental impact statement and racial equity statement to environmental considerations and racial equity considerations concern me. This change from statement to considerations proves that the manpower and money needed to truly and critically analyze and assess the effects the NDC plan will have on our city, our citizens, and those who live downstream has not been invested yet. This project will shape your legacy. In 25, 50, 75, or 99 years, what will the Junction be called? Terry and Tlicia's Traffic Train Wreck? Peter's Pit of Despair? Dibala's Debacle? Kate and Casey's Cocked-Up Chaos? You have the power to guarantee a more positive legacy for yourselves. Use that power. Slow this down. You've put in a lot of work already, but more work must be done to ensure that our Junction will function and flourish. You still won't please everyone, but you can create a Junction that benefits all parties involved, even the 3,000 baby oysters I raise each year for the group Marylanders Grow Oysters. Have courage. You can do this the right way. Take the time necessary to bring our deeply divided city together. One last note, I've attended Council meetings from time to time over the last 26 years, but I don't ever remember there being such a pronounced police presence. No disrespect to our officers, but couldn't their time be put to better use? I wonder what's caused you to be so tense and on guard. There is indeed a real chance that we, the citizens of Tacoma Park, will kick you to the curb in 2020, but we'll do it with our votes, not our fists. Thank you. And Mr. Siemens, I have an oyster shell for you if you want it later.
I am echoing what others have said. I really appreciate all the time that you all have done and others before you have done in making this process as fair as we can make it. The rest of my time really is directed to those that are either already voting for the proposal or are thinking about it. Because voting for this proposal is voting for exclusion. Excluding people who don't have the money to go to this facility because of whatever resources they lack. And really, it's more the silent majority which have not provided input on this. So I'm asking you to think about this process. So I'm asking you to think about this process, and I'm asking you to, why do we need to give away our public land to a developer for 100 years? Why do we need to have a developer do this instead of having the vast amount of resources that we have here in Tacoma Park to develop this in a way that everyone gets to use it, not just those with money? I've been saying a lot of no's, but I do have one other yes to say. My yes to you all would be to say that it's time. It's time to write a check to NDC, say thank you very much, and let's move on and have this be a city and town development that we can do ourselves. And one more thing, you all have a really lovely evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I realize I was asked by City TV to let folks know that unfortunately, we are not live streaming tonight on Facebook or YouTube.
We actually are on YouTube.
We are on YouTube, okay. We're on YouTube and the website, but not on Facebook.
Correct.
All right. We're on that, and also, I think the city manager had some other updates regarding Tacoma Junction that we thought, before people gave more public comments, it would be helpful to know.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, I just wanted to go over a few items, and I will add this to my city manager comments on the website after this evening. Just a couple different points. There have been questions about the mediation process. The mediation process between the Neighborhood Development Company and the Tacoma Park Co-op has begun. City representatives met with the mediator, Dan Dozier, on Wednesday, June 27th, and the mediator has also met with representatives of NDC and of the co-op separately. A combined mediation session, including city observers, is being scheduled for the end of next week. It's likely to occur on Friday, the 20th. Regarding legal opinions. Legal opinions have been provided to council members regarding a number of termination and anchor tenant questions related to the development agreement and the question about building across lot lines. As privileged information, the opinions cannot be shared with the public. As has been stated repeatedly, the city had negotiated the development agreement to allow for withdrawal from the agreement when continuing with the development is not in the best interests of the city. The text of the development agreement is on the city's Tacoma Junction project page. Identification of an Anchor Tenant. The deadline for identifying an anchor tenant would be today, July 11th, 2018, per terms of the development agreement. At this point, the city is keeping its options open regarding the anchor tenant requirement, and that's a council discussion. Building Across Lot Lines. As has been previously stated, if the city decides on a plan that involves building across lot lines, there are mechanisms to handle the issue, including combining the lots and negotiating legal protections for the city. Role of the Tree Commission. A previous communication about the role of the Tacoma Park Tree Commission was in error. Because the only development site, because the only development site property that has trees on it is city-owned land, final determination on tree protection plans and tree removals rests with me, the city manager. Any appeals on these would not go to the Tree Commission. The city code does not anticipate ground lease arrangements, unlike other development review processes. The Tree Commission provides valuable insight as to tree protection and policy for the city. The council and the city manager want to provide a process that allows for the Tree Commission's recommendations to be made and considered. Discussions with the Tree Commission have begun to define that process. In any event, planning for tree preservation and protection cannot take place until the fundamentals of the site plan are more clear. So I will have those items posted, but I did want to go through that list to answer some of the questions that have been arising. Thank you.
All right, we'll continue with public comments. Next, we'll have David Greenberg and Sarah Hayden. Oh, yes, if you could repeat your name when you're up at the podium, thank you.
Happy to do it. Hello, my name is David Greenberg. I've lived in Tacoma Park for over a decade now and reside in Ward Two on Flower Avenue. I never spoke at a city council meeting before, but I'd like to thank the city council for the deliberative, thoughtful process it's engaged in to move this project forward. It's been great to be able to access all the different documents and information related to the junction development on the website, and I think that's fantastic because it does show an open process. I'd like the council to know that I fully support the council approving the current proposal. I believe it will greatly improve a blighted intersection and enhance the walkable commercial and shopping options for Ward Two residents and the rest of the city, since the junction is so centrally located. I'm also in favor of the additional tax revenue that is going to be generated by the project over the many years to be directed to the neediest parts of the city. I think that's a fundamentally important part of this plan that should be considered. My concern is, we turn back now, it means forfeiting the countless and endless hours and years that the city council and the city has spent on this effort, including over $130,000 of city funds. That's just wasted money if we go and stop now, and it will leave us nothing but asphalt. It will also send a signal that Tacoma Park can't get this type of project done, and that, I think, is disappointing. There are many in this city who support this project, who may not be the loudest, but passionately feel that it's very important to move this important development forward. So thank you, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sarah Hayden, and I'm a resident of Ward One, and I've lived here for five years. I'm here to encourage the council to vote yes on the proposed site plan, as qualified by NDC's June 20th letter, and I'd like to touch on a few points. One, I really appreciate those in our community who are fostering civility and compassion and dialogue, and I've been upset on a, maybe too upset, on a personal level with expressions of anger and dismissing other people's views, so I wanted to start out with that. And while it often feels like a tug-of-war, I guess I see it more as a dance, and we're not, most of us are not diametrically opposed, but we're moving around and trying to build the best project possible. But because you are at a decision point, yes or no, I am encouraging a yes. First, it seems that 20, 25, 30 years ago, the city and community had a vision that this junction area needed help, and part of that vision was bringing the co-op, but even 25 years ago, it wasn't just bringing in a grocery store. And just as the city decided not to develop and operate a grocery store themselves, but to bring in a third-party for-profit corporation, and they intended then to also sell this property to a for-profit developer, or a developer to take on that role, that risk, I think that that vision still makes sense, and all the work that has been done to date to ensure that there is a qualified developer that is going to be responsive to the RFP that the city put out, that's where we are today. And I encourage the city to move forward with that. It doesn't make sense for the city to expend its resources to take on the ownership and operation of additional public space, whether it's open space or a building. So that's a big part of it, and I encourage you to focus on other public spaces, like the BF Morrison Park, that the Task Force Committee Report identified as a missed opportunity. We have a public space smack dab there that really needs help. We have other opportunities and needs, like the New Hampshire Ave Community Center, like the opportunity at Laurel Ave to shut that down and create more community space. The public space in the current site plan is a lot of public space. If you look at that space, it's about the same area as the gazebo. So that's a main point. I also wanted to touch upon, because I'm a building hugger, that I do encourage, I do agree that the historic district's integrity should be maintained and that this infill construction should be contextual, but in order to get the proper responses, you need to vote yes to get the county to review this and to get the necessary feedback. Thank you.
Thanks. Great. Now we have Jeff Trunzo and then Carter Doherty.
Hello, Jeff Trunzo, Sherman Avenue, Ward Three. Dear Mayor, Councilmember, and City Managers, thank you for your tremendous work on Tacoma Junction and all of the effort, strength, and emotional energy you put into making Tacoma Park a great place to live, shop, dine, play, walk, and operate a business. The community has had ample opportunity to provide their feedback and viewpoints about the proposed development, and I ask that you continue to carefully evaluate the information you have been provided and do your best to balance the different viewpoints to reach a decision about moving forward. Our household has complete faith in your ability to make the best decision possible for our city. I hope that each of you will offer meaningful modifications to the draft resolution, to the extent that you can, to the extent that you can vote yes. It's my sincere hope that there is consensus on the resolution, and everyone on the council can feel comfortable voting yes, and I mean the men, too. I align myself with the statement of support issued today and in the past by the Old Tacoma Business Association, of which I am a member. I offer these additional comments. Tacoma Junction redevelopment has been part of my public life for nearly all of the 30 years I have lived in Tacoma Park, and I want to see this proposal succeed. We deserve the right to walk to vibrant shops and offices from our homes, and hopefully maybe even an expanded or at least a renovated co-op. Concerns about cut-through traffic to other destinations or delivery trucks that are already on our streets being a reason that we cannot build something convenient for our own residents is not rational. Of course, an integral part of the larger scope of work at Tacoma Junction is to make the roadways work better and to eliminate one of the three signals to make that happen. We have never been closer to actually making that dream of a better intersection a reality, and committing to move forward with development makes it much more likely that the state will invest in roadway and traffic-like signalization improvements. We, as a city, have paid for so many things along our Main Street that should have been paid for by the State Highway Administration, and we are long, long overdue for the state to invest more money to improve this intersection area. I encourage all of my Tacoma Park, my fellow Tacoma Park residents, to join in an all-hands effort to make this change a reality. So our existing Tacoma Junction businesses and our co-op absolutely have to have all of the ample parking provided in the current site. I believe that the other existing stores and neighborhoods are already feeling the parking pressure from the addition of one small but popular restaurant, demonstrating that the junction needs as many parking spaces as can feasibly be built. The alternative, a smaller development on the lot with less surface parking than we have now, is a recipe for failure for everyone. Less parking at the junction is untenable. Please don't let it happen on your watch.
Thank you, Mr. Trunzo. Thank you. I have Carter Doherty and Laura Barclay.
Hello, members of the council. My name is Carter Doherty. I'm at Sixth Crescent Place in Ward One. Hopefully, you are nearing the end of a long game of whack-a-mole. Think of it, the co-op, the process, racial equity, intersection realignment, land use law, I could go on and on, the list of things that we have debated in the course of this discussion. You can always find serious unanswered questions about Tacoma Junction, but I have to say, as I've gotten older, I've come to appreciate that the only time you're truly certain is when you are young and naive. Unlike the critics of this, I'm not going to claim that any side is in the majority, and the critics shouldn't either. I will venture that you, as elected representatives, know the truth, which is that most people in Tacoma Park do not have strong feelings about this one way or the other. But there's a beautiful thing about that, which is that you can make a sensible decision. As I'm fond of saying, we don't call it the People's Democracy of Tacoma Park, we call it the People's Republic of Tacoma Park, because we have smart elected officials who can make a decision. You've hired and cultivated talented city staff, and we are greatly appreciative that you and the city staff have spent the time on this project. And let me add to that, we have a great Tacoma Park here, and I certainly don't hold any grudges in our disagreements about this. We had the Park Crescent Block Party the other weekend, about as close as you can get to Tacoma Junction. There was not a single mention of Tacoma Junction at that entire block party. We had great barbecue and great booze and great company, and thank you, Mike Royst, a great band on his property, without violating the sound ordinance, by the way. There's two points I want to address here. One is the public space. I believe that the site plan meets the criteria that you laid out in October. Adequate space is defined as public community spaces that results in enhanced interaction among residents or visitors. It's obviously subjective, but I think that there's a strong case to be made that it meets the requirements. What's more, and I'm begging you on this one, this opens the door to the creation of an even better public space, if you look at Eric Saul's vision for the realignment of the junction. But we can only do that if Tacoma Park does its job, does its part, in revitalizing this commercially morbid area. Finally, I want to make a point about mediation, especially for people who joined the council after the last election and have not had the pleasure of four years of debate on this. I was really happy one week when the co-op realized which way the wind was blowing, this was years ago, and Marilyn Berger was cheery and chummy with Adrian Washington of NDC, but that only happened because the co-op knew that a decision was going to be made to move ahead with a developer. There is no upside to waiting for mediation to finish before making a decision, and the public communications that we know about this say it's about operational issues, not about the design of the site plan. That means you can vote yes, protect the co-op, and move ahead.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Barclay with the Old Tacoma Business Association. I'm just coming up here to reiterate the Old Tacoma Business Association's support of the Tacoma Junction development and the current site plan. Our statements over the past four years are on our website. I wanted to run through just the things that, the information that the board considered during this process to make this decision. Retail demand. The new commercial space will provide additional opportunities to meet the unsatisfied retail demand that exists in our community, as supported by our recent Tacoma retail market analysis. Density of Businesses. Additional businesses in this shopping quarter will fill a gap in our commercial district, activate the street front, add increased density, vibrancy, and customers, which will benefit all businesses on the block. Correspondingly, the current density in the Old Town area, Carroll and Laurel, contributes to the success of those businesses in the area, per the Tacoma retail market analysis as well. Economic leakage. The community spends a considerable amount of money outside of our community, as supported by the Tacoma Trade Area Overview. This is money that we can redirect to Tacoma Park with additional businesses. Rent. The new, the rents proposed at the new development are the same as the rents in recently signed leases for new buildings and newly rented spaces in our community, running from $43 to $50 per square foot, and are currently leased primarily by independently owned local businesses. Also, at this point, our commercial district is almost fully leased. Size and scale of building. The size and scale of the proposed building is approximately the same size as 7,000 to 7,000 Carroll Avenue, which is Trattoria Delina to Middle East Cuisine, and it works with its surrounding, which are similarly across from a one-story commercial strip and next to residential. New businesses. The proposed development site plan is adding six new businesses, six new street front businesses, a rear studio, and second-floor offices. Per the agreement with the city, the developer is being asked to rent to independently owned local businesses, and is not permitted to rent to a business that will directly compete with the TPSS co-op. Traffic. The city of Tacoma Park and the developer have each undertaken two traffic studies to determine that the main source of traffic is commuter traffic, and that development is not predicted to make a considerable difference. To improve traffic, both studies propose realigning the intersection, and with this development project, provides the attention unnecessary that state highway will evaluate and hopefully make changes. Public space. The current public space in the development site plan is similar in size to the gazebo patio. In addition, the project includes a deep setback in wide sidewalks. Parking. The development includes 72 underground parking spaces available to all junction businesses. And lastly, the TPS co-op. The Old Tacoma Business Association strongly supports this important Tacoma Park business, and is hopeful that the agreed-upon mediation between the co-op and the developer will help overcome existing issues so that the co-op can continue to thrive and hopefully even expand into the new development.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Anderson and Jim DiLuigi.
Okay. Actually, I don't have any prepared remarks, but what I did want to say is, thank you to the council, and frankly, thank you to everyone in this room for having a very robust discussion about a very important project for Tacoma Park. As I was walking out of my house this morning, my neighbors had come up to me and asked that I represent their view on the project, all of whom support moving forward. The thing that I think that we want to emphasize is looking at the bigger picture. The space that's currently available for development belongs to all residents of Tacoma Park, not just a single entity or a single group. Park, not just a single entity or a single group. When I, actually frankly, when I heard Laura's comment about how there's a clause in the contract where there is protection for the co-op in regards to competition based on private market, I really, actually, I'm troubled by that. I think that that's not necessarily something that the city should engage in, is subsidizing a private entity with what is a resource that belongs to everyone. You know, further, I think that there are a lot of people in this community in need. The project development itself will generate tax revenue for the city. That tax revenue will be pushed down to those in the community who need help, like with the Recreation Department, expanded services for those folks. So the fact that we're kind of not taking that into account and seeing the bigger-picture values of what we all believe in, I find troubling. So I hope that folks, as they debate this issue, remember that, that while we're here, there are a number of people in the community who may not be engaged in this issue but will certainly benefit by the development from a variety of, for a variety of reasons. So I really hope that once the decision is made, that everyone really gets behind it, regardless of what it is, because the community has been divided and a lot of people have really been kind of turned off by the process, frankly, just because of the negative tone of civil engagement, which is frankly something I think we all should be ashamed of. So I hope we all can move on, make the right decision that's best for the city and everyone in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I'm Jim DiLuigi. I reside at 7106 13th Avenue. I've been in the city for, I don't know, 40 years. A couple of things. First of all, I have significant concern about some of the details. I see detail being worked out, progress being made in some of the documents that were put out today, so I would urge you to keep the pressure on. One of those issues was, for example, trash accumulation, a commitment to try to control the trash by means of its location and exhaust, but it doesn't control the trash to the street. So that's the worst place it can be and the most problematic in terms of having a quality development that people want to rent the space. I am most concerned about traffic. Traffic analysis is flawed. I spoke with the people that the city hired at the end of their last presentation. They did not know what was happening at East West Highway and New Hampshire Avenue. They did not know that one lane was being taken away coming toward the city. They did not know that the right-hand lane that was from New Hampshire Avenue on to Philadelphia was being taken away. But at the same time, they said that traffic was simply going to increase. They could assume that was going to increase. Well, it's quite the opposite. Traffic's going to decrease. I would urge you not to change the path of Carroll Avenue, because all it's going to do is take traffic through the neighborhoods, down to Sycamore, over on Columbia, and back across to the major arteries. This is, the system is set up to prohibit that. And by changing that orientation, you're going to endanger neighborhoods, you're going to endanger children, you're going to cause a huge amount of problem. So those are the things that I'm most concerned about, and I hope you two will be concerned about them.
Thank you. All right. We'll continue with our role of James and Jims with James Anderson and then Reno Alderetti. Is James Anderson here? Or maybe he signed in twice. Maybe that was Jim Anderson, that he went already. Okay. Then Reno, you're up. Are you still here?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are.
Reno Alderetti, 7213 Central Avenue. So when, when my family moved into this community in 1977, John Roth was the mayor of Tacoma Park. And John, John Roth, one of John's favorite phrases was, "You know, people, people elected me, and they expect me now to make the decisions." And I think, I think that that was true until people didn't like the decisions that John Roth was making, and people reserve the right. And I just, when I heard a little bit earlier someone speaking about that, I thought, well, there's something missing here in this equation. And so I would say to you that when people say that people should be ashamed of coming out and, and talking and how they're talking, of course, people get wound up. It's the nature of the beast. Witness what's going on with, with our nation right now. But the reality is, is that we all do live in the same community, and we all do have honest interests. And I think that the honest interests and the honest differences here are that, you know, many of us believe, as Jim DiLuigi just said, you know, that, that there is a, I have never seen a traffic study that does not have significant flaws in it. And I have worked with people who have indeed loaded their studies. It is, you know, you, you look at them and you, you get what you can get out of them, but, you know, I would not make that the word of God. It seems to me that this is indeed a built city and that you have narrow streets coming in and out of all directions from the Tacoma Junction area. And over time, that will mean that more cars will be coming in and out, and as you put more cars coming in and out of that property, you will have problems. I don't think anybody is particularly upset, maybe people are, but I'm certainly not particularly upset by several businesses that might go in there if indeed they are retail businesses. But when you look at a second and a third story and, and parking underground, you know, then it begins to become too much. Too much because you are in a, an area of congestion without any way for you to get road widens unless you want to really blow this community up. Ain't going to happen, right? So it may not happen, but you may be seeding that. And I would just say to you, did that, by the way, these bells make me nuts. Are you, are you, is this saying that I'm done?
Nope, you have 10 seconds.
I have 10 seconds. Then I, then I would simply ask you a question. What do you really think you're going to get out of this?
Thank you, Ms. Alderetti. That's a good question to end on. Next, we have Molly McCracken and Debra Zuckerman.
I'm Molly McCracken. I'm a resident of Manor Circle. I do want to thank all of you for spending an enormous amount of time on this project. This project is a huge deal. It will have an enormous impact on our community. We should spend a lot of time on it. I hear a lot of people talking about how really you guys have worked through this very long process, and there's been so much opportunity to talk to the community, and, and you've made it a very open process. I have to say, I, I have, have been looking at the proposal since the very beginning, and I don't see that you're listening. I have to say that I don't see that people are being listened to, and that really the compromises that need to be made are being made. So I, I'm a resident of Manor Circle. Somebody else talked about how great it is to see the junction being kind of revitalized with all these new businesses and that great soul food place. And I agree. I have always hoped that there would be some kind of development on the city lot right there, and I really look forward to that in our community. This is not that development. This is not it. Tacoma Park is a wonderful community of people who really work to respect each other and work to go forward with dignity and put other people first and think strategically about the future of our communities for, for future generations. And nobody lives in this community because they, well, I should say, many people live here raising children, choosing the place they're living because they want to raise children now or in the future, or they already did, in a community that's very open and that is, that supports each other. We have such a creative group of people in our community. We need to come together, this, all these different opinions, come together and create a community vision we can stand behind. That is not about money, that is not about quick fixes. Let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater in either direction, right? Just because you have worked so hard and spent so much time on this proposal doesn't mean we need to go forward, right? We need to step back, work together, take a pause, and feel good about what we're going to produce in the end, for future generations. Thank you.
Love it. Me too. I know.
Hi, I'm Debra Zuckerman. I live on Poplar Avenue in Tacoma Park. Before I say what I thought I was going to say tonight, I just wanted to respond to a couple of things I've heard tonight. I learned a long time ago, and I guess I keep relearning, that words really are important and words matter, and people who are opposed to the current plan are not against development. And, and throwing that kind of rhetoric around really doesn't do anyone any good. And while I can't say that no one has said this, because I haven't been part of every conversation, I have never heard anyone say that the current plan is racist. I think a lot of us are concerned that we don't know because no one has yet done a racial equity analysis. And while a lot of my concerns, I mean, I, I usually focus on substance, but whenever I come here, I seem to focus on process. One of my real concerns is that, I think it was March of 2017, that the city put out a statement saying that projects and programs and policies, et cetera, would be run through a racial equity lens. And the racial equity considerations list that recently came out is a far cry. I mean, that, that may be what should have been devised weeks and months ago so that this could be run through a racial equity lens, but it seems to me there are so many carts being put before the horse that that should have been done first, and the mediation between the co-op and NDC should have been done first. It seems premature to be resolving, to put the proposal forward to the county with so many unknowns and unanswered questions. And just, and I appreciate the fact that prior councils and mayors and you have spent a lot of time on this, but one of my hypotheses has been, this is going full speed ahead just because nobody wants to step back and ask if this is what's really good for the city and the community. And on my way here, there was an ambulance on Ethan Allen that was trying to come through and make the right turn onto Carroll to go to the hospital. There was so much traffic, there was no place for anyone to pull over. And to say in the last be it resolved that the council would like to see improvements to traffic.
Thank you, Ms. Zuckerman.
That's really not enough.
Myra Bennington?
I think it's Micah Bevington.
Oh, I'm sorry, Micah. Somebody wrote, so actually, while you're walking over here, the next people, I think, is Ruth W. and Edith Dickie, it kind of wrote over your name.
Oh, sad.
So that's why.
It's okay.
All right. Well, go ahead. Micah, you can go.
Okay, I can be quick. My name is Micah Bevington. I'm Ward 2. I've been here for a decade. I plan to be here, oh, as long as I can be here. I can be quick because I've been watching this process for four years. I've enjoyed the process. I'm going to talk about what no one else has said. I think it's beautiful. I'm super excited about this development. I can't wait to see what goes in there. I think it's balanced. I think we're going to drive by and walk by and sit there in front of parades and be really excited about the new things that are coming into our town because of it. I'm excited that we can put this really big investment behind us and start to enjoy some new tax revenue for our town and start to, you know, look at other development projects that are necessary, like our rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, which is really close to my house and needs a lot of attention. So I'll be quick, and I'll say, please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I can't read the other names that are listed here, so if you think you signed in and early on on the first sheet and haven't heard your name, then come over and see the deputy city manager. But I'm going to call Paul Chowaski and Lorraine Pierce-Saul next.
I think I'm one of these people who may have been characterized earlier today. I'm certainly not against development of the junction, but I'm an environmental health professional, and I am passionate about protection of public health and the environment. I'm particularly passionate about environmental impacts of the construction, which is something that has not been adequately addressed at all before this council. I've sent to you recently an air quality analysis of a few aspects of the development. This air quality analysis clearly showed there would be air pollution impacts within a very short distance of the development project. Recognize there is a Montessori school across the street, there's the Richardson School of Music, both of which are attended by young children who are particularly vulnerable to air pollution. As one of the earlier speakers tonight said, we had our first code red in six years, and we have frequent code orange. Let's not contribute any more to air pollution. Now, I noticed on the cover memo to this resolution tonight, it suggested the construction impacts would, impacts would be mitigated by sustainability standards. But if there are sustainability standards for this project, they're the best-kept secret in Tacoma Park. They are certainly not available on the website or any of the public documents that I reviewed. All there is, is the project proponents' agreement to abide by a LEED gold standard, having nothing to do with construction impacts. So I'm, I'm asking you to take a serious look at this and realize that the protection of public health is certainly within the purview of the council. It is in the city charter, and it's one of the things that we voted and elected you all to do. None of the issues that I have brought up in my analyses, which you have seen, are insurmountable issues. These are issues that can be cured by engineering and regulation. However, unfortunately, I have yet to see the fingerprint of an environmental engineer on any of these aspects of the project. Now, I'm asking you to take a little pause right now in this project and have a competent environmental professional look at some of these impacts and mitigate them before we start having to evacuate children from the Montessori school or having the residents of Victory Tower shelter in place because of air pollution. I also want to point out that in lines 141 to 146, there are some serious errors about environmental benefits of this. I'll be putting this in writing and sending it to you all later, but virtually all of the statements under subsections H, I, and J are erroneous and unsupported by evidence, and therefore should take a very hard look. As I said, I'll send in some written comments. Please take a second look at the environmental impacts and take a deep breath on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lorraine Pierce-Saul. I'm vice president of Historic Tacoma, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our Board of Directors to state that we are opposed to the current site plan concept and believe that the building needs to be significantly reduced in scale and mass to be compatible with the unique low-scale, small-town feeling of our Tacoma Park, Maryland Commercial Historic District. So, we, we ask that you postpone this resolution vote to allow additional information to come forward, and I just heard some additional information that came forward just now that I hadn't realized, and there will be more of that. We think there is wisdom in working to resolve some things outside of the formal regulatory framework. So NDC, for example, has not yet brought their concept before the Historic Preservation Commission at all. We urge NDC to enter the... We urge NDC to enter there, the HPC's preliminary consultation process. This voluntary process is separate and kind of outside the formal historic area work permit process and could be done right away. You don't need to tick off the site plan process to have this done. It actually should have been done quite a while ago. This is where projects with complicated issues with respect to scale, mass, and design are resolved, and it will take more than one visit to the HPC due to the complexity of the project, and I've seen this many times. There is something that is troubling in line 272 that I noticed in going through the resolution I want to bring to your attention, and that's the June 20th letter from NDC. And we're concerned that the developer has really seemingly only agreed to counsel in this letter to consultation with the HPC on considering, quote, "modification of the roofline specifically that the height of the building and the proposed parapet are contextually appropriate." You know, the HPC is going to look at the whole thing, and I'm alarmed to see this because it indicates a real ignorance of the process. They will look at the scale, mass, and design, and I'd just like the council to confirm that and also to inform NDC that that is how the process works. And have them confirm that that's, they understand it. I really suggest you do that. We're concerned about reconfiguration.
Thank you, Ms. Pierceall.
We talked about that. Thank you.
Can I have Mimi Diaz? Mimi Diaz, she's still here? Yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Mimi Diaz. I've been a resident of Ward 3 for about 11 years. I live on Manor Circle, which is at the Tacoma Junction, and I'm very confident about this plan. I work in the corporate sustainability field and facilities, and so I've tracked this project every step of the way. I feel like all the comments that my neighbors and my community have made have made this a robust project. I'm just, I have three kids. We all use this area. We're constantly walking. We're constantly connecting with our community, and I think that this plan has been very thoughtful, especially when it comes to safety, when it comes to traffic. And really, I'm just, I'm done listening to some of the scare tactics in preventing this project. I'm also done protecting a parking lot. I think our community deserves to have some development there that is mindful and thoughtful of the needs of our community. And I do, I would like to see small business move there into place, as we would like to patronize some of these small businesses. So, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight, and I applaud everyone that has spoken to make this a community a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Can I now have Susan Schreiber and Jenny Stello? Stello, yeah.
I live at 7323 Willow Avenue in Ward 1. I just want to follow up on Lorraine Pierceall's comments, and this is with all respect to Lorraine and everything she knows and what an incredible advisor she is. At the same time, I just don't want to, I don't want the council to think that you can pass the NDC plan and assume that the Montgomery County Planning Board or the Historic Preservation Commission are going to come in and fix problems that could have been addressed and that should have been addressed and could still be addressed by following on the resolution that you passed in October as far as the scale and the size of the project, the use of public space for particular kinds of public events, all those things that were listed. We still haven't seen any measured drawings. We've seen beautiful pictures, but not measured drawings. I guess I would say that really the buck really does stop here, and so let's be careful about thinking we can pass it on. I hope that the county regulatory groups will do everything that they possibly can in reviewing, but really, it is our responsibility. Unlike the majority of citizens and towns in Montgomery County, for example Silver Spring and Bethesda, we who live in Tacoma Park have a local government to represent us and to work on our behalf to ensure the health of our community and to advance the values for which Tacoma Park has been proud: diversity, inclusion, and dialogue. Yes, a lot of people have spoken up at these many council meetings. A lot of people have sent public comments and emails, had been using in the last couple of months the comment page, and there's been a tremendous amount of activity on the list serves. But as everybody who's lined up to speak tonight knows, three-minute soundbites are no substitute for a true public process. And what we need now, the kind of, we need a town hall. We need to hear council members respond to our questions about their vision and what they hope to gain, what their goal is and what they hope to gain for this project, and we need dialogue across the community and an ability to find common ground, which I know is there. Don't be in a hurry in this tremendously divisive environment to jump and pass this resolution.
Thank you.
I'm extremely concerned about moving forward with this plan. I have actually been really appreciative of development in Tacoma Park. I've been here now 30 years, and I am for development, but I really want to see a slowdown and take care of the concerns that are being expressed here tonight and at other times. And I want to ditto that we do need a town hall, and I was told yesterday that someone here does not know what a town hall meeting is. I suggest Wikipedia. We need a different plan. We need a more innovative plan. We need a creative plan. We need a plan that actually takes in all of what you're hearing tonight. We do not, in fact, need to be in a hurry. And I am very concerned about the values in Tacoma Park. I have not heard, because I'm in objection of this plan, not all development plans, I heard someone just call that scare tactics, that we're using scare tactics. I am not a part of any scare tactics. I do not like that being said to me either, whoever you are. There's been a few efforts tonight to demean people who are in opposition of this particular plan, and I find that very uncivil and very un-community-like, and I'm extremely disturbed by this behavior. I want, I want you to know here on the city council that I appreciate all the hard work you've done, because I am sure it has not been easy getting to this point. You are not going to lose if you stop and take a minute. It's going to be more than a minute. Take a number of minutes and take care of our concerns. What I'm noticing is there's people who really care about everybody's concern, and I'm hearing tonight people that just say, "Do it, do it, do it." The woman who spoke about the concern about her children, that traffic plan said nothing about walkers. So, I hope you do keep an eye on your children. I support careful, creative, development-inclusive of these citizens' requests. I am opposed to the NDC plan, and I want us to build the best, the best development plan that Tacoma Park can offer. I want us to continue working together. I respect all of you, but I do not feel like I'm being treated with respect. And I am going to very quickly say that I was told that businesses in here are interested in this plan, supportive of it. I want to say that the Suds Laundromat is opposed to the NDC plan. Kinetic Artistry is opposed. I know that I'm over time. I hear that bell. Spring Mill Company?
There's a lot of people who are waiting. No, Ms. Dawson, there's a lot of people who are waiting. Please sit down. The next person is Nadine Block. We're taking five minutes break. Are Nadine Block, Joni Eisenberg, and Ron Davies. You want to wait a minute, then they'll come back? Yeah, you don't wait till they? Okay.
While we're waiting, what do we want? Public land for public goods! Public land for public goods!
All right, Nadine, you can start now.
Public goods!
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll restart, yeah. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much for all your work. I don't think your work will go to waste if we pause this process and actually take into consideration all the concerns that have been raised. We can certainly use it to move forward. I represent many people who are not here, as other people have said. I want you to know I could probably name plenty of them, tens and tens of them, and I know it's down to the wire. I've sent you messages before, and very particularly, I want to talk about money. It comes up a lot. There's a lot of misinformation. It is very clear to me and many other people that Tacoma Park will get stuck with the bill for reconfiguring the junction if we so choose that route. We don't have precedent, as one of the other people who supported the development said, for them to pay for much of our projects. SHA is way behind. They're not going to pay for this in Tacoma Park. We also have really weird information about income from the NDC proposal, being able to fund affordable housing. We're not going to have significant income from this project for more than 30 years. That's nuts. What will happen in 30 years? We're talking about right now getting $22,000 a year from the co-op. We're talking about getting about the same for the first five to 10 years from this lease, and it only goes up by a significant amount after 33 years. That's not going to solve anything right now. Instead, we could do other things. There's some other ideas about what we could do. Instead, we're going to think about jeopardizing the current tax base by putting in a building that might put other folks out of business or chase them out of town because the rents go so high. That doesn't make a lot of sense. We're constantly being threatened by the county. They want to take away our fire department. If we actually really challenge the rescue time, right? We've heard that that is a problem. They could really use that to move this fire department. So, I think emergency response, we should take that into account. I'd also say that I'm not really sure that NDC has put adequate time into this proposal because they haven't ever done complete drawings. They haven't addressed even the basic requirements that you all put out in October, and they haven't even included things that matter to the community like bus stops or crosswalks in their project drawings. So, it's really not clear. They've missed also, of course, their anchor tenant deadline, which allows the city council to walk away without paying anything. You actually have that potential right now to take a break and walk away. So, this is really more business as usual, nothing transformative or innovative in it, and I know that you have the power to do something better. We can do something better in Tacoma Park, as many people said. And you know that saying, "There's lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig"? This is a failed intersection. All the traffic people said that, even though their traffic studies weren't so great, but they said that this corporate development will exacerbate the traffic. And even after we fix this intersection because of induced demand, it might get worse in a matter of weeks or months or years.
Good evening. My name is Joni Eisenberg. I've lived here for 39 years, which is over half my life. I live on Goody Avenue, about seven blocks from the co-op. There are three main reasons why I've lived here all this time. One is the food co-op. I don't drive, and it enables me to walk to get my daily food and daily groceries. Two, rent control. I do not own a home. I rent my home, and I would not be able to be here if it was not for the rent control program that we have on DC. But third, and the most important, is the spirit of Tacoma Park, is why I've remained here for 39 years. And part of that spirit, you know, when we, we need to thank the people who 50, 60 years ago said there would not be an eight-lane highway that divided Tacoma Park and divided the whole city of Washington DC. Back in the 50s, 60s, and 70s even, it was, it was thought, okay, we're going to have a freeway. It was the people of Tacoma Park who organized and built a coalition that went from Maryland, DC, into Virginia, that created the freeway. So, sometimes making a little noise has some positive outcomes. If it wasn't for that organizing and the noise that was made by Sammy Abbott and a lot of other people, we would have an eight-lane highway running through Tacoma Park. So, sometimes it pays to stop and think of the impact that so-called development is going to have. Tacoma Park has always stood for responsible development, and that's why Sammy laid down in front of those bulldozers. And guess what, folks? Next year is the 50th anniversary of the stopping of the freeway. And if you want to see some media coverage, if you want to see us lying down in front of those bulldozers to recognize the 50th anniversary of when we stopped the freeway, we did it here in Tacoma Park, and we will do it again because this development is mainstream development. There's nothing progressive about it. There's nothing inclusive about it. And when you talk about the time you spend, people like Sammy Abbott, I know people who were five years old, some of the first black families that lived in Tacoma Park. Sammy Abbott knocked on people's doors and explained what the impact of this freeway was going to be. He went door to door. And if we have to do that, we will too, because this is a city that we are proud of, and we're not going to... we're not going to let it turn into another suburban hole that is just nothing but commercial junk.
Thank you, Mrs. Eisenberg. Thank you. Thank you.
Ron Davies. Two of my black neighbors tried to speak at an earlier meeting. We're not able to do so. The mayor and council, as well as the proponents of the current plan, claim to be concerned about the impact of policy on people of color, especially those in rental housing. Yet, the council and mayor ignore parts of the city, Ward 6, for instance, with a higher proportion of people of color than the junction area, parts of the city which want development and the attention, funds, and time that comes with it. While the mayor and council continue their unhealthy obsession with Tacoma Junction, they claim to support the co-op, a place to buy healthy food and a friendly, helpful establishment, and more than this, an extremely warm, multicultural, and multi-ethnic community since 1995, both shoppers and staff. But mayor and council appear unconcerned despite being aware the traffic of the junction is already a problem, that the changes they plan for the junction will bring more vehicle traffic to the junction, the opposite of making it a hub for pedestrian and bicycle traffic, the stated goal of the proponents of this project, while making it more difficult for folks to shop at the co-op or for the employees of the co-op to even park, since the plans to take their parking lot away, 25 spaces, and the proposed new underground parking garage is a bad exchange for the parking situation the employees now have. What's more, at least for the estimated one and a half years of construction, the co-op will be crippled. It will be very difficult for the co-op to receive its deliveries. Noise, pollution, and congestion will unavoidably force shoppers to go elsewhere. So jobs at the co-op, which, as I've noted, is extremely multi-ethnic and multiracial, will be endangered. Once folks change their shopping habits, it will not be easy to persuade them to change back. It's not clear the co-op will even survive. It will not take an asteroid to destroy them, to destroy the co-op. The market forces promoted by the council and mayor will do the job nicely. Okay. The city plans, and the developer plans on so much income from this development that the only occupants for these envisioned new retail and office clients will have to be high-end, not the sort of place those of any race on a lower income will be able to afford to patronize. When they propose this as a coffee shop, my wife has observed that there are already 13 places on Carroll Avenue where you can get a cup of coffee. After the meeting on June 27, a new friend of mine, I just met her at the meeting, wanted to go talk to the mayor and wanted me to come with her, so we did. My friend told the mayor she thought there should be a vote by the citizens of Tacoma Park on the proposed junction plans. I agreed, saying we needed a referendum to find out what the citizens really think. The mayor's response, "I am totally against a referendum. You elected us to do a job, and we're doing it. That is not Tacoma Park. That is Donald Trump."
All right, next we have Sue Katz Miller and Ben Miller.
Why do we persist in demanding a better development? You asked for a 34,000-square-foot option, and we got only 50,000 square feet. Why are we letting that happen? You asked for meaningful public space, and we got a concrete apron, which, by the way, David Eisner tells me will be a terrible spot acoustically for any music event because it's sandwiched between the traffic and a wall. You asked for input. We delivered petitions with over 1,000 names. If you don't believe those names are real, please scroll through them. You will recognize your constituents. You will see the names of national luminaries from David Corn to Dave Zirin, and the names of people who've devoted their lives to making this a vibrant city. Merrill Loeffler, David Eisner, Marika Partridge. And you will see a crew of young people who grew up here, and please don't call them naive. In an email to the mayor, this developer repeated a reference to those of us who want a more appropriate development as crazy uncles. Over 1,000 people, including seven former city council members, 15 architects and designers, and 50 Tacoma young people of every color, that's a bunch of crazy uncles. And yes, I need to touch on racial equity because many voices have been silenced in this process. A business owner expressed concerns about the plan to the city and was contacted within hours by the landlord and told not to make trouble. We've had armed police standing at the front of the room, intimidating public citizens who want to make very civil, formal comments. And we've had three police cars called in response to activists handing out literature. Then last week, the city announced that we are not going to even try to do an equity impact analysis or statement on the effects of this development, and we know why. It's because there is no way this development is going to have a positive equity impact. This plan threatens the largest employer of the most diverse retail workforce in the city, a multicultural oasis, a business that takes Snap, our only downtown grocery store, and you're gambling that you can do better with hypothetical upscale retail. By the way, OTBA's own research found we have an inadequate supply of groceries and an oversupply of coffee shops. Finally, we were told this project was about revitalization, not about revenue. I find it deeply disturbing that the city is suddenly floating the idea that hypothetical revenue from this development could fund things like after-school programming and affordable housing. You're asking people who desperately need those programs to back an upscale development in order to hope for some trickle-down benefit. This silences the voices of people who know gentrification when they see it, people who had previously spoken out against this oversized plan but are now fearful.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you.
Good evening. I have not really prepared something for tonight, but I just wanted to thank you guys for meeting with us, but also to express the fact that we continue to oppose this particular plan for a couple of reasons. I also want to acknowledge that I do know that you guys care about racial equity. I do know that you guys care about what the people want and all that. But until you can give us specific language that you have demanded of NDC in the contract in terms of what the criteria are for picking businesses, we cannot be sure that these businesses will be the businesses we want. Saying local is not enough. That's going to bring us another place like Republic, and that's not what we want. That being said, I obviously still feel that this plan is inadequate for the reasons I've stated earlier, including public space, but I'm not against development, and I want you guys to know that. And I also want you guys to know that what's most important for me going forward is that if there is a development there, how we can have accountability in terms of actually setting extremely strict guidelines, and that's not going to be easy. The type of strictness in terms of that criteria that will bring the sorts of businesses that Tacoma Park wants will not be the sort of criteria that NDC will want going forward. And so you're going to have to fight for us, and that's what we're asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can I have Colleen Cordes, Cynthia Morrell, Michelle Bolinger, and Dara Ovenstein? Stein, yeah. Sorry.
Mike, could you turn my... I hadn't started speaking, and it started going.
Go ahead, Colleen. I restarted it.
Colleen Cordes, Ward 1. I really want to thank the council and the city staff for listening to us all tonight and for the really hard work I know that you all have put into this. Today is July 11. The deadline for NDC to sign a lease with an anchor tenant. As of today, you are totally free to walk away from this development agreement and this flawed plan. There are many flaws. Sue Katz Miller just did a good job of going through a lot of them. I'm really concerned about the fire chief feeling that emergency response time might be hurt more by the lay-by, moving the eastbound bus stop in front of the lay-by, and increased traffic. I think that's a huge issue. That's a matter of life and death. We cannot ignore that one. Also, the mediation with the co-op in NDC has just started. It does not build trust for the council to vote on July 25, when allotted Tacoma Park is out of town, before that mediation is finished. That does not build trust between NDC and the co-op. There are big questions about the traffic reconfiguration, and as others said, it's very likely Tacoma Park would end up paying for that, and we have no idea what residents and what streets are going to be affected by the most... We don't know what the most likely plan is. So let's fix the traffic before we try to go forward with development. There has been this inadequate analysis of impacts on racial equity. There's a lack of public space on our public land guaranteed for 99 years in this plan. And there is strong evidence that probably most people would agree with this on all sides, that probably at least half of the people in Tacoma Park or who are engaged in this issue oppose the current plan. We know that something like 1,000 to 1,500 have signed petitions against it. So, and trickle-down economics, regonomics, this is the 21st century version, is to think that gentrification is going to meet, help us afford affordable housing and programs for people of low and modest incomes. It did not work in DC, and it will not work in Tacoma Park. You can walk away from this disappointing plan, or you could wait to vote for a better resolution. After the critical issues are resolved, the mediation is finished, and after Tacoma Park has a real chance for a community dialogue to find common ground. I urge you to take the pause we need to improve the plan for the junction and to unify a divided community. Like many others, I urge you to pause, improve, and unify. 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 Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have Cynthia Morrell, Michelle Bolinger? Cynthia, are you still here?
Hi, I'm Karen Lovejoy.
Oh, hi, Karen. You're going to take Cynthia's place?
Yeah.
Good, you go.
Okay. All right. I am actually speaking on behalf of Kendra Blackett from Bakram Yoga. And for those of you who might not know, she is a business owner on 7324 Carroll Avenue, and she attempted to purchase the building that her business is in, and an investor came in and, as the way gentrification works, significantly overbid. And the landlord, you know, overbid and bought the property from under her. She is now concerned and afraid. She has two more years on the lease. She's concerned that after those two years, she's essentially going to be priced out because if her rent is raised, they cannot afford to do business there. She says, "While we understand the development done right is healthy, we do not regret that opportunities for us to remain here in this..." We do regret that opportunities to remain, opportunities for us to remain here in the community and do business can be threatened down the road. For sure, a rent increase would put us out of business. Even the cost of building a new studio is prohibitive. We do hope that all sides are being considered as the new development is voted on. I also want to say that as a longtime resident of Tacoma Park, I actually owned a condo for 10 years. I sold it while other people kind of did short sales and whatever. I had excellent credit. I left on very good terms. But I want to purchase a house, and I want to stay in Tacoma Park. I cannot, had I bought the house 10 years ago, you know, I would have been good. I can't afford the housing in Tacoma Park right now. This is where I want to be. Unless somebody sells it to me for, you know, what it was worth 10 or 15 years ago, I'm out of luck. It's called gentrification. You know, where do we go? Where do we live? We have an opportunity to do something different here in Tacoma Park. This place is... The people here are just like no other. You guys represent something great. Stand up for it. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Michelle. I live on Manor Circle in Ward 3. I've lived there for 13 years. And I just, I think that the last speaker, I mean, the development deal isn't even done yet, and the threat of NDC, the threat of it is already having a chilling effect on the junction and on small businesses and black-owned businesses in the area. I didn't even know about that, but I just find the last comments to be so informative and unfortunately predictive in my fear, and I urge you to heed them. I just wanted to say a couple of things tonight. First of all, in the way of thank you, I've learned a lot from the citizen activists, the people who I've met who have put in countless hours of their own time to research things like the environment, public safety, traffic, even though they might not be a traffic engineer, racial equity, and so on. So I really want to thank all the community members who have contributed to make this debate the kind of debate that's necessary, given how high the stakes are. So while the thank yous are going around, the citizen activist, who is at the heart of any thriving democracy, I do think I'm sharing my appreciation to those folks who have made this discussion what it is. I'm one of the folks who helped craft a response to the city's racial equity statement. I agree with the critiques that have been raised tonight, and just to build on them a little bit so people understand why some of us take this so seriously, and we think that racial equity is more important than things like how long the process has taken or whether or not we have another restaurant to go to. We think these things are more important than those. Race and class need to be analyzed in every decision that a community makes. Otherwise, the decisions will either perpetuate racism and equality or hopefully undermine them. And so it needs to be embedded in every decision the community makes. And unfortunately, it has not been considered adequately at this point in terms of the junction plan. Members of our community have gotten up for the past several months and asked, "How will people in the area around the junction, low-income people, renters, people who live on Lee and Maple Avenue, how will they be affected in terms of rent, quality of life, cost of living? What about people who own homes, who are lower income, or people on a fixed income?" People have raised these questions, but we don't have answers to them in any meaningful, substantial way, and people deserve those answers. Who will end up with more power at the end of the day? Renters or landlords? What are the kinds of things that developers do to undermine communities and to cause demographic shifts that we don't want to see? These are the things that need to be figured out. Lastly, I just want to say that in terms of the junction plan itself, I agree, a vote for this plan is a vote for exclusion. It will strengthen segregation. I'm out of time, but I think people should consider those factors very heavily going forward.
Yeah. Thanks, Dar. I can pass them out.
Thanks.
So thank you, Dara Orenstein, Ward 3. Tonight, I want to focus on just one of many reasons why this resolution is unworkable. It has to do with a question that occurred to me last week as I read the council's new considerations on racial equity, the opening paragraph of which now singles out, quote, "the two wards closest to the Tacoma Junction project, Wards 2 and 3." Why add that sentence, I wondered? And why Wards 2 and 3? So to solve this riddle, I set out to understand how exactly the council has imagined the cultural and economic geography of this project. First, I looked at the RFP from 2014, and I noted that it calls for a development project that, quote, "provides amenities to adjoining residential neighborhoods." Okay, I thought. So the question is, what counts as an adjoining residential neighborhood? The RFP includes a map that helps to answer that question, which I'll return to in closing. So it's this one. Then I studied the development agreement, and I noted that it requires NDC to seek community input in arriving at a design. And NDC has convened not a single additional public meeting in the time since, no effort to try to engage or mollify the project's numerous opponents, not even for appearances' sake. So that's .01%, 3.7%. I would hope that these are not the sorts of numbers that the council envisioned when it signed the development agreement. So to me, on this basis alone, NDC has not lived up to its legal obligations. Yet I discovered another data point, too, one that helps to explain, I think, how profoundly this process has gone off the rails. It has to do with that question I opened with, what counts as an adjoining residential neighborhood, which is also to ask who counts in this process. Take a look at the other map I've given you from NDC's public meetings in 2017. It shows streets within a radius of a five-minute walk and a 10-minute walk of the junction, which means that it conflicts with the council's new, you know, considerations on racial equity in that it encompasses not only wards 2 and 3, but also wards 1 and 4. I was so struck by this discovery, even NDC tacitly acknowledged back in early 2017 that the rent-stable apartments on Lee Avenue are implicated in this project. But there's more to say. Do you see what else I saw on this map? Do you notice how it's cropped? Do you notice that Maple Avenue is not even on the map? So Maple Avenue is on the city's initial RFP map, but is not on NDC's map. And so in closing, I ask you to think about what this gerrymandered vision of the Tacoma Junction, of its cultural geography suggests about how this process has unfolded. Thank you.
We have Stuart Gagan, Emily Combe, and Karen Elrich. Do we have Stuart here still? No? Okay, so then Emily, you're next.
Hi, Emily Combe from Ward 3. As a part of Youth Against the Proposed Development, a Tacoma Park resident and a young person of color, I am more than disappointed. The NDC's plan does not meet the needs of Tacoma Park residents, specifically residents of low income and of color. The fact that Tacoma Park residents are even having to convince city council members, people elected to represent and protect our best interests, not to approve this plan is honestly shocking, to say the least. To the people saying we have spent long enough on this development, I respectfully don't think that's a valid reason to approve this plan. If we are granting a 99-year lease and $5 million subsidy, I want it to be because we have found what the majority feels is the best option, not the quickest option. The city council is failing to follow through on two stated priorities: creating a livable community for all and community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. The racial equity consideration on the city council's website outlines no concrete actions on how they will do this. What it did state was that it lacks the data to take meaningful steps towards racial equality. Instead of delaying the current plan to conduct research, city officials favor plowing ahead with a developer that will create more consumer options for rich, mostly white residents. The Co-op is a unique space in which I, a person of color, feel welcome. If I wanted to be followed around in overpriced shops, then I would go to Bethesda. I have yet to see how this clear gentrification will benefit our diverse and unique community here. The county claimed, the council claimed it will survey residents of color about the types of businesses they desire at the junction. But only NDC has this decision-making power, and it will undoubtedly sell to the highest bidder. This bidder will not be a small locally-owned business, as NDC originally promised, but instead two Bethesda-styled, high-end retail stores. The council has yet to address the relationship between a new upscale development and a large cluster of aging rent-stabilized apartments, such as the ones on Lee and Maple Avenue. Their cost of living in the vicinity of the junction and the overall quality of life for surrounding residents are all at risk due to this plan. I am not asking for the Tacoma Junction period -- development to stop, period. I am asking that you postpone your vote and find a plan that specifically addresses and at least attempts to mitigate the problems minorities, specifically people of color and people of low income, will face if you approve this plan. Thank you.
My name is Karen Elrich, and I've lived in Tacoma Park 35 years, and my home is in District 5. I'm here to ask you to please pause this development and resolve our concerns. The fire chief who is concerned about the response time with a lay-by, the businesses across the street who worry about rising rents and other issues, the Board of Historic Tacoma concerned about the size and lack of harmony with current buildings, seven former members of the Tacoma Park City Council urge a community process to create a consensus, the People's Junction, and many others worried about the economic equity of the project, expert architects, expert developers, expert environmentalists, professors, economic experts, many of the elders who have lived in Tacoma Park who have shaped the city to what it is now, 49 young Tacoma voters and 29 Tacoma-adjacent allies whose signatures were collected in less than 24 hours, an analysis of emails sent to the council showing two-thirds of the writers had concerns about the development, over 1,000 signatures on a petition and rising traffic study concerns, the city's own racial equity questions raised by this project have not been addressed. Would the project create no barriers or hardship for communities of color? Will it provide new opportunities for communities of color? Who would be drawn to shop, eat, relax, or work in this development? How does that compare with our current situation? Could the project lead to greater inclusivity in the city? How would it affect existing local minority-owned businesses and property owners? Sound familiar? These are your words. How would it affect existing -- our youth council concerns? And I quote from the youth council, "With increased foot traffic to the junction, there will most likely be more young people walking along Carroll Avenue, a busy road. The location of the public space proposed by the Neighborhood Development Company is right next to the street, and if the children stop to play or run around, it appears to us to present a serious safety risk. Having more automobile traffic and larger trucks parking in the near lay-by may cause additional danger. If you vote yes on this project without these concerns being addressed, we will continue in whatever ways we can to block this project. If you vote no to the project, we will be here to work with you and help create an imaginative, safe, environmentally sound, racially equitable project. Please, pause the vote, improve the project, and unify our city."
Chris Bassett? Chris. And then Margaret McDowell is going to go, and then Rachel Hardwick, and Michelle Rosenfeld.
So first, I'd like to thank the mayor for helping us make a decent bedtime.
Yeah.
Really appreciate that. I also want to ask everybody to respect both all of your neighbors and the process, regardless of the perspective. I've heard boos coming from both directions, and I think we can be better than that. So please, whatever you think of what I have to say and others', please be respectful about it. I'm Chris. I live on Boyd Avenue. We've lived there for about eight years now, and more than half of that's been occupied by this phase of this process where we've just gotten up to where we might decide on moving forward with an initial plan, which is a long process. I mean, people, and I know that's the tip of the iceberg, that it's gone on for 20 years before that. I know that any plan could theoretically be more perfect. There are more kinks to be worked out. And this process is designed, from this point forward, also to have elements of the process being worked out with the state, with the city, with the historic board. The process doesn't stop here. But the process should continue from here because it has so many potential benefits for the city. I appreciated that, you know, this has been inclusive, comprehensive, responsive. I hear people saying that it's not mystified because they've had, we've had dialogues, we've had meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting of public comment on this. We've had one-on-ones, a survey, community working groups, just to get to this step of the process. And there's more. This isn't the end of the road. This is a stage along which we continue being engaged with one another and continue improving this without having to say we stop and we don't do anything until everybody's happy. Like Tim Mail said, like, this is way more than parts of the city that we know and love and have come to accept as like a part of our healthy, happy community, and they haven't had nearly the investment of attention and effort that the council has given, that the city has given, that all of you have given, to have your considerations heard, and that will continue to be heard in the next stages of this process. I'm here for my wife and myself to voice strong support for the council moving forward with the plan to develop the junction. We're really excited to see this approaching fruition. A viable, valuable, walkable, LEED-certified, green-roofed sort of restaurants and diverse shops is going to be a boon, especially with this approach that both saves public dollars, that we're not delving into a large amount of public investment because we're having a developer pay for it to profit off of it. Profit is useful. It gets somebody to pay for what we need, which we need is tax revenue. And people talk about tax revenue like it's the devil, like it's going to be the end of it, like it's Reagan himself come to, you know, wreak havoc upon us. But this is not trickle-down economics. Revenue is what pays for after-school programs. Revenue is what pays for affordable housing and rent control. Revenue is generated by a tax base, and a parking lot or a tiny, non-viable commercial development is not going to provide the support that our community needs particularly.
Thank you. Yep, that's it. That's time.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Have a good bedtime. All right. Margaret McDowell, Rachel, and Michelle.
Hi, thank you. My name is Margaret McDonald. I've lived in Tacoma Park on Trescott Avenue, Ward 2, for almost nine years. I'm also speaking on behalf of some of my neighbors in the Between the Creeks neighborhood, Kelly and Caleb Gibson, Casey and Sam Brown, and Jess and Caesar Ibanez Heppen. While I've advocated on Capitol Hill many times for fighting malaria, for alleviating poverty, for fighting for gun safety laws, I've never attended a council meeting, this is my first time speaking. I'm here to urge you to vote yes on this resolution for Tacoma Junction. I'm in support of moving the project forward for a number of reasons. I support small businesses already in the junction area, including the Co-op, including the bakery, including the dry cleaner, and I want them to have more foot traffic. I support a more vibrant junction that attracts more small, local, and regional businesses to the new development. I live in Ward 2 in the Long Branch Sligo neighborhood. I have three young kids, and I look forward to walking with them and meeting neighbors from Ward 6, 3, 2, all across Tacoma Park, meeting them in the Tacoma Junction in a revitalized space to meet with them, patronize small businesses, and enjoy community events. We're not talking about Bethesda. We're not talking about an eight-lane highway. We're talking about one building that houses locally-owned businesses. I appreciate the environmental improvements the development will mean for the junction. Getting rid of an asphalt parking lot, replacing it with a sustainable building, with a vegetative roof and other energy-conserving features is an important contribution to mitigating the effects of environmental damage. I support and am excited about the potential infrastructure changes to improve circulation. The results of traffic studies indicate we already have a commuter traffic problem. We already know that, no matter what happens. But the development can help spur the infrastructure improvements that will help fix it, which would be good for pedestrians, bikers, and for car traffic. Finally, I support the city's goals to have a financially productive property that private persons, someone else, is going to help pay for, to increase the tax base, provide revenue to the city, which will enable us to direct funds to other important initiatives and projects, such as affordable housing, addressing racial equality, overcrowding in schools, and other inclusionary policies that all of us in Tacoma Park embrace, and that's part of the reason we live here. I know the specific details of NDC's site plan will change during the county and state review process. There's more work to be done in the phases to come. I appreciate the city council's commitment to paying close attention to ensure that city's goals and anticipated benefits are realized. Thank you Mayor Stewart, Councilwoman DiBella, and city council members for all of your hard work and dedication to our community. Please vote yes. Thanks.
Hi, Rachel Hardwick. I'm president of the Co-op Board, and as you've heard, I'm happy to say that mediation is underway. Mr. Dozier, the mediator, met with Co-op representatives earlier this week in a lengthy meeting, and we expect to meet with him again in the next several days. We understand he also met with Adrian Washington of NDC. Thank you for encouraging the parties to go through this process. Based on our initial discussion with the mediator, we believe that the parties all will be better informed about what is possible, what is feasible, and what accommodations can and cannot be made in the context of the project. We believe that it's in the Co-op's best interest, and even in the city's best interest, for the council to have the benefit of this information before voting on the NDC project. I again ask you to schedule the vote on the concept plan after mediation is concluded so that we can have the best site plan layout before it is filed with the Montgomery County Planning Board. As you know, the most significant challenge that the Co-op faces is getting safe, efficient, and reliable delivery of our products. We have been asked many times about use of our Sycamore parking lot for overflow deliveries. Let me be clear, using the Sycamore lot for deliveries does not solve the overarching delivery challenges of the current project design. Why not? Because in our study of deliveries, we confirmed that the Co-op has multiple deliveries arriving at various and unpredictable times during the week. Our delivery study does not evaluate the impact of deliveries that will serve the retail, restaurant, and office deliveries that the NDC project will generate. We are not in a position to predict those numbers, but we do know that retail stores, like a grocery store, rely on delivery of the products they sell to stay in business. Assuming these stores are successful, they will receive products often. A restaurant, just like a grocery store, will require frequent deliveries of fresh food, and if it's a successful restaurant, will have frequent deliveries. And office users also receive deliveries: office furniture, supplies, vending machine, and coffee services, and so on. The lay-by will be in significant demand by many users. The multiple delivery challenges that the Co-op faces will not be unique to us once the new building is in use. So what will happen if the current design is approved? We know that some drivers will park trucks next to the lay-by in the traffic lane. We know this will happen. Drivers that were interviewed as part of the Co-op delivery study told us they would do this. Parking in 410 is not a good solution. What else is not a good solution? Driving delivery trucks through residential neighborhoods, waiting for space in the lay-by to become available. And approving the NDC project before addressing this issue is not a good solution either. It is not a good solution for the Co-op, for the city, or for the neighborhood, for people who drive on 410, or for NDC's future tenants. And therefore, we ask you to delay your vote until we can address these issues through mediation. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Michelle Rosenfeld, legal counsel to the Co-op, and thank you for giving me time to speak tonight. First of all, speaking specifically to the resolution that's before you, on behalf of the Co-op, we ask that you please instate the, include the language that the Co-op had asked for in the text of the resolution itself. First, we ask that you affirm that the current project does not yet satisfy the reasonable accommodation requirements of the development agreement, and that the council will direct NDC, as needed, to change its site plan to provide reasonable accommodations, even if it's later in the development review process before the planning board. We have been clear that it's our view that reasonable accommodations have not been provided, and we believe that the resolution should affirmatively state that. Secondly, with respect to expansion into the NDC project, the Co-op has been encouraged to consider expansion, and this commitment would be a long-term, expensive, and complicated transactional agreement. It's not without risk. However, once the plan is filed with the planning board, the city will lose jurisdiction over what happens with the project. The planning board has jurisdiction over the site plan, not the city. I understand that the city relies on a supermajority provision in the state law that says that if the city sends a resolution to the planning board, that the planning board needs to adopt a supermajority vote in order to overturn what it is that the city would request. And as former lead attorney for the planning board, I can say that there is no guarantee as to what happens when a plan is presented in that process. We also understand it's the city's position that it can turn I understand that the city relies on a supermajority provision in the state law that says that if the city sends a resolution to the planning board, that the planning board needs to adopt a supermajority vote in order to overturn what it is that the city would request. And as former lead attorney for the planning board, I can say that there is no guarantee as to what happens when a plan is presented in that process. We also understand it's the city's position that it can terminate the project at any time if the council doesn't like how things move forward. We've asked for legal support for this position. We have not received it. The development is complex. The development agreement is complex. It's technically detailed, and it's imprudent for the co-op to rely on general public statements regarding this legal authority. And why is it important that the co-op know what the legal status is of this issue? Because again, if the plan is, moves forward without having reasonable accommodations and the city lacks authority to change that plan, then the co-op is left without recourse. Finally, the question of the lots. One of these lots is owned by the city. Another lot that will be presented in this subdivision plan is owned by NDC. There's a subdivision regulation that says that buildings cannot be built across lot lines. We've heard that there's a legal opinion that this can be resolved later or perhaps can be addressed later. Again, with a long-term lease, the co-op is at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have Juan Morilana, if I pronounced that correctly, and Jonathan Browning next?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you to everyone who's here. I didn't prepare anything, I just wanted to keep it short. I am from Tacoma Park. I actually grew up on Domer Avenue in Tacoma Park on the Piney Branch side. I currently live right here on Carroll Avenue. I support the development. I think it'll be great for the community. It will create jobs. I am a teacher. I don't make that much money. I cannot afford the co-op prices. I take my money elsewhere where I can afford groceries, even though the co-op is great for some things. I think that we can come to a resolution where we can both be happy. But I really do think the development will be great for the community. It'll bring jobs. I already take my money to downtown Silver Spring. I take it to other places. I would love to keep my money in the city of Tacoma Park as someone who has been here my whole life, and I really do think that the development will be great for the community. Thank you so much.
Hi there. I also didn't really prepare anything, so I'm super nervous. But I'm Jonathan Browning. I've been here for about five years. I actually grew up in Howard County, Maryland, in Columbia, which you probably guys all would hate because it's a planned community and everything. And when I came down here, I was really excited because I thought this was a place to be kind of free to be you and me and everything, and we talk about diversity, inclusion, and I say, we talked about that because when I moved down here, I moved to Linden Avenue in Ward 6, and that's kind of, I feel like, a forgotten end of Tacoma Park. And my ceiling fell and things like that happened, but we're all talking about a junction here. And again, I'm also a teacher. I'm a Spanish teacher that's coming to Montgomery County to teach Spanish to our kids that are in this Ward 6 and Ward 5 that are needing more education like that, but we're still worried about things like, that are serving our very affluent community that's really in the hub of Tacoma Park. So I again also support working on this development and being able to come to a resolution together. Thank you.
Walter Miles. Is he still here?
Lincoln Avenue. I don't know. I really just want to register my opposition to the proposal in its current form. I think it needs a lot of work. I think traffic, again, is a huge issue, and I'm not sure that I have a suggestion. You know, I imagine it's going to involve a very great application of very new technology, and I wish us all luck on that. But I, at any rate, I think, I really hope that this is delayed until the negotiations between the co-op and NDC take place. And thanks very much.
Thank you. Julie Farb. Is Julie Farb still here? Yeah. There's Julie.
Good evening. My name is Julie Farb. I live at 711 Devonshire Avenue in Ward 2. Councilmember Cindy DiBalla, thank you to all of you for the work you've put into this project over the many years I've lived in Tacoma Park, which is approaching 16, I believe, now, and I've been in Ward 2 the entire time. For those of you who are familiar with Ward 2, it is a long walk up 410 to the junction, and it is very close, in my case, a half a block off New Hampshire Avenue, which could certainly use some more love from the city in addition to some of the other parts of the city that folks have mentioned. I would like to reframe comments that have been made about the development and the generation of tax revenue being referred to as trickle-down. I'm a Tacoma Park resident, and the way I see it is that it's a redistribution of wealth from affluent neighborhood around the junction that can then be invested in parts of the city like mine. I'm not going to repeat things that other folks have said that I agree with very much. I think this process has been incredibly transparent, deliberate and inclusive, and I know it will continue to be, so I'm not worried about moving ahead now without every detail resolved. I will continue to be part of the process and register my opinion, and I know that you all will remain engaged and committed to the principles and values of the city that I've loved being a part of for the last 15 years, so I thank you very much for your work on it and urge you to move ahead and pass the resolution. Thank you.
Stephen Kern. And then Burn Kelly, you're next, and Karen, if you guys want to make your way down here.
Stephen Kern, Ward 2. Please postpone the vote on the latest NDC plan scheduled for July 25th until 1:00, the completion of the co-op mediation, 2:00, until we have a better understanding of traffic flow and road reconfiguration, and 3:00, until folks are back from vacation. I suggest the council vote, take a vote in September. From my understanding, the co-op has accepted the lay-by, but they still need a place for small truck delivery. Without it, we might lose our grocery store. Let's make sure this has been ironed out before approving the plan. Traffic, as has been stated, why vote for a plan now when there's still so much we don't know about the future of the intersection? I'll put it to you this way: If you cannot go on record tonight during the work session to assure us that no money for road construction will come out of the city budget, including the removal of Morrison Park, then I think you should delay the vote until you can say that. Vacation, this is a key vote. Many residents are out of town in July and August. What's the rush? Voting in July has the makings of a Friday night news dump. Would the city, would the city beach be in breach of contract if we wait until September? It seems to me, Mayor Stewart, that you're now prepared or close to being prepared to move forward with only 50% of residents in favor of the latest NDC plan. Taking this vote at this time looks to me like it would be more proof. 50%? Is that really the way we want to go here? When things go south during construction, and they will, or if we lose the co-op, which we might, won't you want all of us in your corner to see it through? This should not be a 50-50 deal. This is a project that's too important. I believe that for this project to be a success, you'll need as many residents in favor of it as there were for the co-op coming to the junction 20 years ago. I think you can do it, Mayor Stewart. I sincerely believe a two-thirds majority is within your reach. Why not start by postponing the vote until the co-op and NDC can shake hands and we have a better idea of what the intersection will become and what it will cost? Councilmember DiBalla said the reason the resolution can't wait is because the council has a responsibility to the developer. What about the council's responsibility to us? Please show us that you're prepared to do, please show us that you're prepared to do everything in your power to unite this community. Please give us a little more time to iron out the outstanding issues, maybe even improve the plans. Please don't leave half of us behind. We all want to be able to cheer when NDC or some other developer finally breaks ground because we all want to develop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love it. Go Burn.
Hey, Burn.
Put the fog in the new building.
We tried that, and they said no.
Good idea.
It was a great idea. We tried that two years ago.
My name's Burn Kelly. I'm a small business owner. I employ about 12 people from Central America, and they get food on their table from my work every day. In addition, I'm working on this plan. I asked this council to project this plan tonight so that everyone could see it and would go on record. I didn't get it in on time, and no one of the council members could make it happen after Kate Stewart said it will not happen. I'm very disappointed. I moved to Tacoma Park, out of Washington DC where I grew up. I'm an elder. I moved here in 1983. I've lived in three houses and three wards. I own four lots. I pay a lot of taxes. I care about this city. I paved the parking in front of the old co-op. I helped move the co-op to the new site. I did a feasibility study for Mr. Antonelli, who owned the site which you, the city, bought. Only Terry Siemens is here to know about that. I'm also the person that led the way and changed the boundaries of Tacoma Park to New Hampshire and Eastern Avenues, and economic development was one of the winning reasons we changed the boundaries. So was public safety and response time from the fire department. You need logical boundaries. You need to have protection for everybody. You need to have services for everybody. Tacoma Park has been doing a good job of that. This council, some of you just came on. You talk about this is taking so long. You're brand-new. I've been here forever, and so has Terry and Howard and, you know, Reno. We care about this. So I have a plan. I'm not against the development. I'm for what the people are asking you for. And even Adrian Washington invited me to his offices, and I met with him about this plan. And I said, Adrian, you're getting a sweetheart deal, and it's on a graduated basis. So why don't you consider giving the co-op a sweetheart deal on the same graduated basis? Why are we sticking it to the co-op at day one? This plan has a 40-foot space between the NDC building and the co-op, which is what you're going to need to keep public space public and to build, to have a place to set up trailers and the things that are necessary. I build buildings. I've built towns. I've built roads. I've worked with SHA. I've worked with Duberion Davis, Ben Dyer, EQR, Banky Nurseries. I have been around the block, and I've lived in Tacoma Park for 37 years. And I ask you all to take a look at a plan which meets what NDC wants, but if you look in the windows of what the uses are, they're the uses of the stakeholders, the uses for everybody. Howard Cohen wants a place we can have a dance party. Forty by 100 square feet is 4,000 square feet. It's big enough for two semi-trucks. And yes, Mayor, SHA will allow that. I've met with SHA, okay? And guess what? We now, you got the county to control the traffic lights. We're even better off because it's just a matter of a transponder and a 90-second, non-rush hour hold so the trucks can back across the intersection that are laying by the bakery, okay? They don't have to drive around. That's a logical place, Grant Avenue, for one truck to lay by if another truck is in there, and the loading zone can go two trucks. There's also 16 to 32 live-work apartments which require no parking. This is a different kind of subsidized housing. If people live and work in this building, they don't need to commute, so they don't need a car, and they don't need to have money spent on transportation. It's called affordable housing as well. The building is the same height, the same height as the building that you wanted, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Hi, my name is Karen Theophile. I'm a resident of Ward 3, Westmoreland Avenue, for 20 years, and I wish to cede my three minutes to Burn Kelly.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, I had already extended you additional time. You had requested five minutes, and I gave you the five minutes. It's, it's really not, there are a lot of people waiting.
I'm sorry, I wasn't aware you gave me the five minutes. I, I thought I was eclipsed from showing this on the video. The, Kate, I got the message from the clerk that said you denied both.
The policy of the city, because of the capacity of our IT department, is we need slide 24 hours ahead of time. So, Corinne, if you'd like to speak, but I would just say, we did extend you the additional time you requested earlier, Mr. Kelly, so.
I had no idea you did that.
I understood that I was allowed to cede my time.
Yeah, so I had two attorneys tell me to have somebody come up and cede their time because we believe in democracy here. We believe that we are supposed to be.
Mr. Kelly, I have a very long list of people here.
I understand that. I don't want to make a rout. I just think that that's awkward, okay? I think that's very awkward.
So I'd really like to ask Dara Corrigan to come up, and Reginald is next.
Thank you, Burn. Thank you, Burn.
Hi. Good evening, council. My name's Derek Corrigan. I live on Park Avenue in Ward 1. I've lived there for now 11 years. I used to live on Sherman. I actually went and lived in Belgium for three years, and when I came back, this debate was, had been going on for at least a year, more actually. And the parking lot is very close to where we live, and my daughter asked me why I was coming when I was involved in the negotiations over the dog park, and she saw me lose sleep, that it is really important. I thought it was important to come back because of the experience that I had there and some of what I hear, hear in this room. And I was really surprised when people started talking about a dog park in Tacoma Park years and years ago, and I think it took about five to seven years to get it in its place. It was a very long time. And there were really, as there are now, very, very smart people thinking about something that meant a lot to certain people, to other people it didn't matter at all. And there was a lot, there was a lot of talk in between. But I remember at one point, I mean, I think there are lots of different ideas here. There are things about Tacoma Park that I don't like at all. I do love my dog, and I think, I think a lot of people love their dogs. But I had somebody say to me, you care more about your dog than you do about children, which is really not true, but I would put that over here. There weren't many people that spoke like that. Most of the people were wondering about how do you use this piece of property? And that's a fair question, and how much should the city spend on it? All really good questions that I think people had a very long time to hash out, but at some point, there are always more questions. The facts are there, and frankly, if you think there are questions that can't be answered or haven't been answered, that should inform how you vote. And I think you have, you've had a lot of transparency in this process. You've listened to a lot of different people. I've listened to a lot of people. Walking in here, Rachel Hardwick, know her really well. She's on the co-op board. My neighbors, someone who I sat, you know, in yoga class with this week, kids who I see running around. It is really important for you to think of all, all of these diverse opinions, but at some point, you do have to decide, and you have to say, there are either too many questions and we need to pause, or we have the answers to our question and we have the facts and we've done enough due diligence and we want to proceed forward. I think we are at that point where you can make that decision. From one person's perspective, I would vote, I think this project has terrific possibility, and I think you can make a decision now where then we can move together to figure out what that possibility can be, but I'm in favor of the possibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reggie, you're next.
Hello, Tacoma Park family. All right. Hello, Tacoma Park family. We are family. It's okay to handle family business, okay? So let's not, all right. By the way, I wanted to be here a little earlier, but I got stuck at the light when we were coming down. I am not against development. I am against development that doesn't put community first. This development, this development is supposed to help local businesses. Well, the co-op is a local business, and it's having to mediate for its life. And you, you may vote before the mediation is completed. That put, that's putting corporate interests before the community, before we even, before they, before the, before the corporation even lays a brick down. You've, you've taken time, but four years compared to what? The choice is our community first over corporation interests. Yes, develop, but in the interest of our community. That's, that's our culture. In our family, in our family Tacoma Park family, there are those in the family who can't afford the changes. I can afford the changes, but guess what? I don't want to leave part of my family behind. So when we're talking about this and we look at pure examples that are already going on, like. like in Ward 6, they produce the most business income, and yet they have the least amount be directed toward them, and people are talking about how this income is going to have, be directed toward other needy situations. We see examples of where that's not already happening already. With the co-op, we see that we, the city, the city, by the way, by the way, the history of that is that the co-op asked the city to buy their property so it would not be developed like this. That was a part of that. And by the way, how do I know that? I've lived here over 50 years. So with that said, we're going to either put the, we're going to either put, and what we're deciding, by the way, this is whether whatever side you're on, what we're deciding, by the way, is our culture, our way of life, what we're going to do, because 100 years, remember, in 2020, we got reelections, but also, they're talking about putting the purple line through. If they're in favor of corporate interests now, what do you think was going to happen when the corporate line goes through? In 2045, when they, in 2045, when they, when they, when they talk about moving forward within 2045, again, corporate interests. If they do that now, what do you think's going to happen? If you, and this is not, and by the way, by the way, this is not against anybody. We're not picking on anyone or any individual because we're family. But at the same time, as family, we may have some, we may have our disagreements, but at the same time, we can come to some kind of middle ground. We're, again, not against development. We're against any kind of thing that puts corporate interests ahead of our community, our community first. That is our culture. Thank you.
Can I have Yujit Bhakara? Sorry, I'm probably, I'm sorry.
My name is Yudhjit Padicharji, and I've lived in Tacoma Park for 11 years. But even if I lived the next 30, I'm sure some people have trouble pronouncing my name. So I'll repeat it. It's Yudhjit Padicharji. I live on Carroll Avenue, very close to the junction, and I'm here to speak in support of the development. I, I'll keep it very brief. I don't have any prepared remarks. So the first point I want to make is that, you know, I have a lot of friends who are in support of the development, and I also have friends who are opposed to the development, and I want to tell them all that we'll remain friends no matter what decision is taken on, on the 25th, or if there is a decision taken on the 25th, because I understand that, that having heard some of the speakers tonight, that, that some people want this decision to be postponed. The second point is that when I moved here 11 years ago, there was no Ace Hardware, there was no Republic Restaurant, there was no Spring Mill Bakery, and I know that, that my life has definitely improved because those businesses came into town. So I know that's a very simplistic way of looking at it, and, and I've heard people make statements about, you know, racial equity and, and justice and things like that, and I want to, I want to absorb all of that, but I, I still want to keep my own points simple. I also, as a person of color myself, you know, I, I feel welcome shopping at the co-op. I think the co-op is a good establishment, but I'd feel more welcome if the prices were a little lower. So, and I think that that is relevant because I, I feel like the co-op has become a very, very sort of contentious player in this debate when it shouldn't be. I think most of us want the co-op to thrive. I certainly want the co-op to thrive, and I, I believe that, that the modifications that have been made to the plan would allow the co-op to thrive. Finally, I want to say that I know some people have spoken in favor of hitting the pause button on this, but, you know, I, I really don't think that we should wait. I think that we're ready to, to make a decision, so you either vote yes or vote no. I think you should vote yes to the development, and I'll end with a little poem from Ogden Nash, who said, "No child is ever too young to know that later dear means never."
Jordy, and then Max Parnas, and Mike Royst.
I live on Sherman Avenue, Ward 3. As everyone knows, there's been much written and said about the Junction development over the years. One of the most common complaints has been that this project will transform cool funky Tacoma Park into corporate form-fitting Bethesda, and I just don't buy that notion. Just want to give one small example to illustrate that. A few months ago, Tacoma Park hosted the American Primitive Guitar Festival. Many of you may have attended, as I did, and not 50 feet from where we're all standing in this very building, there was a physical altercation, a fight over the definition of primitive guitar. Now, at the end of the day, I believe this community will continue to host awesome events like the festival and continue to be passionate about issues both incredibly important, like immigration and guns and racial justice, and ones not so existential, like the definition of primitive guitar and the revitalization of the Junction. But all the talk of Bethesda does make me think there's an analogy that's a better fit, and for me, that's Virginia. Nothing against the Commonwealth. My brother lives there, but often when I'm driving around, I feel that it's a testament to unplanned development, to sprawl. In my mind, and I know others feel differently, this debate is not about the co-op, as it will almost certainly benefit from the development and increased foot traffic. It's about what to do after over 20 years of debate with a small unsightly parking lot that has been vacant for decades. A lot that is an infill site that is at the intersection of two highways, one that is accessible by pedestrians and public transit. For me, someone who grew up in the country and saw thousands of acres of land turned into cookie-cutter shops and houses, I know where development doesn't belong. But this location, a literal junction, is a place where development makes sense. There's a documented need for it, as made clear by the OTBA. The tax resource from it can be used to enhance the community for the benefit of others, and there's so much evidence to back that assertion. The fact is, if we block a redevelopment project again, as we did 20 years ago for a similar project for the same reasons being bandied about today, we are turning our back on everything smart growth principles demand and are only pushing development where it shouldn't be. So I support this resolution, and I hope the council will do the same. After 20-plus years, we're not in any way hurrying. It's time, and I hope the council will move forward. Thank you.
Max?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Max Parnas. I live on Aspen Avenue in Ward 2 with my six-month-old daughter and wife, who is a city planner who also supports this development. I want to thank everybody up here tonight and everybody in the audience. It's been a very long process. Thanks for all the time you put in. Many of you are much more patient than I can ever hope to be. I live less than 10 minutes' walking distance from the Junction. I go through the Junction virtually every day. I take the 12, or 13, or 16 buses to and from the metro most of the time. I shop at the co-op. I do my dry cleaning at Carriage House. I get pastries I probably shouldn't be eating at Spring Mill. We bring our cat to the vet there. We're, you know, there all the time. And so my point here is I'm, I'm around the Junction a lot. I experience the traffic. You know, I, I get the good things out of the new businesses, including Soul Food. Want to give them a shout-out. I, I support moving ahead with the site plan and proposed redevelopment. I hope you'll vote to go along with that. I don't think that the current plan is perfect. I think that there is certainly room for improvement, but I think one thing that has been forgotten in a lot of this discussion is how, how do you finance that? There are calls for a smaller project. I would be open to that if someone can show me definitively that the economics would work on that. The developer's going to have to get money from somebody. They don't want to loan money to a project that's not going to give them the rated return that they're accustomed to. And for better or for worse, that's how these developments happen. Unless the city is interested in raising taxes or issuing a bond, you know, you have to get the money to build the development. So let's be honest, we should be frank about what we can get and what we can't get. Traffic, that's one key issue I want to talk about just because I go through it every day. Traffic studies tell us something we already know, right? It's bad. Anybody who's ever sat in the bus knows that for sure. They also tell us that there's definitely ways to improve the current situation. In fact, there's a lot of good measures, countermeasures that can be taken. I'm of the opinion that traffic just gets worse anyway if you don't do anything, so I think it's a great opportunity to take some definitive action and, and resolve the traffic issues at the Junction. One other point is the, we were talking about the lay-by before. The co-op's own data show that their peak demand for truck parking space in the unit of feet is 108 feet at 6:45 AM. This is their own data. And the proposed lay-by is 137 feet. So, you know, you probably need a little bit more room for the trucks to pull in and out. It's not perfect, but fortunately, the, the co-op has their parking lot, which they could use, and I have seen trucks unloading there. So I, I think that if everybody takes a solutions-oriented approach to this, I'm hopeful that the mediation will help with that. And again, I just want to urge you to, to move ahead. I think there's been a lot of robust discussion. Time's come to make a decision. I don't know what additional information we'll get from waiting any further. So thanks again. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mike, Mike Royst still here?
Yeah.
There you are. And then we're going to have Joseph Klockner, Denise Jones, and Robert Anderson, if you guys want to make your way over.
Good evening. My name is Mike Royst. I live in Ward 1 on Park Avenue. I continue to strongly support the revitalization effort for Tacoma Junction for all the positive reasons stated on the city's website. I know you, as a council, will make sure the development is functional for basic business needs. My only specific comment tonight on the plan is about the proposed building design. It's an idea Councilmember Kovar thought of, and that is to have the facade of the proposed building be parallel to Carroll Avenue. So if you look at the site plan, you can see what I'm talking about. That would allow for a slightly wider sidewalk space. So Peter, I hope you talk to your colleagues about that tonight. It's time, it's time to make a decision and vote yes for a plan that will benefit the community as a whole. This community deserves better than a parking lot. Thank you.
All right. Then we had Joseph Klockner and Denise Jones. There's Joseph, and there's Denise. Okay.
Joseph Klockner, Ward 2. I've worked in the construction industry for over 45 years, 45 years of projects from industrial to commercial to residential. In all of those years, I've seen every kind of unusual situation you could imagine, and some you couldn't. There's one universal law in the construction industry, and that is Murphy's Law. For those unfamiliar, it goes like this. If something can go wrong, it will. Many of us witnessed this firsthand with the construction of this very building. The way you minimize the effects of Murphy's Law is not by handing your project off to a developer by giving them a sweet deal and assuming that it is their problem now, but by thorough and exhaustive professional planning. It would be nice to think that we could hand this off to NDC, and the counting and our problems would be over, but that is certainly wishful thinking. While this process has been long and arduous, the question, question before us today is, is the current design acceptable to a clear majority, and is the planning complete enough to move to the next stage? From what I can see, the answer is certainly not yet. Any project in, that is, in the planning stages does not have all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. At each step along the way is most assuredly a debacle waiting to happen. This project, in its current form, is just such a project. From numerous design questions to a clear lack of consensus to multiple unresolved traffic and legal issues, this project is simply not ready to move forward. As many design professionals have testified, the process has been flawed. The rush to push this through based on an arbitrary timeline is extremely unwise. There's simply no compelling or common sense reason to send this to the county in its current form. Clearly, the development agreement, based on certain assumptions that haven't panned out, needs revision or scrapping altogether. Even if it is kept in its basic form, it evidently has areas of flexibility within it, as recently demonstrated by the passing of the anchor tenant deadline without repercussions and the extension of the ground lease timeline. At this extremely sensitive time, turning control of the city's property over to NDC prematurely on September 1st is a serious misstep. Our options dwindle rapidly from that point on. The county review process, once sanctioned by you, is perfunctory. Maybe not a classic rubber stamp, but the various agencies historically do not mess with the local jurisdiction's will. Like many of you, they will nibble around the edges in a weak effort to tweak, refine, and simply review code compliance, but they will not initiate a thorough reconceptualization. That opportunity is clearly yours, and that time is clearly now. Please do not vote on to approve this resolution. The debacle potential is seriously high, and the community consensus is seriously low. Simply put, we can do better. We can be the progressive innovators that our reputation is based on. It is incumbent upon those councilmembers who know this in their hearts to resist the incredible peer pressure being applied.
Thank you, Mr. Klockner.
Thank you. Thank you.
I haven't really prepared remarks tonight. I think Emily spoke for me earlier this evening, but there are, I want, I do have a few things to say. There are many in this city who prefer the site plan not to move forward as is. Development isn't bad, but doesn't work for everybody, and everyone here who calls Tacoma Park home. And I don't think you can really say that. I think you, you did try to say that in the racial equity statement that you first put out, but when I read the new racial equity considerations last Friday, as I told you, Mayor, I was astonished, and then I was really angry, and then I was really, really sad. I was really sad because it felt dismissive, it lacked a rubric for accountability, it was disingenuous to the best interests of the constituency that you've been elected to serve. It exacerbated, exacerbates existing polarization, segregation, and it's antithetical to the public narrative of a community that seeks to be inclusive, cohesive, and cooperative. I, I am, I, I think that those considerations, as someone else earlier said this evening, they're the first part of the conversation that I would expect the council and the city staff to have in enacting the, the assessment of racial equity and economic impact policy that you had adopted over a year ago. You, you just codified the beginning of a conversation and not, and didn't really move forward. In fact, it felt very much like a step backward. I don't recall reading in the draft resolution that there's any real, there's any real consideration of racial equity. And, and I live on Maple Avenue. I do not see this as being a step forward for the residents who are concerned about affordable housing in Wards 4 and 5. Well, actually, anywhere in the city, but especially in Wards 4 and 5. I don't see that. As to others who, I, I, a couple other things I want to say. I do find it very troubling that I'm being sold on trickle-down economics. That, that didn't work in the 80s. It's not working now. I am, I can't see a lead roof being more important than the people who live nearby. And for the person who want to say that they were ashamed, you can keep your shame. We have a right to be able to have this public discussion. Thank you.
Is Rick Vitulow here still? Rick, are you still here? Oh, there you are. Okay. And then Alan Strasser, Marcos, can't see the last name because with an S, and Esther Segal.
Rick Vitulow, Ward 2. I don't really have any prepared remarks, but I guess I really just want to be a little bit of a Greek chorus in terms of what I'm hearing, and I'm hearing a lot of people for the development that seem to think that the people against the development want a parking lot, and I don't see that. And I really urge you to listen to the people that are talking against this development, and I think a lot of them want development, but they don't want this development. And I think there's many reasons for that in terms of the process, in terms of getting, getting a real owner's representative, and I think Joan Duncan's going to talk about that later, but I think there are some really valid reasons, at least not to vote for it on the 25th. I think primarily the traffic study and the mediation with the co-op, that is not, that is inconclusive as of this moment. as of this moment, and I think you need to wait. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council, Mayor. Alan Strasser from Ward 2. I don't have prepared remarks. I've spoken to some of you and sent emails. I just wanted to make three points. I think at this time, while I want development, I'm not supporting this form of development. I think it could be more refined, based on a lot of the concerns that people have. Second, I'd like to reiterate the mediation process. How many people know Dan Dozier? Raise your hand. A couple of you. He's a nationally-known mediator. He was one of my teachers and mentors. So I applaud you for hiring Mr. Dozier. I think he can do some good here, and I think we should give it a little bit of time. I don't think indefinite delay is what anyone's asking for, but I think we can really refine some of these issues so things get a little bit more baked. And I also think there are some really good ideas out there in the community. Burn Kelly and some of his colleagues have some great ideas. Whether all of them are going to be integrated with the current one or not, I don't know, but more public space, some of the traffic issues can be resolved through Burn's plan. So I encourage you guys to keep working at it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Was Marcus still here? No? Okay. Then Esther, you're up.
Am I the caboose?
No. No, we still have plenty of folks. I said, we still have a lot of folks. You're not the last.
So life isn't always predictable. You know, you're in one direction, and then something happens. With the events of the past painful month, I am looking at the junction a little differently, mostly with the sense of content. This past month, we've stood by and witnessed families being ripped from each other, hysterical one-year-olds having their day in court and being asked if they understand their rights, and now a Supreme Court that will forever change our lives in the most frightening ways. Our concern about racial equality, now equity, now consideration, will now need a comma to include women at the brink of losing our freedom over our futures, our bodies, and our independent dreams. Men have no such fears. So instead of us fighting over what kind of stores and restaurants we want at a public space, perhaps we need to switch gears and think about how this public space can be of use to support and protect the people who live in our community. NDC is just the wrong developer. Instead of fighting over whether or not this public space will miraculously solve TP's financial needs or be concerned about resale values of our individual homes, maybe we should be thinking ahead to create a way to protect our citizens. What if we instead thought of a public space to include a women's health clinic and daycare center while the women are being cared for by their doctors?
Yes.
What if we partnered with Manah and expanded the co-op to include a distribution center for food for the needy? What if all the restaurants in Tacoma Park contributed to that distribution center? What if we all found time to volunteer for whatever venture like that would be there? We are in for some very dark times. This is what we should be preparing for, not perpetuating a project that divides and separates us. It isn't always about money, especially when deeply troubling times are ahead. I am embarrassed, myself, speaking just for me, that we are not thinking this way, and instead, we're worrying about our housing resale values and more places that we could eat and shop. We should declare Tacoma Park a Supreme Court-free zone and take care of our women and children and those less fortunate than ourselves, because our current federal government will not and promises to make things worse. So I look at each of you and wonder, given what we are up against, where do you stand? And I look at my neighbors and ask, where do we stand as a community?
All right, next we have Roy Austin, Vera Pereira, and David Eisner.
Just very, very quickly, I've been living in Tacoma Park for about 16 years with my wife and my two kids. I'm in Ward 3. I live right next to U-Digit, whose name I did learn how to pronounce. I live, so about seven houses from the junction. Four years ago, when this first came up, we, as a family, were very excited. I'm afraid that my son is going to end up graduating from high school, and there's not going to be anything other than the parking lot there. Everything can be debated over and over and over. The process already has been inclusive. It has been comprehensive. There are a lot of questions that probably will never be answered, but I'm here to say, please, move forward. Make this thing happen. My second child could actually enjoy this while she is at home. Thank you very much.
Is Vera still here? Ah, yes, Vera.
Good evening. My name is Vera Pereira, and I am on Hancock Avenue. I think it's Ward 3. One thing I want to say is that a grocery store can feed a whole community, but a fancy restaurant can only feed a handful of people. The other thing I want to say is that most of people who are, I have been noticing that many people who are pro this development, they all have children. They say, oh, my children will like this. My children is not here yet, but will like this. Well, all my neighbors are here fighting for your children. They are thinking about the environment, the pollution in the air because of your children. They are thinking about the traffic, how your children are going to cross the street. We are thinking about your children. That's why we are asking, please stop and think, pause and think, because what is four years, you know, in regards to 99 or 100 years? So, thank you all, my friends who have spoken before me. What an eloquent community we have here. I wish I was, well, I am happy to be a part of this amazing, well-educated and eloquent community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
David Eisner here. I am a longtime member of ATPA, and I got the notes that ATPA was in support of this project. I'm not, and that's okay, because I liked all the premises that were in the, of why we were in support of development, but I'm just not in support of this type of development. And I think that's, to me, the key issue here. Everybody's saying exhale, pause, step back. What worries me most is that if you go ahead with this project, and you're saying our desire is not to ruin the co-op and run them out of business, that in the year and a half or two years or three years, whatever it's going to take to happen, people will go shop elsewhere, and we'll just have a moment of silence for the death of the co-op because people have made other plans. Howard Cohn mentioned that he'd like to see a room for, a place to run dances. I'm all about that. I think we can put a gazebo-like structure on that property. It's not just a parking lot at this point. If you take the top surface parking lot away, the businesses that have finally come into Tacoma Junction, where are you going to park? Where are they going to park? They're not going to, you know, by the time you say, oh, the underground's open, and the six new businesses are going to occupy a lot of that parking, and people that live upstairs, where are you going to park? I mean, people say to me, Dave, why don't you move off Carroll Avenue? People will never find you. I said, I moved off Carroll Avenue because there was no parking on Carroll Avenue. And, you know, we got plenty of parking in our lot, you know, behind the shop. Development is not a bad idea, but when I drive over to the aforementioned Bethesda, I see what bad development is. I mean, it's just buy the square footage and make cubic stuff out of it. Build it up high. I mean, Bethesda, outrage that Barnes &amp; Noble went away. I mean, come on, folks. We don't want to duplicate that, and Silver Spring doesn't care about us. I mean, look what happened when they rebuilt, quote, "the downtown of Silver Spring." They built a walking mall, and then, there's a good timer here, and then all the shops around it that are not in that mall have suffered. I'm just saying, development's fine, but not this particular group, for all the reasons that have been mentioned. I'll run music there if you give me space to run music there, but I'm not going to do it in an underground parking lot. Okay? Thanks.
Tabaru, you're up.
Hi, Tabaru. I live on 7720 Carroll Avenue. It's amazing. I was just gone for a month or two, and the discourse has taken a different course. So today, I choose not to side, not to tell you what to do, not to side with this group but with the other. I'm just going to tell you my story. In 2011, living on Maple Avenue, I dreamt of a little coffee shop in partnership with small coffee farmers in Ethiopia who are put under poverty because of the injustice of the international coffee commodity market you all support. So my dream was this: A little African cottage coffee shop on the junction lot. Build that and do a roasting plant in partnership with 300,000 small coffee farmers to whom I promised to connect them with the market here so they can have a best shot. In the coffee shop, I promised to give 50% of the profit in the partnership to 35 community organizations who provide massive public good to us. This is the nation's second benefit corporation. I was going to build the first model in Tacoma Park to take it everywhere else, wherever Starbucks is. Patiently, I've been waiting. I've been selling on a farmer's market. I've been selling on the street, waiting for this junction to happen. The first time I opened my cafe was 2011 at the gazebo, because I didn't have any place to do it, because I was so adamant about doing it in Tacoma Park, because this is supposedly, I thought, where community lives. I'm having a second thought, because you know what? A month ago, I was in Ethiopia, talking to the farmers, and they said to me, what happened to that? Because they're waiting to invest $6 per farmer. Right now, they're at $400,000. They were $200 when I started. And they said, what happened to that little dream? I told them I was stuck in a public process called, in a city called Tacoma Park. My dream is about to dry, and you people, I'm saying this so that you can have this on the back of your conscience when you make a decision, because there are lives. And I have lived here, when I started my coffee shop, my son was, he's now 19 now, he was eight. He's about to go away from Tacoma Park before he saw his father's dream come true because of public process. I've been waiting for this moment, so don't say rush, don't say pause. At least when you do that, consider my narrative, okay? And the discourse, you know, I am for racial equity. The problem of America cannot so be solved in that process. Racial equity cuts deep. The issues are big. I'd like to see you in a different conversation about that, you know? So this little land, this is little land, you know, the other day, my councilman sent me an email and said, Tabaru, are you willing to open your coffee shop somewhere else? Because he knew I was so adamant about, maybe I'll consider. And I'll take this moment to say to the farmers who've been waiting for me, I'm sorry my dream has been delayed. To those of you who chipped a little money in my initial capital, to those of you in the back of my coffee.
Mr. Seva, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for the delay. Please have this in the back of your conscience.
Thank you so much. Larry Silverman, Mr. Silverman? We'll do our business people.
Thank you very much. My name is Larry Silverman. I live on Birch Avenue, and I own S&amp;A Beads, now in the District of Columbia on Carroll Street. In addition to being a bead shop owner for many, many years, 40 years, I've been an environmental attorney. I've worked with Ms. Rosenfeld. We stopped a Costco gas station. Very proud of that. I've worked with Mr. Kovar, and we actually built things in Massachusetts. I am very concerned about the vagueness with regard to infrastructure. Your last, the last resolution is the council would like to see improvements to traffic, and will continue to work with SHA. I don't think that's a good, I don't think that passes. It doesn't get a passing grade. I think if you had come to this meeting and said, well, the city, the county, and the state have all met, and this is the plan, the traffic plan we recommend, regardless of any development, this is what's going to be good for pedestrians, good for traffic, good for safety, bikes and so forth. If you actually had a plan, you might not finalize it, but if you had a concept plan as detailed as the concept plan for this development, I think much of the opposition would disappear, as it should. And then I would say to the developers, all right, this is how we're going to improve the infrastructure of our city. Work with it. You know, find a way to accommodate your development to the improvements in infrastructure. I would encourage you to spend a lot more time with your legislators, with the governor's office, with state highways, with the county, and come up with a real infrastructure plan, a real traffic plan for this area, because you don't have it. I sat here at a meeting a couple weeks ago for a long time, and I was very encouraged to see you discussing this issue, and I thought, well, they know more than I thought they did. But I don't think you came to a resolution. Maybe I missed something. I left earlier. But I think you need to do that, and if you do that, the other things will work out. And I say this on the basis of many years of experience with cities, rich and poor, trying to encourage development and environmental improvement. Come up with, work the basics, and you'll solve that problem. I'd also, I was very moved by the gentleman from Ethiopia. I think we need to think not just about retail and restaurants, we need to think about businesses that employ people in different ways and craft people. I've written about that, and I sent it to you. Finally, I was very heartened by the reference to Sammy Abbott. I bought my house from Sammy Abbott, and I knew Sammy and Ruth very well. They took back the mortgage, so I got to meet them every month unless I was late. And they were very kind. But Sammy used to say about Tacoma Park, particularly in connection with public housing, he used to say, this ain't no goddamn Georgetown. And I would urge you to keep those words in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman.
Thank you so much.
I have Erin O'Brien, Sally Kern, and Robin Buck. Erin O'Brien, Sally Kern, and Robin Buck.
Hi, everyone. I'm Erin O'Brien. My phone keeps doing weird stuff. Sorry about that. I live on Ethan Allen, and I'm a mother of a two-year-old. Thank you for taking so much time to listen to residents. You've taken really so many hours, so really appreciate that, and all of your work and all of these years, and the long public process you've engaged in. I'm here to ask you to move forward with this plan without any additional delays. I don't think we should delay it just because after waiting years and years, the co-op agreed to mediation at the 11th hour. I don't think we should delay it further because of that. I think this design's great for our city. I actually like NDC. I've met and talked with them several times. They're a small, local, black-owned developer. They're not a giant evil corporation. I think the design's great for the space. It's beautiful. It's funky. It's got public art space. It's a LEED-certified green building that remediates an old dump site under the parking lot. It has more public space than the gazebo, and the biggest pro in my book is that this is a developer-paid development. And I've seen a lot of alternative plans that are all much smaller and preserve a lot of the parking lot, and I've talked with NDC. These are not financially viable plans for a private developer to do. So to me, the choice really comes down to either the city subsidizes a plan to make a smaller development and preserve some of the parking lot, or we let a private developer pay for the development and generate revenue for the city. That's what it comes down to, and I think we should allow the developer to move forward and generate revenue for the city. So it's not perfect, but I don't think anything will ever be perfect, especially in a very opinionated city full of people who participate in the public process. We'll never get to perfection, but I think it's pretty good, and my neighbors agree. That includes Justin Mary, Morgan Snyder, Corwin J. on Ethan Allen, Rachel Spector on Prince George Avenue, and Annie Mozer from Hodges Lane. I've said this before, we aren't the loudest voices. We're all busy working, traveling for work, taking care of kids. We can't always come to these We can't always come to these meetings. But if you vote yes, please note that you do have a lot of support from community members here. And thank you for your time.[607.66][607.66](applause)
Sally?
Hello. My name's Sally Kern from Word Two. There's so many things I want to say, so I'll put most of them in an email. And a lot of them are kind of traffic pedestrian safety-pointed. And my husband thought they were kind of incomprehensible to read tonight. So I'll email those to you. But I also wanted to say that I'm a bit confused. I hear a lot of contradictions. Would this project really be a windfall for the city coffers? Or is it really underwriting a $5 million subsidy, a sweetheart deal? I don't know. I'm no expert. But if it's, but if it is a sweetheart deal and we're underwriting an amenity, let's put it in Word Six where they really have not been showered. And so I would hope that there would be some financial expert who could weigh in and truly find out how much it would benefit the city coffers. Because there can't be, you know, trickle-down if there's no money to trickle-down. And I'm confused. A $45 to $50 square foot? Is that going to accommodate my friend Tababu? I've been hearing about that coffee shop since our sons went to school in kindergarten and my son just finished his freshman year in college. I don't understand how he can afford that space at $45 to $50 per square foot when my husband has a space in Tacoma, DC that he rents for $23 a square foot. And I've heard many different, and then you have the 27 to 38 square foot price of the Carroll Avenue. To me, it sounds like that is really raising the level of rent. I don't understand how that squares with independent minority-owned businesses. And in terms of increased walkability, how does that square with taking away the new Grant crosswalk? How does that square with moving the bus stop up to the new proposed intersection? So the sightline is completely obscured as motorists always go around buses and there, you have it right there at the crosswalk. I don't understand how we have increased bikeability when we remove the ride share. There's no improvements for bikes. The only improvement is to post more signs saying bicycles can use full lane. I don't understand how it increases bus mobility when it moves the bus stop to the nexus of the intersection. And I don't care for the NDC-approved traffic reconfiguration. I think it's very unsafe for pedestrian sightlines.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. Thank you.[811.13][811.13](applause)
Good evening again. I'm Robin Buck. I live in Ward Three and I was at the meeting on Monday. Appreciate you all coming out. And spoke with a number of you. And I also picked up this new site plan. And I don't know how many of the people who are enthusiastically supporting this have actually looked at this. But the more that I looked at this, I just found some things real curious. Like, there's a letter at the end from NDC saying that, you know, "Dear Mayor, Stuart and City Council Members," and yada, 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 yada. And what we heard is what they say. Okay, so we extended, they heard the concern for community space. So they, "We extended the setback of the building an additional 10 feet, creating an opportunity for art to engage with the public space at the west end of the property and providing room for an eight-foot clear pedestrian path and a two-to-eight-foot seating zone along the remainder of the facade for café seating, benches, et cetera." Now, I got to tell you, when I sit down, the difference from my butt to my knees is more than two feet. So I don't understand how that then becomes a public space. I do design work, as many of you know. And typically, from the edge of a table, you allow three feet around the table for chairs because people don't just have to sit in the chair and have a little bit of space between themselves and the table. They have to actually be able to get in and out of their chairs. What a concept. So you allow 36 inches around the sides of the table. That would allow for these tables in this eight-foot-wide space to be two-foot tables in order to accommodate people. The space does not look to be twice the length of the depth. So maybe you could, you might be able to get two tables in there. That's what's counting, what's constituting the community space. That's what they're adding up. Presumably, like many developers, as you know, I don't like that term, what they do is they add up the sidewalk space. They just, they multiply all this out and then they call it community space. It is not, in actuality, usable community space. Ain't no gathering space there. There's space for two tiny tables and some people to sit like, kind of like on narrow bus benches. So that's one of many concerns. Thank you.[974.48][974.48](applause)
Now, we are honored to welcome back Councilmember Kareshi, who requested additional
Barely. Mayor, council, thank you. I thought I would get some favoritism, be put out at the head of the list, but I guess not. It's a pleasure to be here. Everybody's been complaining about too many coffee shops. I wish one of them was open right now, but it's a pleasure to be here. It's been a long time since I've been here and seen some of you all. I appreciate your work. Covering this issue regarding the co-op and the development, I want to make very clear because I've heard a lot of people contacting me and saying, "Hey, people are saying, 'Well, Rizzi, if he was on council, he would go this way or he would go that way.'" Well, nobody seems to ask me. They're just talking for me. And I'm here. I have looked at the resolution that is before you. I've looked at the site plan. I'm urging you to move forward with NDC's site plan and enable NDC to submit their plan to the county. As somebody who was in the weeds on this issue, was part of drafting and passing that resolution that you're looking to from this last fall, I can say, and I take great issue with people, I think somebody said at the beginning of the comments, "We need a transparent systematic process that needs to be put in place." Where have you been for the last four years? This has been a long and torturous process. The city took efforts to purchase this land. The task force put together a very lengthy report that I read twice. It's been a transparent process that has been dedicated to improving the lives of our residents and to make it a more livable and engaging community that can be enjoyed by all. I have found this to be a deliberative process, a thoughtful process. And I think an important point is, when I look back to our resolution that we drafted in the fall, NDC's plan meets the vision, I believe this council or the previous council set forth in October. And it meets many of the goals of the task force, as members of the task force who are in this room will say, that the task force did not necessarily reach consensus on every single issue. And it meets the intent of the development agreement, which I looked at very closely as a council member, now as a lawyer. And I would ask you to also, using the advice of Ken Sigmund and his team, be very careful about your contractual obligations and be careful about terminating an agreement and do it and understand your liability as it pertains to that. This may be a matter, and there's no question it's a matter of public interest, but I want to remind you, this is not a matter that's up for a public referendum. You were elected, you were elected to represent residents. You were elected to make difficult decisions. Decisions that while you're speaking, people heckle you. I mean, it's, it's a decision that you have to make and you have to cut through the riffraff. You have to focus on, focus on what, I ask you not to be dissuaded by divisiveness. I ask you not to be dissuaded by changes in positions by your fellow residents or by your fellow colleagues on the council. And the more important thing for me is, you know, I have a lot of love for this community and it was my honor to serve this community. And I hope that everybody, no matter what side of the issue you're on, you keep that mantra of loving thy neighbor in mind. Be cordial to each other. Listen and listen some more. And we pride ourselves in this community about our diversity, our cultural diversity, our socioeconomic diversity and our racial diversity. But don't allow people to use it as a pawn to advance their interests. And that's what's happening. And you need to cut through that and don't fall for the blackmail or the guilt-tripping related to that. The final thing I want to say and the reason why I asked for this time is that on Sunday, I will be leaving Tacoma Park with my family and I will no longer be a resident of Tacoma Park. And I hear people whispering that they're happy about that. That's good. But I will say, it has been a pleasure to be a part of this community for my family, for myself, for my kids. This community is what every community should emulate itself to be, even with this contentious of a process. That's what makes this place amazing. I disagree vehemently with many people in this room, but I love them because they're neighbors who care about things that matter. So don't lose sight of that. Be happy, smile. And when you see people on the street and former council members, don't ask them where they stand on the junction. Ask them how they're doing, how their kids are. Good luck Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you.[1305.48][1305.48](applause) Next, I have Sarah Fitzpatrick.
I'm Sarah Fitzpatrick and I'm actually going to be reading comments on behalf of Roger Schlegel, who couldn't make it tonight. And as you, I think you know, he wrote a really extensive, expert-level traffic analysis that I think is really worth looking at. So he writes, "Dear Mayor and councilmembers, the city-owned lot at the junction has the capacity to help fulfill many of our objectives as a community, among them creating public space for bringing people together across income, age, race, race and ethnicity, and providing more affordable housing and retail options. What the junction does not have capacity for is much more traffic. This reality has been made clear to us recently in the traffic study commissioned by NDC carried out by the Traffic Group. NDC's site plan requires the city and/or SHA to reconfigure the intersection. The signal and crosswalk at Grant Avenue must be removed to make room for the lay-by and to allow room for the public space. The traffic analysts are spinning this as good news. The NDC development will trigger much-needed intersection improvements that by eliminating a traffic signal will speed the flow of traffic. But look closely at what the simulations tell us. Fixing the intersection means expanding its capacity to handle vehicular traffic, at the expense of pedestrian movement, by the way. Expanded capacity for cars means more cars passing through. Faster flow equals higher volume. At first, this will be coupled with shorter delays for cars, but the junction doesn't exist in isolation. It's part of a traffic basin where drivers are always adjusting routes and trips in response to available capacity until the delays rebound to what they used to be. Increase the capacity of 410 and Carroll Avenue and we not only invite more trips to pass through town, we actually encourage trips that otherwise would not have happened. Capacity expansion for cars moves us away from, moves us away from addressing our goals of reducing our carbon footprint. As annoying as congestion is, when it settles at a certain point, it encourages people to use alternate, alternate means of transportation or to reduce trips. Thus, any development that requires us to expand vehicular capacity is the wrong type of development for this area, for this community and for this century. This is precisely why Maryland taxpayers are pouring billions of dollars into building the purple line. Here in Tacoma Park, we pride ourselves on making enlightened decisions that reduce our carbon footprint dramatically. But here's the fact: in order to make this development happen, we would have to change the junction so that a lot more cars can come through. That's the proof that this proposed development isn't right for the site. Don't accept a development that increases our use of cars. Vote no on the site plan. Thank you."
Thank you.[1486.11][1486.11](applause) I say, Eric Saul and then Jimmy Dankus.
I'm Eric Saul, owner of Saul Architects. My wife and I moved to Tacoma Park about 10 years ago after a long, hot day of moving on a summer night. We just wanted to grab a cold beer in our hometown somewhere downtown. Instead, we found a ghost town at 8:00 PM on a Saturday night. Naturally, we took our money to downtown Silver Spring. 10 years later, new restaurants like Republic and Tacoma Bevco have improved the night scene downtown. But sadly, the junction remains a ghost town at night. The population has grown by almost 1,000 people. Small homes are being expanded all over the city. My firm alone has added over 40,000 square feet of residential space in this city. Over that same period, virtually zero commercial space has been added in Tacoma Park, with the exception of a Taco Bell on New Hampshire and a laundromat on Flower Avenue. Ground-floor retail in the city is fully leased. New businesses must wait for an existing business to leave. They also can't find larger, more modernized spaces to move into. The new businesses are hugely successful. For example, Soul Food has increased its staff due to its popularity. We're not keeping up with demand. A recent market analysis report encourages 76,000 square feet of new commercial space in the city. The junction is one of the few areas left that can fulfill much of this demand immediately. Meanwhile, the Tacoma, DC side of the border has seen all of the commercial expansion and is collecting what could be our revenue. And they have not turned into the corporate hellish nightmare some fear. As we speak, a local brewer is building his brewery in downtown Silver Spring and not here. This should have been located at the junction. We cannot delay this project anymore. Don't send Tababu's coffee shop away. Construction costs continue to rise. Businesses are locating right outside of Tacoma Park every month. Each year we wait, we lose hundreds of thousands of dollars of local tax revenue, which can fund our strong progressive agenda, like racial equity considerations, renovating the New Hampshire Rec Center, building Affordable Housing Reserve, funding small business loans and grants, and redesigning the terrible Tacoma Junction intersection. Again, we're being asked to slow down, wait, or even start all over. We've seen the opposition's alternative design and they are not objectively better, nor did they provide pro forma. They are merely drawings, not viable plans. How much more time do we need before more small business owners move to DC or Silver Spring? We have a viable plan right now with a lot of support, even if that support isn't as outspoken as the opposition. If the project becomes stalled or scrapped, Tacoma Park will be announcing that it's no longer open for business and any future attempt to develop the junction will not be taken seriously. For these reasons, I strongly urge the City Council to vote yes on this resolution. I have one more proposal. Since every other week, we're filling this place like it's a Nationals game, which is great, I think the council should really look into opening a concession stand with peanuts, beer, Tacoma Park t-shirts, and bring some revenue to the city. Thank you.[1689.08][1689.08](applause)
Is Jimmy Dankus here? Donkus? Donkus?
I'm here. Neil Cohen? Good evening, Neil Cohen, Columbia Avenue. First of all, thank you, Mayor, council members, city staff, for your perseverance throughout what has been what seems objectively to me to be somewhat of an interminable, open, fair process that lots of people have been able to give comments to. One of the things, I can't talk about everything, but one of the things I hear is the rent is too damn high, right? The co-op's saying the rent is too damn high. So what should we do? Let's not build. Let's artificially keep supply down and artificially keep rents up. It's not making sense when I say it out loud and it doesn't make sense, right? You want affordable housing, you build more housing. You want affordable commercial space, you build more commercial space. And stores that are doing well and can afford $45 or whatever it'll be a square foot relocate there and they vacate other lower-class real estate, Class B and Class C real estate, where new startups, perhaps Tababu, might not start at this lot. Maybe he starts across the street and maybe the bakery moves across the street. I mean, that is how commerce works. Everyone, a lot of the opponents also come and rally against tax raises in our city, right? And yet, at the same time, they say, "I want the city to artificially, basically subsidize this lot by not developing it to its full potential." The city has shown incredible oversight. The city has shown incredible oversight. There's ample, you know, if you just have a public lot, you have a lot there. No one goes and hangs out there. People go where there are amenities and resources, and there's a nice mix between the two. And so if you want to share the cake, you've got to have cake to share. And you're not going to have any cake if you don't get revenue. Money, it's not trickle-down economics, it's just how you cut the cake. We also have folks parading around town. I just have to comment on the faux 18-wheeler that's being paraded around town. So it seems that now we are pro-carbon, let's, you know, keep bringing 18-wheelers in, the co-op's bringing those in, let's not ask the co-op to come up with alternatives, you know, now we're pro-carbon. You know, I just think that that is really self-indulgent in a time that what's going on right now in this country, to be using your protest moment and time to do something like that. What we want is a community, we want space where community can come together, and that's what is being on the table here. We want other people's money to do it and to fund it. And NDC is offering their money. We want other people's money to fund our taxes. People are going to come here and spend money. We're going to take that money, and like Julie Farb said, redistribute it to places in our city that need it and can grow with it. And I think, let's keep our eye on the ball here. It's not that complicated. You've got a nice two-story building, let's do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, the last two people I have signed up tonight to finish us off is Councilmember Mail and Councilmember Schultz. If you...
Oh, yeah.
Well, they signed up.
Good evening, everybody. Tim Mail, Woodland Avenue in Ward 2. A few comments. First, I wanted to talk about the Tacoma Junction Task Force and the report that they published in 2012. When I ran for office in 2011, that was one of the big issues. I was running against three candidates from two other wards, two of whom were on the Junction Task Force, so I had to know the report, or the draft report at that time, backward and forward. Talked about it constantly. And it became a priority with my new colleagues on the council to advance the priorities of that report. But just the executive summary, and there are more recommendations in the body of the report, just the executive summary has more than 50 recommendations. And for those of you who have been on council since then, but also those who you've joined since, of those 55, 60 recommendations, an extremely large number have either been completed or acted upon or are still in progress. And you all in the city deserve credit, and the residents of the city that have pushed those actions deserve credit for that amount of progress. It's really an example of the community through a task force speaking, and the council and city government, through an arduous process, and a set of processes really, have responded. So I just wanted to comment that when I look at the Junction Task Force, which is about the whole junction and the city around it, there's a large set of progress there that's really commendable. I wanted to speak to three specific things for three specific council members. Councilmember Smith, when I was on council, you were one of the strongest voices for development, helping me think about how do we prioritize development issues around the city. Ward 6, Ward 5, redevelopment on Flower, or not redevelopment, but the Green Street on Flower Avenue. Fantastic. We were in different places on the Taco Bell project. We've been in different places on this project at different points in time. But I really want to encourage you, depending on how this vote comes out, to just think about what's next, because I think you're the same voice of leadership, for me at least, through that many years I was on council with you. I really look forward to having you describe what comes next and how you can help play a leadership role in moving forward wherever the council decides to go. And having that be a forward-looking process, rather than a process that keeps kind of clawback, whether it's a win from a loss or a loss from a win. Councilmember Dibala, my own councilwoman. One of the hard things as, one of the hard things about this process is a lot of the information is very binary. It's very focused on what you want to have people see if you oppose versus what you want to have people see if you are for. But I'd love to have you send a summary for the ward, or for the whole council to do this, just sort of explaining some of the detail of where the resolution is right now and where it is when you finalize it, assuming you finalize it and vote on it, and what some of the nuanced pieces of subsequent action are that you're going to work on as a priority, because those kinds of things are, they get lost in a lot of the diametric viewpoints on this issue. And lastly, Councilmember Siemens, I wanted to speak to an issue that is certainly a priority for you during my whole time serving with you, and where I really appreciated your leadership, and it's the question of affordable housing. And I just wonder whether you would explore the question of whether both the revenue from the lease or the use of the site and the revenue from the property tax that comes from this site once it's developed, whether you could set in motion a policy action that would reserve that, those two pots of money for affordable housing in the future. There's no such thing as a lockbox in politics or anywhere else, but if you could think about an action like that that would create a dedicated source of funding, whether that's $50,000 a year, $75,000 a year, recognizing the projections of the city that the number would go up, that would be a really strong way to create more funding than the city has already put forward for affordable housing in the future.
I thank you for the suggestion, and that has already been put in process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Schultz. There is a timer. You have no idea how long I wanted to say that.
And I'm depending on you to remind me when my time is up. We've been, you've been asked to pause and step back over and over again, but I would say that for four and a half years, we have been pausing and stepping back, and there's just no need to continue that process. What I'm hearing, I've been astonished, I've sat through and listened to everybody, astonished tonight, by what I've heard is a tremendous amount of fear and anxiety about this piece of property. But in truth, what we're looking at is a tiny piece of geography, a bird's-eye view. This thing hardly even shows up on Google Maps. It is a very small parcel of land, and yet, we hear people projecting all their fears and dreams onto this piece, is that this is going to be the future of Tacoma Park or it is going to be the end of Tacoma Park, or words to that effect. We hear things about, we need green space, we have fears about the co-op disappearing, we hear anger about developers and corporate interests, we hear talk about the need for affordable housing and the negative environmental impacts, air pollution, the introduction of upscale businesses, issues of racial equity, gentrification, the need for a dance hall, traffic congestion, and delayed fire trucks. And we could go on for another five minutes on this. There will never be consensus on this site. We can delay it a month, another year, it doesn't make any difference. The problem is, is that people come up and say, "I'm not against development, I'm just opposed to this development." But they don't know what they favor. There's nobody here who says, "I'm a developer, I can take the place of NDC."
Please let him finish. Go ahead.
But there's absolutely no consensus of what should be on that site, other than what we have. Things don't get built without private enterprise developers. Now, the, so what I encourage you to do is to proceed with the vote. I would ask you to listen carefully to what our friend Denise Jones was talking about a few minutes ago in regard to racial equity. I think that's a very fair comment. I think that can be done while we proceed with the site plan process. It's going to take at least another year to complete that process. And I think what I'd like us to be able to do is see the City Council move away from focus on this and talk about the issues of our hospital, the need for affordable housing, the recreation center site, and the future of the library.
You're done, you're done, Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you for your generosity with the clock. Appreciate it. I'll never forget that.
All right, I don't have anyone else signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening regarding Tacoma Junction or any other item? No? All right. Seeing no one else, I want to thank everyone who came this evening. I think we had a bunch of new people who have not spoken at council meetings before, and so thank you for coming out. Move to our work session, which is a discussion of the resolution regarding the Tacoma Junction site plan. I am, I just went right there. I'm very sorry.
Well, I thought you did on her.
Nope, I did not. We first have city council comments, we have our comments, and then city manager comments. So do my colleagues have any comments this evening? Councilwoman Dibala?
Just very briefly. I understand that Lincoln Avenue sidewalk construction is still on the agenda for this coming week.
That's right. For the, it's, yes.
Great.
Because it involves a budget amendment, it's on for two reading ordinance, so it will, so it will be, have a first vote next week and then a second vote on the 25th.
Okay, that was the only thing that was really critical.
Okay, great. Councilmember Smith?
I'll be quick. Sue Katz Miller gave me an alternative resolution that she would like the council to consider on this project. I just asked my colleagues that they read it. I'm not saying that we're going to consider it this evening, because I don't think people have had enough time to digest it, but there is an alternative resolution that I'm bringing before the body.
And just to clarify for Councilmember Smith, would you like that added to a future agenda?
Yes, I would.
All right, we will add that to the July 25th agenda, and I asked the city clerk to post it so that people, since we have this other resolution, that people have an opportunity to see that. So it will be on the agenda on July 25th.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Circe?
I just, good evening, everybody. Man, you guys are, you're hanging in there. It's after 11 o'clock, and everyone still has contacts and glasses on your faces. You're better than me, I'm about to lose mine. So I just want to thank Captain Collington and the rest of Tacoma Park Police that came out last night to meet with residents in New Hampshire Gardens to talk about traffic and issues that folks were having there. As we discussed, there's going to be a lot more activity that will be happening in the area, but also definitely highlighted some needs for additional traffic studies in the future and the like, to try to really understand how particularly the impact of things like the Purple Line on University Boulevard might actually increase cut-through traffic in the neighborhood. So I appreciate the officers coming out. I also want to thank the residents in Hillwood Manor who came out on Friday to the meeting that the mayor and I had on the tour with Casey...
Anderson.
Anderson, yes, thank you. To walk through Hillwood Manor Park. It was really, really helpful to have not only us speaking to the needs of the city as a whole, or some of the concerns that were raised by residents, but also have residents themselves talk about some of the challenges with the current infrastructure at the park, and showing that they are really working collectively to try to identify ways to improve the county park. So thank you to those residents who were able to come out on Friday. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Jackie for the oyster shell.
Great. Terrific. And I just want to say, even though it feels like a long time ago, 4th of July was just last week, and I want to thank, and I know, I want to thank the 4th of July Committee, which Councilmember Siemens is part of, and in particular Tara Egan and everyone who's involved with that, in addition to our Public Works Department and our Police Department and everyone who makes that event a happy, healthy, and safe one. So I just want to thank everyone for that. In addition, Councilmember Siemens and I actually spent Sunday afternoon with CHEER and a group of residents who live on Maple Avenue, to discuss some issues that they're facing in the community. I say they were all mothers of young children who spoke with us. CHEER has done a number of in-depth interviews with residents, and they're finalizing a report. Councilmember Siemens and I urged them to share the report with the full council and to actually have a follow-up meeting with the city staff and other council members. A number of the things that they identified, their top need was affordable daycare, was one of the things they identify, in addition to talking to us about some of the rec programs and other things. So I think it was, we generated a lot of ideas, and so we're looking forward to continuing working with them.
And affordable housing.
And affordable, yeah, they talked about affordable housing, having affordable food nearby, a lot, we talked about a lot of things Sunday afternoon. So I think we look forward to continuing working with them, and thank CHEER for doing those interviews and putting together the meeting. All right, I think we're done. We'll go turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. A couple of things. One is that we do periodic outreach to apartment buildings regarding emergency preparedness, and we've found that this is very useful. And so we've got a schedule coming up for some of the major apartment buildings. We do in-person discussions about emergency preparedness, home safety, and what, and then also the guys pick up any unused prescriptions and things there, so people don't have to come here and deposit it in our deposit box in the police lobby. In the month of July, there will be outreach to the Franklin Apartments, the Dobell Apartments, and Essex Apartments, Essex House, and then August, Parkview Apartments. We'll also be having, it's not scheduled yet, Partridge, Maple View, and Victory Towers. So it's very important for us to, you know, encourage people to participate in this, and the outreach, our emergency manager finds it to be really helpful in talking about it, because, you know, people don't think so much about how do you get out of a big building, and it's just not the same. And so it's important to spend a little bit of time. At the first meeting, which was held at the Franklin Apartments, it was just held, it was also part of a manna food distribution event, staff talked with over 50 people, distributed emergency preparedness books in four languages, and took in five pounds of unused drugs. So for the prescription drugs to return. So very successful.
Can I add a couple of comments to that list?
Your button wasn't on, your light wasn't on. Please go ahead and just send to Ron Hardy those apartments, if you have some that you want him to get on the list, because he's looking forward to that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
What's the size?
There's not a size limit, so if there's a place that you think would be useful for having our emergency preparedness staff go up and talk with residents, they're happy to do so. Oh, yeah. Okay. The next thing I would just want to mention is that has to do with the Maryland Community Legacy Grant. City staff met with representatives from the Maryland Community Legacy Grant Committee to discuss some of our recent application submissions. Committee members noted that the, that there's upcoming FY19 operating assistance grants, and they particularly are encouraging the Tacoma Park-Silver Spring Co-op to apply for the technical assistance project. That was something they brought up several times, so just kind of letting folks know that unfortunately, the application deadline's tomorrow, but it does rely on a lot of the information that's been gathered before, so our staff is willing to assist. I want to give kudos to the staff who made the 4th of July parade such a success, and we did get a lot of positive feedback on the Public Works participation in the parade this year. It's the first time they were in the parade, and the kinds of comments that they made, we received one from a resident that said, "I thought the Public Works entries in the 4th of July parade were fabulous and a great reminder of all the good work you do throughout the year." One of the things that I heard was that, gee, everybody's used to seeing the trash guys, and, you know, so that's who they want to see in the parade next year. So we'll see how that goes. And then we've got pictures up on our screens here, and I think it'll pop up maybe on the other screens. Kudos to Karen McPherson in our library. Yeah. Because they've been doing just wonderful children's programs and young adult programs. And we got a nice message from a resident, said, "My kids, one soon to be in 7th grade at TPMS and a 5th and 3rd grader at Pine Branch, continue to enjoy seeing you at the library and around the community. While I've always appreciated all of your heartfelt efforts with children's programming at the library, since I started volunteering with the Friends of the Library, I've become even more amazed at the vast array, frequency, and depth of programming designed to benefit our community's children. You, Ellen, Dave, and the rest of the library team have helped make the library feel like a multipurpose haven for our kids." And, you know, this is one of the things that when we were... And, you know, this is one of the things that when we were lobbying for the bond money from the state for the library, just like a grant, we really are not the same as other libraries in terms of the programming and the quality of the special programs that they have. So, it's, it's nice to hear also from residents that appreciate it. That's all I have.
And when we talked to the moms on Sunday, they appreciate it so much, they want more programming. So, that was one thing we were told to bring back. Councilmember Kovar said he actually has some things to say.
Yeah, I apologize because it's late, so I'll use one sentence on each of these things. First, I really appreciate everybody coming out for Independence Day. A lot of the parade is through Ward 1, so it was nice to do that. Secondly, today was Ward 1 day at the Crossroads Farmers Market down in the Crossroads area on Ann Street, comma, and I was very pleased that eight to 10 people from Ward 1 came over there specifically to participate in that. And then, thirdly, tomorrow, starting at 7:00, over at the Montgomery College Cultural Arts Center on Georgia Avenue is the second of the charrettes, design charrettes on the building, the new Mass Science Building that will be constructed in North Tacoma. All the rest of the meetings, this is still the same sentence, all the rest of the meetings will be in September, October, but this is the last one, the second one and the last one this summer, tomorrow night, starting at 7:00. Thanks.
Great. And actually, that reminded me also, we have coffee with an officer on Friday morning, correct?
That's right, at Tacoma Vetco.
Yeah.
And I think it's 10 to 12.
Can't remember now.
And what a cool thing.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you to Ms. Sue Katz Miller for raising the issue of our police officers at our meetings. Our officers usually sit in the back of the room, but if at any time anyone feels that the presence of our officers is inappropriate in the room, I'd like that to be raised with us. We review this policy every now and then. It's in fact been for a number of years we've had officers present in our meetings. One of the reasons we do it is so that our officers get to hear some of the things that we're talking about, and that they get to know the city. We started this a number of years ago, thanks to some of the work of our officers when we talked about increasing the community engagement. And so, part of it was to have officers in our meetings when they're hearing about what's going on in the community, what people are working on. And so, in general, they sit in the back of the room, but I appreciate the feedback that maybe other, sometimes they had been in the front of the room and I hadn't noticed. So, thank you for that, and Captain Collington is in the back of the room, and I'm sure he was listening very carefully to that. So, thank you very much. Okay, let's, now we can get to our work session. The way we were going to do the work session this evening, given how hefty this resolution is, I thought we would first, if members of the city council would like to speak for just a few moments on anything big picture, overall thoughts, and then we will walk through the changes that a number of us have already suggested, that we want our colleagues' feedback on. The way we'll do this is, we'll walk through suggestions, changes, amendments to this. If it's something that there's a discussion on, you know, something more than just a slight wording change, we'll do a hand vote on that, which basically just means if a majority of the council supports it, it will show up in the next iteration of the draft. But even when we do have the vote on July 25th, there's always the opportunity for someone to amend it at that time. And, yeah, so I think that is it. Would someone like to start us off, or Councilwoman Dibala? All right.
Yeah, that's only because if I don't go first, I may forget what I want to say.
I wrote mine out, that's why.
Thanks, thanks to everybody for coming out, and I felt like tonight was a little more reflective of the range of views that I'm hearing within Ward 2 than, than some of the other meetings have been, and particularly thank you to the Co-op, to Rachel who isn't here, and to the attorney. Is it possible to get your comments in writing? Thank you, because it kind of, with so much else going on. And, and I, I've thought a lot about how this range of views that's been expressed really is, is at this point, maybe, I want to acknowledge the deep feeling that many people are bringing to this, and I, and I get that. And I, I feel like there's got to be more than going on than just one lot or one building, and I think that, that former Councilmember Schultz said one thing that made some sense to me, which is that, is that there are a lot of fears and anxieties. They're real, they reflect how particularly, but not exclusively, those of us who've lived here a long time see the community and, and our concerns for the, for it possibly changing in a way that we might not like. And I feel like that's just bigger than this decision, and I'd like to ask the rest of the council if we can come back to that at some future date, talk about how we can talk, talk with the community, the different segments of the community, about how to, how to reflect, not just in this development, but in other aspects of the city and other aspects of policy to get the kind of community that I think we all fundamentally want. That said, I have a bunch of technical amendments that I'm going to skip, but I just wanted to say that I have submitted amendments on several areas of the resolution, several of which were touched on tonight. One is on sustainability, and particularly on green construction, and a couple of other more specifics within the lead Gold Plus guideline. The possibility of setting some funds for now, aside for affordable housing, till we're able to have a more further discussion as a good faith down payment, if you will, was raised. Some people liked it, some people didn't, but I was one of the people who worked on drafting something to reflect that, and we can talk about that more. I am also putting forward a suggestion, an amendment, that the building get a little shorter, and that we do a little work on the rear facade, and finally, as part of discussion on public space, an amendment referring to the revitalization of Morrison Park. So, I feel like I'm trying to capture the, the concerns of Ward 2 residents and translate them into some language. And finally, I agree, that last paragraph on traffic needs to get a little tougher.
Thank you. Anyone else next, want to go next? Councilwoman Kostick, thank you.
I'll go next. I want to echo Councilmember Dibala's thanks to everyone who came out tonight. It was really impressive to me to see so many people here and to still see so many of you here at 11:30 at night, listening and participating, and us having a robust discussion as a community. And to me, among all of the different viewpoints and the different perspectives that people are sharing, what I hear again and again is a real commitment to our community, and I think that is really the core that we need to hold on to because we aren't all going to agree, and we're not going to finish this process, no matter what the outcome, all happy with how it ends. But I think from there, we move forward, and we focus on that commitment to our community and to each other, and to the core values that we have as a community. And I heard a lot of great commitment today from people with completely different perspectives on this project, but the same commitment to a lot of the social justice issues that I think we all value, and I know that many of us, and all of us on this council value. So, I hope that we can move forward from this project in the future and focus on those things. I'm very excited to work on issues about affordable housing and affordability in the city, to see how we can better support minority-owned businesses at the junction and throughout the city, to see how we can build a more inclusive community where people are coming together, and we have events and activities and gathering places that everyone wants to come to and everyone feels comfortable in. And so, I, I'm tonight looking at some of the things related to the resolution, but I also hope that we can, moving forward, focus on those things more broadly as a city and move those priorities forward together. I think, looking at the resolution specifically, there were a lot of good comments tonight, I think raising questions and concerns related to traffic, the environment, affordability, and a variety of other issues. Just realizing now, it's probably my computer that's been making that strange noise, and I've been wondering what that was and why your phone was going off, so I will deal with that in a minute. I will change that. But, related to the resolution, as it's been, a draft had been circulated previously. I added several things that are in the current draft, related to traffic, the rear of the building, the public space, and the Co-op. I also have some changes tonight. I'll propose that, I think, try to address some of the issues and the concerns that I've heard from the community. I agree with the comments related to the traffic clause in the resolution, and I will say I was the one who added that clause originally, and it was my first attempt at saying something about traffic because I felt like it was very important that we have details about traffic in this resolution. But I agree, I don't think it's strong enough, and I have some suggested revised wording that we should look at tonight. I also have some wording related to public space, the rear of the building, and a couple of other smaller things. So, we'll get into those things. I don't want to take too much time now, but I appreciate, again, all of you coming out.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thanks to everybody. I know a lot of people weren't able to stay, but I appreciate all the comments that we heard. You know, one of the things that I've been very concerned about and talked about for quite a while, connected to this project, is the reality that we have a lot of divisiveness in the community around the project, and there's a real threat to, that we'll have longer-term acrimony even after we make some of the decisions that we're going to make. So, I think it's important to try to get past that and find ways to see if we can get to a middle ground, and there may not be a true middle ground, but at least move in a, in a direction that might promote somewhat more of a coming together. And I have some amendments that maybe could help do that, and I'll talk about that in a minute. You know, today, I think, I take notes, a lot of my colleagues do too, just because it helps me to focus on what people are saying, and I can go back to it. So, 70 people spoke, and roughly 30 were for it, and 40 were against it, and, you know, that's in the range of the kinds of comments that I've been receiving from people. So, there are divisions, and if we can find a way to try to get past that, I think that'll be better. Not everybody is for it, is 100% for it, 100% against it. They understand some changes may, may need to be made. One of the challenges that we have is that if the project goes forward next week, or two weeks from now, several other entities, the Historic Preservation Commission, the County Planning Board, State Highway, many of them have a role in what happens. And I agree that we shouldn't just sort of say, "Oh, we got close enough, let's send it off to them." So, some of the changes that I want to make in, in the resolution do call for making things a little bit more specific, and that includes some of the issues that were touched on by Michelle, who's the lawyer for the Co-op, and we'll see if they get to where they want to get. I think that one issue at least that we really have control over, that I don't think anyone else in any of those other entities, I don't think State Highway, or Historic Preservation Commission, or the County Planning is really going to, want to get into, is going to be this question around public space, and so, that's something I think if we're going to get a change over where we are now, which I think we should, we have to do it. And so, that's why, that's one of the things I do plan to offer an amendment on, and we can talk about that, that later. In terms of the mediation process and the intersection process, I think those things can work forward if we tighten up the language, and some of my colleagues have already talked about, about doing that. So, at this point, I don't know how I would vote on the resolution. If we vote in two weeks, it will depend on the kind of progress we make on this, the issues that I'm talking about, in particular, public space and height as well. And I agree with Councilmember Dibala that we need to address the height as well. So, thank you.
Great. Anyone else want to go next, or Councilwoman Circe, and then Siemens? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jer, go ahead, sorry. I, sorry.
All right. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, appreciate it. It's, it's always good to see the community, even though this, for some, might be a contentious issue. The proposed resolution, I'm not really going to speak too much on it because I would like my colleagues to review the proposal from Sue Katz Miller that I just put before the body. The one thing that I will say is that I think that we should not consider a resolution until the mediation is completed between the Co-op and NDC. So, that we have already, you know, to some extent, given the Co-op Special Nation status, we need to figure out if, how they're going to go forward with this project, if the things that are necessary for continuity on this site will be resolved during mediation. So, I would suggest that we wait until that's completed. On the racial equity piece that has gone out, I will just say that I do not support that document. You know, when I initially went to the mayor last year and, and wanted the, the city to take up this issue, I thought it was going to be iterative, I thought it was going to be stronger. I think this is one of the most important, important issues in the country right now. I did not think that it would be watered down, and I did not think that, that zero or a nominal amount of money would actually be put towards this initiative. If you just remember when the council, when Councilmember Mayo proposed sustainability and wanted the council to fund a consultant, the council allocated $81,000 for consultants to figure out how we're going to be a better environmentally sustainable community. In this proposal, we're looking at $15,000. That's nothing. So, I would say that we are backpedaling, we are not moving forward on this issue, and I cannot support where we are on racial equity. Thank you.
Councilwoman Circe?
Good evening, and thank you all again for sticking it out. You know, it's, it's been hard deliberating, going through all of the materials, trying to not only think about what would be in the best interest of my ward, but also what would be in the best interest of the city as a whole. And this development, in my view, is one indicator of what is the inevitable that's, that's facing our community. You've heard me speak before about the fact that a number of minority-owned businesses in the Crossroads area and the commercial tax base that's generated there is actually what is being used to fund your sidewalks and speed bumps that you fight so adamantly for, and they're on the brink of something called the Purple Line, and all of their land is privately held, and we don't have the resources to even help those businesses with signage to help them during construction, or to provide the level of technical assistance that they would need in order to continue to stay in business. We have a number, we, we talk a lot about the fact that affordability is a problem. Well, the bulk of the affordable housing that still exists is in Wards 5 and 6 and, and other parts of the city that haven't been converted to million-dollar homes just yet. And yet, we don't have the resources available to ensure that we have enough money in our housing reserve fund to help people purchase homes who otherwise would not be able to afford a $400,000 home that requires a substantial amount of maintenance. So, we have to ask ourselves, what are we trying to fix? And how can a development like this actually help fund the solutions? So, when I look at this development, I also have to think about the process. It sucks. Quote me, it sucks. The development process in Montgomery County sucks. And there are some things that have to be done before other things can be done, point blank, period. You want to get a finalized traffic plan, you have to submit a draft site plan. It sucks. It would be great if we could do a lot of this stuff right now and have, put a nice bow on like a whole plethora of packages that goes forward and, and tell... bow on like a whole plethora of packages that goes forward and tell the state, this is final, move. It just doesn't work that way. So for me, I have to think about this project from the perspective of the stages. What do we need to vote on and try to reach consensus on right now? And what are matters that will have to be discussed once they reach the various stages of the planning process? So once they've made their way to the planning office or SHA. So I look forward to talking through the various aspects of the resolution, which overall I support. And I appreciate a number of the edits that have been proposed by my colleagues, because I think that they do make the resolution, the resolution better. But for the vast majority of the issues that have been brought up, and a vast majority of some of the challenges that have been expressed, again, we have to think strategically, not just about the timing, about the project, and what is going to happen, or how it may impact you and your backyard, but how the project could potentially benefit the city as a whole. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And as everyone has done, thank you all for being here at this hour. I especially thank the representatives from the co-op for their continued interest and participation in our meetings. I'm not going to go into a whole long talk, but I did want to thank Councilmember DeBala for, you know, putting forward the concept of using some of the revenues from the development towards affordable housing. I think that is very important, and I look forward to seeing how that develops. I also wanted to thank the mayor for putting a change in there to insist the developer be looking for local businesses, not big chains. And then, as far as the co-op goes, I think the, I'm so glad to see that we are in mediation now, or that they are in mediation. And I really, I have renewed optimism that we can really find that middle ground where, I don't even think of it as middle ground, I think it's, I think it's, I'd like to see this whole project in the same light that I saw when it first started, and that is a great opportunity for the co-op, and for that reason, being a great opportunity for the city and for the city residents. I think, I can't, I can speculate, but I don't really know, because I wasn't involved in all the discussions that you and NDC had. But it didn't end up being the great solution that I thought it was going to be. And I'm hopeful that as you are restarting this discussion with NDC, that you're going to be able to find that great solution to where you have reasonable accommodation. You know, that's a neat term that any lawyer would throw us out of the room if we told them that's what we were going to do. It's a heck of a contract. You know, I just hope you look for, how can you make it work? And that's not just you, but that's also NDC. I hope you both enter that mediation with the idea that you want to make it work, because I think both you and NDC will really benefit and be further ahead as partners rather than antagonistic neighbors. So I, anything that we can do to make that happen, please let us know. Anyways, so the last thing I just wanted to mention, and I'm not suggesting that we put it into the resolution, but I think that one of the big things I heard, and you know, anybody that's here that came on Monday evening, and I, you know, I see Susan and a few other people that were there, you know, I want to thank you for the time that you all spent there Monday night. And one of the big things I heard from people was, you know, this idea, we need more public space. But I realized that a lot of what people were talking about was space very similar to what we have here at the community center. And I'm wondering if the right solution isn't, that the city actually be one of the tenants in that building for a big hall. The thing that I hear most people say, a deficiency of this community center is, we don't have a big hall to hold events in. And, you know, somebody talked about, Howard Cone made a suggestion, you know, to have a place for dancing. Well, a big hall would be a place for dancing, it would be a place for, you know, wedding receptions, you know, different things that I hear that people want from this community center but can't get because we don't have the space. So why don't we be a tenant? Anyways, I'd like to talk about that, I'd like to put that on, you know, agenda sometime at your leisure, to see if that doesn't make some sense.
Great. Councilman Kostick, do you have another thing to add?
Thank you, yeah, and I don't want to get too far off track here, but I did want to note a few things, my feelings regarding racial equity, after Councilmember Smith had some comments on that. A lot of public comments that I've heard tonight, and through email from people, have noted that they felt the piece that was put out about it, and the change to calling these considerations, was a step backwards and wasn't sufficient. And I think, I can understand that perspective, but from my perspective, I think our purpose in doing this is not to take this backward, but to be more active in explaining where we actually are in this process. And I don't think that's adequate. I don't think we are where we want to be, but I think that's, and that is something we need to continue to work on. When we have met with the national groups that work on racial equity initiatives in cities and counties, we have seen again and again that their processes have been years long before they get anywhere near where we even are right now. When we've talked with some of the staff members who work on these things, they've been really impressed with how fast we've been able to move to where we are right now, and the fact that we're able to have community conversations about this. So I don't think we should be patting ourselves on the back for that, but I also think we do need to be realistic about where we are. And I think we need to take that and move it forward, so that we have a plan for where we're going from here. A few months ago, we had discussions as a council about our priorities, we had discussions about budgetary issues and where we're putting our money as a city, and we did dedicate funds to racial equity considerations, to racial equity programs. We put some money towards our resident survey and dedicating funds to focus groups, specifically trying to reach underserved populations and people of color and non-native English speakers, trying to reach those people a little more and get some more feedback from them, so that we really can move on and get some of that data, so that we can really address a lot of these questions more thoroughly in the future. We also are looking at doing trainings for staff members, for community members. We, as a council, have been doing some trainings, and I think we need to continue to do those things. And then I have proposed creating a task force that I've mentioned in the past. What I would envision a task force doing is to helping, is to help us as a, as a council, start to really move forward with this in a more concerted way. And what I'm hearing from the community is that you want us to move forward with this, and I think that's fantastic. That's exactly where we should be with this. So I would call on everyone to continue with that feedback, to join a task force, to be involved in these discussions, and find ways to move us forward so that we have a more effective process, and we can create something that guides us, a guiding plan, moving forward so that we can get where we want to be. And so, building on some of Councilmember Smith's concerns, and the things that I've talked about right now, and all of the discussions we've had as a community about racial equity recently, I would like to suggest and ask that we add a work session in the fall sometime on racial equity, so that we, as a council, can discuss where we are with it and where we want to go with it a little more thoroughly. Thank you.
All right. So I'll just wrap up. So over the last few weeks, I've been starting to write down my thoughts on this upcoming vote, and it's really has been one of the hardest things I've had to write, because I know no matter what I commit to paper, or how well I try to provide my thinking behind my decisions, I'm going to disappoint someone. Most likely, a close friend, most likely, a longtime neighbor, and someone I deeply respect. There is no agreement in our community how to move forward with the Tacoma Junction project. As we've said, there's not agreement here on the council. But I want to offer a perspective of where I'm coming from. Many of you knew, know, I grew up in Brooklyn in the '70s and '80s. I lived in neighborhoods where, in the summer, we didn't have air conditioning, and most people sat on their porches, and children played stickball, or ran through open fire hydrants in streets. My neighborhood was not filled with the skyscrapers of the city, it was a big deal for us to go into the city, but mostly brownstones and three-to-four-story apartment buildings. I reference this because when my husband and I were married and were looking for a place to call home, I wanted two things. A place to be able to walk to, to get milk and other groceries without having to drive, since as someone who didn't learn how to drive until well into our 20s, that was important to me, and a place where our children could walk to, as I did growing up. Second, I wanted a place that reminded me of Brooklyn I grew up in, a place where people sat on their porches, kids played in the street or yards, and we had a strong community. I have been fortunate to find all of this and more in Tacoma Park, and for the 20-plus years I've been here, first as a renter, then as a homeowner. I am privileged to live a block from Tacoma Junction, where I've always been able to do some shopping, and now my family has even more options, for which I am very grateful. And perhaps it's because I grew up in Brooklyn, or for many other reasons, that personally, I see the size of this project as reasonable. I know some people don't, but this is my personal opinion. I disagree, it's a monstrosity. I really, when I look at it, I don't see that. I understand some people would like a smaller project. I really have listened and heard that. And one of the reasons why I have not come out publicly to say, I'm okay with the size of this, until right now, because I wanted to really listen and understand and see what was feasible. One thing I want to correct, though, is I have never, over the last four years, supported a project that was near 35,000 square feet. I just, it wasn't ever something I spoke of here, or any of the prior councils took a position on. When we go back and look at the resolution that was put in place in September, you will clearly say that, see that the 35,000 square feet was put in that resolution as a comparison for the traffic study, and there is a clause that says that the council is not endorsing a development that's 35,000 square feet. So I know it's a little confusing, because I went back and looked at it, but I just wanted to put that on the record. And I know saying this is going to disappoint and probably anger some people, but I feel like we're getting along in the process, and I should do that. And I'll also say that last night, I had a very long conversation with Lorraine Pierceall about the look of this building and the development, and I promised her, if we get to the County Historic Preservation Commission, and they come back and they say this is not appropriate for this location, I will take her out to dinner and publicly state that she is correct and I was wrong. But at this moment, I have had experts who have written to me who very much like the proposed design, and I have those who don't like it. I wish I had only heard one point of view over the last three months, because it would make this decision so much easier. But I have heard of various opinions across the spectrum, and have tried to take all of those in, and tried to look at what is subjective in terms of what somebody likes, and what are the objective things we need to be judging this development on. And so what I have heard over the course of the last four years, and particularly the last three months, is that I think we can all agree on what we want this project to be, a part of us and reflect our community, and that there is a great deal of anxiety and distrust about what will happen in this process. So one of the things to address that, even though I think we have a good foundation in the development agreement, is that tonight, I'm going to propose that we strengthen the type of businesses that we want to see located in this project. And I fully support many of the proposals I'll hear from my colleagues as well. I want to thank Brenda Platt, who spoke a few weeks ago, and her organization, the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. It's a place that I had known about before, but after Brenda has spoken at a council meeting, I was able to speak with her and one of her colleagues and craft the amendment I'm going to put forward tonight. And also, I want to thank, let's see, there's Sue, when Ben Miller came to my house with a number of young people, this really spurred the idea for the amendment I'm going to propose tonight. Also, as I've said in the past, I have always prioritized the co-op and continue to want it to be a thriving part of our community, and look forward to that doing as well, and I am very encouraged also by the mediation moving forward. Regarding the racial equity work, I am glad to, as Councilwoman Kostick said, put a work session on in September, but I'd actually like to think about us doing something that we did a couple of years ago, when we started the Affordable Housing Reserve. Prior to that, we held a community conversation on affordable housing, and then a few months later, we held one on youth development. Both of those community conversations led us to create the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund and the work we're doing on affordable housing. The youth development community conversation actually helped us restructure our recreation department and fed into our priorities. So I would actually like to build on what Councilwoman Kostick said, and Councilmember Smith said, and look to the fall as having a community conversation and possibly structuring it similarly to what we have done in the past. And I think that, for me right now, the piece that, of our work that is missing, that we've started, is really the engagement piece of the community, and having members of the community engaged in this process. I think as a council, we've made a commitment, the staff has made a commitment, is working hard on this, and there are some members of our community who, through the Tacoma Foundation and other places, have started doing this work, but I think our true work needs to be engaging the community, and I'd like to kick that off with a community conversation this fall. All right, that was longer than I anticipated, so let's, at midnight, let's move on to the resolution. So I want to thank our city staff. They took the comments we had been making and suggestions, and put them into one document for us. For folks who are following along at home or in the audience, I'm going to walk through this and tell you what line I am at in the resolution, and then the change. So the first change, it was at line 87, the whereas clause, and I'm looking at the fifth line.
Yeah, the 87 is where the, where that clause would start.
Starts.
Right.
Can I ask a question? Is this available to everyone in the audience?
It's not. The staff just finished it.
We just got it, so.
Right, I just want to make sure.
That's why I was telling, that's why I was saying the line number. Right, that's why I was saying, start at line 87.
Just to complete the thought there about why you're saying it that way.
Right, so what we did with this, just to be clear, is that...
I know, we only just got a chance to get the mull into you today, I get that.
Right, well, I appreciate that everybody's been very engaged in looking at potential amendments. What we tried to do was identify what the original clause was that you might be amending, and then put that, because sometimes more than one council member had a recommendation on the same clause. So that's why we ended up kind of assembling it in this format. Some of the language that had been submitted by council members, we did run past our development attorney to ensure that there weren't conflicts with the development agreement in the wording. So there was some of that. I can't definitely say that everybody went through that process. I don't think there's anything that's outstanding that's a real question, but it's something that we will, then, after this evening, go back through that process with our attorney.
Okay. And I'm just confused on the first one, because what's, so what's in...
I'll speak to that, because it was mine. I suggested removing its interest in...
Oh, removing it, okay.
Yeah, because I would rather say that we, this is the development agreement identifies the priorities for the council, and reflects the council's commitment to ensuring continuity of the TPSS co-op operations during construction.
Thanks for clarifying.
I know, I was getting confused.
So we would, so the proposal there is to remove its interest in...
And just say, accommodating future parking and delivery needs.
Okay. So it makes it stronger?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Anyone have any concerns about that, or can we, everyone okay with that change? So we're deleting "its in the interest of," and it actually makes the statement stronger? All right? Yes, Councilwoman DeMaula?
No, it looks like she might have just left this scene.
We're not gonna, no, don't do that.
No, okay, never mind.
We will get the co-ops, and they'll have time to review this again.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Line 178.
Sorry. So the term "future," what does that imply? Do you mean, like, immediately during, in post-construction, or you're talking about forever?
So this is not my wording, this is what was in there originally. I think we could lose "future," I don't have a strong feeling on that.
Okay. Do you want to take out the word "future"?
I would suggest that, because we're making it stronger.
Right. So it reflects the council's commitment to ensuring continuity of the co-op operations during construction and accommodating the parking and delivery needs of the co-op.
Yeah.
Taking out "future."
Right, or we could say "current."
And the intent of this is to make it stronger.
Yeah, just get rid of "future."
Okay. And the intent of this is to make it stronger.
Yes, instead of saying...
Not weaker.
Right.
Okay.
Because we're taking out "its interest in."
Right, so two deletions, got it.
Got it, all right. Next one, line, the whereas clause that begins at line 178. And Councilmember Kovar, this is yours, do you want to speak to it?
Sure. I have to get a drink in a minute.
Sorry.
So I mentioned this when we were, via email, working on this. Why don't we jump to the next one while I get a drink?
Okay, we will hold that one, go to line 269, and this is Councilwoman DeMaula's.
Give me a moment.
You're adding "A" on top of page three.
Okay, this is, and I already have it, based on tonight's comments, and added to the edit. So this is a provision to amend this section to add, to reduce the height of the building either through parapet or interior floors by up to five feet, and then I had, subject to approval, I think it's subject to consultation, if I understood Lorraine correctly.
No, so there was some misunderstanding, and if I can just mention this. The development needs to get a historic area work permit, which looks at the entire development for historic purposes. The particular phrase in the letter from Adrienne Washington was to say that they would be consulting about height in those discussions. That wasn't to say that that's the only thing that Historic Preservation Commission looks at.
Okay.
So I think she was a little bit off on that point. You know, this is a place where there will be a good amount of discussion with Historic Preservation Commission about what the design of the building is, and that includes height, massing, and design windows, the whole bit.
Okay, so the gist of it, the intent of this is to say, to add to this section, that we would want to reduce the height of the building either through the parapet or the interior floors by up to five feet, subject to all the reviews, however you want to phrase it.
And what is the brackets? Why are some words in brackets?
Yeah, good question.
You know, I think, actually, I mean, I actually think that what's in the parentheses wasn't in what you sent, perhaps?
Oh, so maybe this added.
Ms. DeMaula, so then they added it through the conversations with the county?
Montgomery and Tacoma.
So I think that it's deceptive, but I think that was additional language that was put in by the...
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, would that replace the...
No, it's an addition.
It would, it looks like it would replace "A."
But it says "A" still, right? So that would replace "A," right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would just offer that I think it's important, understanding that the Historic Preservation Commission will have, you know, the key role in that, and the facade advisory board may, but I think it's important, and I agree with my colleague, that we ought to go on record as saying we would like to see that reduction, understanding it may not be entirely in our control, but I like the idea of us saying, "We want that," as opposed to just...
Yeah.
Somebody, please, somebody straighten out the wording for me, but that's the intent, yes.
And I believe the way that you said this, councilmember, was up to five feet.
I did, because I, since I wrote it, I had a couple of conversations with people.
So this would, really would be up to...
So, I'm sorry, I missed Councilmember Kovar. How do you want to adjust what Councilwoman DeMaula?
I'm saying, I agree with the thrust of what she's trying to do. I'm a little bit confused by the language, just because I wasn't sure about the bracketed and parenthetical things, but if that's just to replace 272A, and it would be this new "A," and so the thing at the bottom of page two of our sheet, all that would be struck out, and this would be the new language.
And that was the problematic one that Ms. Pierceall had, because it was too, right?
It was the, yes, it was language from the letter.
All right, so what it reads now, the suggested amendment is to reduce the height of the building either through parapet or interior floors up to five feet, subject to the approval of the Montgomery County Historic Commission and the Tacoma Park Facade Advisory Board.
I guess the only thing I would say is, that may not flow from the whereas clause in 269, because that says, "Whereas NDC and its June 20th correspondents committed to making these changes." They didn't commit to making that change. We're asking for something different. So I would be more inclined to say, "They committed to this, and the council would like to go further by asking for that," i.e. the five-foot...
So that, the "A."
I'm not trying to tell you...
You see what he's saying?
Right, so leave in the original "A," but have a different, have different language that is added to it, that says, "However, the council..."
Yeah.
If that's what the council wants to say. I think when I originally sent it, when I originally sent it in, I think I had something like modifications also include, and then the possibility of a list, of which this would be "A." And then in the, yeah, so can we ask all the attorneys to straighten that out?
I would agree there. I have one that's following here that I think would possibly be a part of a list like that that I had suggested. It seems to me to make sense.
And the reason that I said it that way is so that when we get to the resolve section, where it refers to the other modifications as identified, there's a place where they all are in one place, and...
So this is a place of additional modifications outside of the letter that we've received from NDC that they've already agreed to?
Right, right, and, yes.
And keeping those, okay. I'm looking at the staff, make sure that it makes sense. All right, I have a bunch of lights on, sorry, I've been ignoring them. Councilmember Simmons, oh, you're good, okay. So what's on the table at the moment, then, is adding that an amendment to reduce the height of the building either through parapet or interior floors up to five feet, subject to the approval of the Montgomery County Historic Commission and the Tacoma Park Facade Advisory Board. I think this is one we should probably take a hand vote on. Does anyone want to speak to it before we take a hand vote? Councilwoman Kostic?
I would like to propose that we add a comma at the end, and say something like, "While maintaining the natural light and open feel," or some wording related to that of the interior space.
Are you okay with that, Councilwoman DeMaula?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I have one...
Sorry, I have one other question about that.
This is going to be very long.
No, I'm sorry, but...
It's going to be a Councilmember Kovar sentence.
No, no, it's a joyfully written sentence.
Commas are nice, commas are our friend. I guess the only question, do we want to say, "Subject to approval of that commission?"
Yeah, I was going to say, the facade advisory board actually does not actually approve.
Right, so whatever the right word is.
But even with the Historic Commission, is it in consultation with them, or is it subject to their approval? Because if we want it, they'll certainly take what we request under advisement, right? I'm just not sure "approval" is the exact right word, and I'm not trying to...
So the Historic Preservation Commission has to approve the historic area work permit, and that is going to be what's before them, and then, however, in the discussions, they wish to see it changed, and so there's back and forth related to that. And, you know, one of the things that is just also an area of judgment can be that if you lower the height of the building, it can make it look funny in a different kind of relationship way with other buildings, and so that's part of what the discussions would be.
So if the facade advisory committee doesn't actually approve this...
They make recommendations that the HPC...
Okay, so should we say their recommendation?
We'll get the right language for that. I'm, I would want to be correct about it, but...
So we're just, we're going to highlight approval for now, and we will make sure that it is the correct language for the HPC and the facade advisory board. All right, any other comment on this one? So let's do a hand raise on this. Everybody who is comfortable adding this to the next draft, please raise your hand. Councilwoman Kostic, did you have any? Okay, yeah, so it gets in the next draft, all right. Additional...
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, so some people have said this is a token, I actually, I don't think that it is. I think it's reflecting a lot of concerns that I've heard from people, including people who support the development, kinda.
And I want to say that I, however it ends up in the final language, appreciate Councilwoman Kostic's addition, because that has been my concern about reducing the height, so, okay. Oh, back, we have to go back. We do, because, Councilmember Kovar, all right, we're at the, all right, line 178, that whereas clause. Councilmember Kovar, would you like to take us through the suggested changes?
Yes, thank you, and I apologize that I couldn't talk before. So really, in the interest of accuracy, and I hope my colleagues would go along with me on this, what's in red, and this is talking about the October 25th council resolution, and I don't think that what is currently there is factually inaccurate, but I think it is a little bland in its description of what we did and what that resolution did. And I think it's important, for the purposes of, you know, we have all these whereas clauses that try, and I think do really a good job of saying, "Here are all the other things that happened, and here are the various steps we took." And the reality is that, in that October 25th resolution, which was responsive to the concept plan, we were quite critical of the work that NDC did in the concept plan. And I'm not trying to say they're terrible as a result of that, I just think it's important to note that, and this connects to maybe some of the other things they were talking about here, including potentially the height, and later possibly public space, that it wasn't just that we reiterated the criteria, we said they fell short on a number of criteria, and we said that we expected them to meet those criteria in the site plan. So I think it's important to put that in there.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that? Are we okay adding that?
Yep.
Yep, okay, that gets added. Next, back on page three, Councilwoman Kostic had an additional suggestion. Would you like to take us through that?
Yeah, so, excuse me, so I would recommend that we add this to the new whereas clause regarding modifications, and it would say, "To design the rear of the building to minimally impact the residential neighborhood and woodlot behind it, including design elements to minimize noise and light pollution, both from the garage and tenant spaces, and to utilize outdoor lights with no greater than a 3,000 Kelvin light temperature."
Okay. Councilwoman DeMaula?
Yeah, can we take the other rear facade one at the same time?
Absolutely.
Which is right below it. To add detail to the design of the rear facade through use of materials and other methods, so it's less intrusive and more visually interesting, which I remember discussing with them when they were here, and I remember them saying, "Yeah, of course, that's what we meant, but I just would like to see that written down."
So that could be part of the, that could actually be part of the same clause.
That's why I wanted to...
Do them together.
If that's something you want to do.
Who gets to decide what's visually interesting? I guess that's the only question I have, or are people comfortable?
I can't think of a better word than interesting. I agree, that's not a very specific word.
It's actually a common, it's actually a common phrase, and it means that there's different materials or textures or different kinds of things.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this, or suggested changes? Are we okay with adding this?
So this goes on a hypothetical modifications, additional modifications list?
It is not hypothetical, it is a modification list.
Okay.
All right, next, line 288, what was "D" on line 288? Councilwoman Kostic, you had an addition here.
Yes, so I am not sure whether this one would appropriately go into the modifications clause, or the existing one, but to add to this section, "NDC will make modifications to ensure that at least 2,700 square feet of public space is maintained and that it is equivalent in type and quality."
All right, so we just have to figure out the placement of that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they have, that wasn't the exact wording of their, in their letter, so I think that might be more appropriate in a modifications clause.
Anyone have any questions on that, or are we okay with that?
I would have one observation.
Yes.
So later, and I thought originally about putting this first in a whereas clause, and then a resolve clause, and I only proposed for it in a resolve clause, but a later amendment will be for more public space. So should the additional public space be, language be approved, then this would have to be modified. So I just, I'm not, this makes sense as far as it goes right now.
All right, we'll come back to it if...
Yep.
All right.
But I'm okay with it as is.
All right, everybody okay adding this for the next? Councilwoman, CRCAU?
It could just be "light," but I'm confused.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm not, so in the first part of the statement, we state that they have to provide 2,700 square feet, so I guess what I'm not understanding is how, oh, so it's in the event, so basically, okay.
So like, remember, if the lay-by gets pushed back more, there is concern that it could cut into that public space.
Okay, okay.
What we're saying is, if that happens, or something happens through the county process, you can't go below this for public space.
Okay, so it says 2,700 as the min?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Right, so again, so again, it's part of our process of going through the full document and making sure what things NDC has already committed to, and if it's something different, adding it as a council modification.
Right. Okay, got it.
All right, so that one is in there. Next, we're at line 307, and this is under a whereas clause, "In response to other concerns voiced by the council, NDC has committed to implementing the following," and this is a suggestion by Councilmember Kostic again.
Yeah, this is just a minor thing. I'm almost 100% certain I saw this wording in their letter, because I liked the way it was worded. I suggest just adding "and minimize damage to" the natural elements.
All right, we'll move on then to line 324. Councilwoman DeMaula, this was...
More public space.
Yes.
And again, on this one, I had it as an addition to the, to what was a list that NDC had in their letter, so since the NDC didn't technically have this in their letter, maybe it goes on the modifications list. But I would like to, I appreciate that they would like to partner on programming, and I'd like them to partner on revitalizing Morrison Park.
Yeah, they had mentioned that, but I think that was a verbal...
They did, but again, yeah.
Got it, get it in here. All right, we're all good with that?
Yeah, setting aside the bigger question about public space, I think the smaller questions about public space, getting them nailed down is important, and then we can talk about the bigger picture, too.
Yeah, we'll get to that. All right, and then we'll move on then to the whereas clause that begins at line 328, and this is a complete replacement, Councilwoman Kostic?
I think this is actually a complete addition.
Okay, this is an addition.
If I'm looking at it right. So this is the, there's a whereas clause about what the traffic studies found, and I was proposing adding a whereas clause after that, or it could be incorporated into it, whatever seems to flow better, saying, "The traffic group's traffic study utilized shopping center and general office building rates for the trip generation model, estimating traffic affiliated with the site plan. A different formula for a high-turnover sit-down restaurant was utilized to estimate traffic related to a background development. The traffic group has stated its plans to include rates for a high-turnover sit-down restaurant in the site plan in its traffic impact study before submitting to the county." And that was something they committed... And that was something they committed to in, in the document that they just sent to us.
Okay, is, was that for the whole thing, or for just the section that would be a restaurant on the end?
I'm not exactly sure how their formulas would work, but my understanding would be that that would be a portion of it to determine the traffic. I don't, I mean, maybe we could consult with them about how that needs to be worded.
And I have a question that the city manager may be able to answer. What does high turnover sit-down restaurant mean? Is that a quick, quick service restaurant? Get Chipotle? I mean, what?
I'm not gonna, I have to find out what the definition is for the traffic studies.
All right, thank you.
So maybe on this one, we'll consult with the traffic group, and we'll get back on that one, so we'll hold that. All right, next, we have line, the whereas clause that begins at line 339. Ah, this was our attorney.
I got one other question. I'm sorry. So this is about whether they accurately measured, if I'm right, and maybe Councilmember Kostic couldn't, wouldn't mind answering this, this is about whether the traffic group accurately measured the type of traffic, the level of traffic that we can expect from a development along the lines of what's in the current site plan, right? So some residents have suggested that that was off by a lot. I don't know enough to be able to say that, but I guess the question is, I mean, can we try to get some of this answered before?
And we had, they did answer the night they were here.
They did answer, and so we just have to, I just have to go back and, we may have to consult with them and just find out what they put, but they had finalized those things after they had spoken with you all.
So I guess this says, "We want them to study it before submitting to the county." Do we actually, can we know it before the 25th? That's what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't think they actually had done that formulation. My, my understanding and the questions that we asked that, that were just sent around was that they said they would do that in their impact study for the county, but maybe it was just that they would include it. And that's something we should clarify about.
It seems fundamental to what we want to know, doesn't it?
Well, so, so one of the things that was clear when we met with the state highway administrator is that even between the time that the traffic group came here and they appeared at the state highway, they had had to add, add in more information as well. So these things are iterative, and so I believe that this information would be in there by now, because that was raised with the council. I just need to double check.
If we could check on it, that'd be great.
Yes, I intend to report back.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. And moving on to line 339, the whereas clause there, that's just clearing, cleaning up by the attorney. And then Councilwoman DiBala, you had additional text, and it was revised by the attorney.
Yeah, so just to introduce this, a number of people have made comments about various environmental aspects of the proposal, and recognizing that the, that NDC has agreed to, let me rephrase that, recognizing that NDC has committed to lead gold plus, we never really said what plus is.
Yep.
And so this is a, my, my idea was to, was to add some things that are in fact actually not really crystal clear in the lead gold options. And so they would be 100% stormwater treatment because this is technically, because it's a paved lot, from a stormwater point of view, it's technically redevelopment, and therefore 100% is not required by the county. So this would just say, "Well, in the city, it took home park, that's what we expect." Green construction methods, particularly, you heard a lot tonight about air pollution and code red margin, that's very convincing. There are several options available that are not gonna break the bank.
That's what B covers.
That's what B covers, best available control technologies, minimize air pollution, that's what that means. One of the options is to just not work on code red days, or to switch to biodiesel fuel on orange code days, or to rent a bulldozer that runs on biodiesel fuel. There's, we don't have to get into details, but I think that's an important point that isn't fully addressed under the lead code. Lead code under construction is really more about other stuff, it's not about air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions during construction, so. The third one, which the attorney made a third to fourth, is to say, "Energy neutral building, either through onsite or offsite." Offsite would probably be through the purchase of renewable energy credits. The city does it, most, many residents do it, we, we have a program promoting it for residents, it's kind of a baseline in this city, that as much as possible, we're moving toward less greenhouse gas emissions, where it's incrementally not, you know, not a whole lot more expensive. So it seems to me a very reasonable, a reasonable thing to say, within this sustainability effort, go 100, go energy neutral, and if you can't make it work on the site, because you have a gre, a vegetated roof for stormwater, you can't have solar panels that will fulfill the need of the building, then, then just go offsite and buy it like the city does in the buildings that they can't convert. So that's the third slash fourth one. I have some wording changes on this, but we don't have to get into that right now.
Okay.
No. If you have wording changes.
Do them now? What kind, what kind of wording changes?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's a.
And you're also like, getting on a plane in a few hours, so yeah, we need them now.
Well, okay, so.
And you've discussed these, this change with Adrian?
When they were here, we talked about these things.
Okay.
Yes, so, no, I haven't called him up and said, "I'm about to propose X, Y, and Z." I figured somebody else was gonna handle that.
We would want to run this past him to find out if there is a, if there's an issue.
Technically a problem, whether there is one.
Either technically or financially a problem that you would need to at least be aware of.
Yeah, but my discussions with, with city staff and with experts that live in the city that are familiar with these areas is that this ought to be possible. This says, "We recommend that NDC work with the city to investigate," and that's really not what I meant.
Where, where are you?
I'm on page six at the bottom. I meant that modifications to the site plan include that they do this within the lead goal plus, and not that we investigate it.
So ignore it to happen?
I would like it to happen if, unless there's a really good reason, why not? And again, I don't think that's too much of a stretch. So that would be my, I guess that is a pretty major editorial change.
Yes.
Yeah, well, it, it's not what I had in the first place, so.
So the council therefore requires that? Is that what you're saying?
Depending on how the, how this is put onto a list.
And NDC implement the following.
There you go, thank you.
I'm wondering, I'm asking the city manager if, like, the one that I'm, proposed that's coming up later, that the, the city attorney suggested that maybe, not the city attorney, the, our development attorney suggested it might have to go into a separate companion resolution, because it refers back to things that were in the DA? I wonder if this might be, is that, I wonder if that's why they changed the language.
I don't know, and I'll find out. I mean, I think, you know, the, sometimes there are, sometimes it's important to have things grouped in one place and then, and sometimes in another place, and I'm, I'm not sure on this particular one.
Okay, was there anything else, Councilwoman DiBala?
Nope, that's, that's it for that.
All right.
I just have a question about D. My understanding from what you were talking about was that you wanted to leave the option open, that they could do something else if solar panels weren't possible, but to me, the way that reads right now, it would require them.
Right, and that wasn't, yeah, that, that was the other change. I'm sorry, I'm getting really tired.
If we could reword that somehow.
Yeah. I had it the other way around.
Well, so.
I had C and D together, energy neutral opinion, building through onsite or offsite, either through solar panels or through renewable electricity, and I don't know why he separated them.
Well, maybe we, maybe we'll consult with, with Jean and Matthias on that.
But you're, but the intent is for D to be.
Part of C.
Yeah.
But not to, you're not, you are not requiring solar.
Not a requirement.
The intent is to be energy neutral, and let them figure out how to get there.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm looking now. Yeah, the resolution from October does mention, on line 64, the October 2017 resolution mentions the lead go, gold or higher. So it's not just in the development agreement.
All right, any other questions on this one? So this one is to, if this checks out through going back to the attorney and with NDC, are we good for this direction? Yeah, all right, and if there's any problems with it, we'll come back to it. All right, the next one, we're on line 361, the whereas clause, and Councilmember Kovar.
Yes, I think everybody on the council is aware of this, this set of questions that have arisen around the nature of the, the overlapping nature of the, of the two parcels and the fact that the structure would span both of them, and that raises some questions under the requirements of Montgomery County. And so the way this was drafted initially, really kind of left it up in the air and said, "We would determine what to do going through the process." And I understand that that will require a certain amount of work, and we can't do it all immediately, but I don't feel that comfortable leaving it entirely up in the air, and I would prefer, and it doesn't have to be the exact language there, but for us to say there's one that we at least prefer with an indication that we're gonna try to move in that direction. And I thought when we circulated this, that there was some email responses that indicated that members liked that alternative more than the other. I may be wrong about that, but I think that's the one that makes the most sense, so.
I mean, I think that, I think that overall, it is the preferable alternative.
Right. I don't know if we say we should prefer and preferable now that I look at it, but, but that can be, but, but if we all think that, or if a majority of us think it, we, I think we ought to say it, it still doesn't mean we have to get it all resolved before the vote, if the vote occurs in two weeks, but at least it shows, and I think it shows the county, "Hey, guys, this is what's coming." So that's, that's the reason I would suggest some version.
So perhaps the council believes consolidation of the lots under city ownership is the preferable alternative?
Right, as opposed to prefers as the, right, exactly, yeah.
And was this, do we know if this was run by the, the attorney yet, or no, this language wasn't?
I'm not certain.
Ms. Grimsby's shaking her head no.
No, okay.
Yeah, and I, and I think it would be important to do that, right.
We'll be, we will be running the whole thing fast.
Yeah, I just was curious if they had, if we had had time. Any feedback on this one, any concerns?
I agree, it's a good call.
Yeah, okay, so pending attorney approval. Next, whereas clause at line 369, another suggested amendment by Councilmember Kovar.
Yes. Excuse me, so this whereas clause talks about how, at the request of various entities, state highway, NDC, and the Montgomery County review process, changes to the site plan could be sought. And I can imagine in specific circumstances, maybe we all can, maybe connected to the mediation or the intersection in particular, where we might have some changes that we would like. And it just seemed off to not include in that, in that whereas clause, that the city also could be the source of requests to make changes. So that's the purpose of that.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that was the assumption, but, because you always have that.
Right, but I think it's important to.
Spell it out.
To spell it out, yeah.
Okay, anyone have any concerns with that? Are we good?
Well, 35.
All right, I'm trying, I'm trying. All right, the next one's mine, and I think there was some transl, yeah, go ahead.
Can I just say something? Can I ask staff to look, there's several different places in the resolution where the council's goals are variously described, in some cases longer, in some cases shorter. It would, I would appreciate a consistency check, particularly consistency with what is it written in the development agreement in the previous resolutions. So we don't have to get into that now.
So in terms of, in terms of referencing council goals?
Yeah, just making sure that.
Okay, I know, I know we did go through that at one point, but I will.
Yeah, we'll change the law since then, yeah. Thank you.
All right, and I think with my suggestion, something got, something's wrong with it. So.
Yeah, I have no idea about this.
Yeah, so let me just, I had sent this to council, let me just read, do you what, sorry, it's on my phone, and I need to get it now, because what's in here was what Councilwoman DiBala and I were working on, in case we couldn't do it in this resolution as a separate thing. But basically, what the goal is here is to define the goal, the goals for the type of retail for the Tacoma Junction project include maintaining the unique character of the community and the appeal of Tacoma Junction, protecting the area's economic vitality by ensuring a diversity of businesses with sufficient opportunities for independent entrepreneurs, and fostering businesses that serve the basic needs of the surrounding neighborhood. And I was suggesting a resolved clause, so we're not quite in the resolved clauses, but it's here, that for the project at Tacoma Junction, the city bars formula retail use, defined as retail sales or service establishment that has 11 or more retail sales establishments in operation in Washington DC, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, or 20 or more nationwide establishments without a vote of city council approval. So basically, what this means is, it would, I know a number of residents have expressed concerns about, and this just came up before, about having chain stores or what are called formula businesses, which are basically businesses that you go into one, it's like, you could go in anywhere, and it's the same exact thing, same interior, design, uniforms, everything. And what we're saying is, that's not what we want there.
So, so I'll have to, maybe I need to spend a little time with you. It is in an added resolved clause.
Oh, there is, okay, then I'm.
11 and 12.
I'm sorry, I was here, and then I got confused from our conversation earlier in the day.
Right, so it, it. So then this whole whereas business is, we thought we were gonna have to have a separate resolution.
Right, that's why we added some of this.
Put a whole bunch of whereas's in there, just to have a draft. But we don't, it sounds like we don't need it.
So how does this cover a franchise?
So in the information.
That's a good question.
So the information, the background information that I provided to council on Monday night that was based on the work that I was given from IILSR, talks about, like, Ace Hardware doesn't fall underneath this, because they're, they're not technically a formula business. They are, and, sorry, I'm gonna refer to my phone, because it's late and I don't want to misspeak, but I specifically asked about, like, someplace like Ace Hardware, and that would not be because it's a cooperative, the stores are independently owned, and they collect, and they collectively own the Ace wholesale buying co-op. The stores tend to be much more varied and different from one another than a chain or a franchise. As such, they don't count as a formula business. So that's the example.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, I think it's gonna be one of these things where there's some, you know, so there's gonna be some back and forth on certain situations, and that's why you've put in the option that the council could vote approval if there's, if there's one of these kinds of questions.
Right, and the thing is, it doesn't, in looking at the background resources that I circulated to council on Monday night, it doesn't necessarily bar a type of business, but if a business was coming in, they'd have to change so that they fit the character of the community.
Do we have the right to insist, to be able to vote to approve that, because we own the land, is that why?
So the, so my understanding is that in a normal circumstance, because you have a development agreement, that would be something that would be in the development agreement. That, that was not part of the development agreement. My understanding is that Adrian Washington is comfortable with this language. You know, normally, this would be, you know, if there is a development agreement, it would be in a development agreement, or in a ground lease arrangement, or in an ordinance.
You know, normally this would be, you know, if there is a development agreement, it would be in a development agreement or in a ground lease arrangement or in an ordinance. So this is a little different. Nevertheless, this is workable, provided that various parties agree to it.
Yeah, and I think it goes to what I've heard from many in the community is this nervousness about what kind of businesses are we attracting? And it doesn't answer all those questions, but I think it gets us a step further. And in addition, that there is, you know, in my conversations with Mr. Washington about this, he said, this has been his intent, but also having this written in, we should know that when he goes for his financing and figures out that, these types of things are marks against, you know, getting financing for a project. But he said this has been his intent, and he understands the concerns being raised by the community.
From the staff's perspective, we're a little bit nervous about it. Because the most important thing here is that also that we have a successful project. And so if there's something that very much hampers it from a marketing perspective, which we may not know what the situation is fifteen years from now, it's awfully, you know, it's, it's a fairly significant thing. Nevertheless, NDC is comfortable with it. It does allow for a council vote to, to change their opinion, so that's fine. Okay.
Can I ask a further agreement?
Yeah.
A, a further question. Did, did we get a response on the question of whether it's even possible to specify minority-owned businesses or some other kind of definition of business besides?
I don't know if we've got an answer on that. I don't, I don't think we've gotten an answer on that.
So anyway, I think we can clean up the whereas clauses, because I think there's some in here that don't necessarily need to be in here.
Right. I think this is good, and I think I'd like to know about the other, the other piece of that too, what I just asked.
All right, I'm sorry, it is on page eleven. It's a resolve clause. I got confused. So maybe we should do a show of hands for this one, considering it's a fairly substantial change. The one, the one I just put on the table.
Eleven.
Page eleven, the resolve.
So it's a fairly substantial change at twelve forty-three at night.
Well, you're still gonna vote on it on July twenty-fifth, so you still have the next week and a half to, or to whatever it is, to, two weeks to consider it. And I did send it around Monday evening and talk to you about it yesterday afternoon.
And split it across two pages? Okay.
We don't have a page eleven.
No, you don't have, that's, this is in addition, that's not in your, in that. So are we good to do a handover on this? All right, all those in favor of adding this to the resolution, please raise your hand. Sorry, what's wrong?
I think it's not wrong, it's just that I, I would like.
Put on your mic, I'm sorry.
Sorry, so. Sorry. It's not wrong, it's just that my initial read of formula retail was different a little bit than what was described, and so I would like, you know, maybe when it's not one, to kind of look into it a little bit more, to just make sure that I'm fully understanding this definition.
All right, so for now, it'll make its way into the next draft. And then if we have other questions, and I have other background material I can share in addition to the email I shared Monday night. All right. So then moving on to line four eighteen. There were, Councilwoman DeBala. No, we had to clean up that stuff, yeah.
Okay, give me a minute.
Line four eighteen, to be further resolved. Councilmember DeBala has a recommended modification.
We are on page, at the bottom of page nine, and so for those of you who are following along at home.
Your, your mic.
Your mic.
It's the last resolved in the entire agreement, the one about the would like to see improvements, I think.
Yep.
Nope.
It's the.
It's line four eighteen.
It's the second resolved quote.
I'm sorry.
It's just up here, right?
Too many pieces of paper. Yeah, I'm just trying. Okay, so, so, yeah, yeah, my intent was to not, to not have the city unintentionally recommend one particular way of reconfiguring the junction. Because the traffic impact analysis, as it now stands, puts forward one specific with the slip lane and the triangle of a certain size, not a different size, and so that's, that's why the change.
At an earlier part in the resolution, we mentioned there are several alternatives.
Exactly.
I flagged this one for the same reason, so I think that's.
So this is to clean that up. And I, and on four twenty-two, I'd like to see a change also along those lines.
Actually, Ms. Grimsby, could you come to the mic for a second? On, on this one, I just want to get a clarification about, with you, about what happens when the development review process starts with the county. When, so the, the traffic study, right, had a, you know, kind of a preferred option to get under the, to meet the standards that the county has. That doesn't mean that that's the one that would go forward, is that correct? How does that, how does that happen when it goes to the county?
So for the development review process, when the submission goes to the county, there are agencies, representatives from multiple agencies of the county, including State Highway, weighing in on this. So I think what you're asking is how far along they have to be in this process?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's, it's not saying that just because they drew one version that worked, that, that that's the way that it's gonna come out. Because it's gotta, that goes through a much more back and forth process with State Highway and whatever. And certainly, we've had the discussions with State Highway that they want to be very active in that design. So I think it's appropriate to acknowledge somewhere in here that just because they came through with a, a particular design, doesn't mean that that's what's likely even to be.
Can I note just in the, in the whereas clause on page, on line three twenty-five through three thirty-four, it specifically says, the traffic studies recommend a reconfiguration of the Tacoma Junction intersection and provide several potential alternative configurations that can improve traffic flow, as well as increase safety and access for pedestrians and cyclists and transit users. So to have that there, and then this other one later seeming to say there's this one recommendation seems off to me, so.
Okay, so.
I agree with Councilmember DeBala's formulation.
I finally underst, I'm sorry, I finally understand what your point was on this, sorry, councilmembers. So, you know, it's, along with its traffic impact analysis, so then indicating that, you know, recommendations for reconfiguration of the junction, intersection.
Okay, so we're good on that one?
I might, I might word it a little bit differently.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest maybe we could just say along with its traffic impact, impact analysis and recommendation to reconfigure the intersection, or something like that.
Sure, we, we phrase it somehow, it's fine.
Okay, did you get that?
We'll clean that up a little bit.
All right. All right, Councilmember Kovar, you're up.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Ten to one.
So, and we're on page ten, right?
Yep.
So if a version of this were to be approved, then we might also want to go back, as we did with the other changes, to have something first in the mod, in the whereas modifications and then in the resolve clause. For now, we can just talk about it here. So this is one of the central points for me, and it's about the, about the public space. And so as I mentioned earlier, and I'll just say it here too, we have control over this in a way that, total control over it pretty much, because I don't see State Highway or, or Historic Preservation saying, hey, guys, you need more public space, right? That's our thing. And in contrast to some of the other public spaces in, in the city, a key purpose of, of this development is to draw people to patronize the commercial establishment. So, yeah, some people will go to the second floor offices, but the major draw will be at street level. And, you know, there's nine to ten months of the year when gathering for varying lengths of time outside is practical. If you look at the building by Bus Boys and Poets, not where the outside tables are, but the rest of it by Larry Silverman's store and on down, that sidewalk is just ten to twelve feet wide, there's no outside tables there. No one gathers there, they just walk on through. So I don't think an eight-foot-wide sidewalk is really, becomes a gathering space. And I think people look at the, the comparison to the gazebo and say, well, that's about the same, and not that many people gather, except for occasional special events, like we had that memorial vigil at one time and things, things of that nature, and occasionally the music. But one reason not many people do gather there is because there's nothing else to draw them there, there's no stores there. The whole purpose of this development is to draw people to these stores. People are going to want to come there to patronize the various stores if we get the right mix, and then to not have the space, I think, is the problem. And, you know, I've talked to Adrian Washington about this, and he said, well, you know, if you don't want to have too much space. Well, if you have too much space, you put tables, you put chessboards, you do the fountain that people talk about periodically. If you don't have enough space, there's never any way to get the additional space. And so to me, you know, the, the statement that, well, it's bigger than the gazebo space. Well, in the newsletter, there's an analysis, and it's, it's like seven square feet bigger. They're basically the same size, it's not like vastly bigger. So I thought a lot about, there's this fifty thousand, or maybe it's about forty-eight thousand square feet right now development, and a lot of people have said it around thirty-four thousand, and I agree with the mayor, we never promised that, but that's an amount that's very strongly supported by a lot of people, a lot of people in the community are telling, if you get to thirty-four thousand feet, they'd be happy. And as I mentioned earlier, I think it's really important to try to find some sort of middle ground. So my idea was to split the difference between fifty thousand and thirty-four, and you get to about forty. And so what that means and represents, and I'll just, I'll just read the numbers here, because I did the calculation, and if you just give me a moment to do that, it would end up, you know, if you, if you carve out the extra space, you have it on both floors, so you don't get all of it as public gathering space, but I think it would be an extra thirty-six hundred square feet. So it'd be more than doubling the effect of open space. And it's more than NDC would like, it's less than a lot of people in the community like. It's maybe a way to find a, a middle ground. And, you know, if it doesn't pass muster with NDC, then we continue the discussion with them. But I think it's really important that we get that on, on the record. And, you know, my view is that when the concept plan came out and we responded with that October resolution, obviously, we have some different people on the council now, but I really don't think that when we said you need more public space, we were all sort of thinking, it'll be a something, little thing that size. I think a lot of us probably thought it would be bigger. This would be a way to get that.
May I, may I though, I do want to identify that this is not just up to the city. So one of the things that is important is what's the street frontage and the setback, and that's a requirement of, in the building process. And it's already set back, that ten feet back, which is out of the building line. And so having a change could, may not be able to be approvable. So I just wanted to clarify that it, it's not just a city determination, there, there will be a, an examination of what the appropriate.
I guess.
Could you, hang on, just clarification. Not approvable by?
By the county.
The county.
You're, I think you're, I don't think I'm being clear. What I'm saying is that none of those other entities are gonna say to, hey, guys, you want to have more public space. That's not what, that's not what their job is.
No, I, I appreciate that, but they may.
They may say we can't.
But they may, you cannot, you cannot move there.
But we're the, we're the only ones who are gonna ask for it. State Highway's not gonna say, you want to have more public space. And Historic Preservation is gonna say, make it lower, make it setback, break up the facade, but they're not gonna say, you really need more public space here. That's, if we don't ask for it, we're not gonna get it. And if we don't ask for it now, or whenever we vote on it, we're not gonna get it. So I think it's really important, and I think it's a, it would be a blow for some effort to reduce the divisiveness. I realize there'll be plenty of people who don't like this, who will say, that's not enough, and there'll be plenty of other people like it, say, why are you doing that? But there might be a lot of other people who would feel good about it, and I would certainly feel good about it.
Councilwoman DeBala, did you have your light on to respond to this, or?
Yeah, I, I I hesitate to say anything, because I'm starting to lose it, but I've thought about, a lot about this, and I've talked with a number of folks about this. And while I would like to see more public space, I worry that it will result in potentially even higher rents in the front retail space, and we're already pushing the limit there, I think, on what's reasonable in the junction as opposed to some other part of the city. And I worry that it won't result, that, that it won't, a little bit more space is not gonna really do us much. It's not what the square feet are, it's how they're used and how they're laid out. So I'm also concerned about the economic, at some point, this affects the economic viability of the project beyond just how much you charge for the rents in the front. And Peter and I have had this conversation.
I would just say.
So this is, I'm not looking at him, but he's already heard it.
I know.
So, so I'm not as, I'm not as convinced, although I, I wish.
I would just say two things. One, we can negotiate against ourselves if we want and say, NDC will never approve it, so let's not ask. I don't really prefer to do that. Well, now we're telling, and if they don't want it, they can explain why. I mean, I just don't understand why we would just, at this point, say, that's the last offer, and there'll, and there'll never be anything else. I understand I may be an minority on it, but I would like to see this.
All right. Anyone else wanna speak to this?
Sure, I'll say something. I, I agree with Councilmember DeBala's comments on this. I think it's important to me, and it was important to me to include that previous clause, that we don't go below twenty-seven hundred square feet. But I am concerned about the economic viability and, and the rents, as well as what impact adding a small amount more would really do. And, you know, I think there's also a substantial amount of public space in the BYU Morrison Park area. From the estimates I've seen, it's around six thousand to nine thousand square feet. So I think that's a pretty substantial space. And given that, I don't think we're, we're lacking in public space so much that an additional fifteen percent here is really gonna make an impact.
Well, I don't want to continue any longer, I would just say, if it's really not that much, then it's just as easy for them to do it. And.
Councilmembers, Beth?
I'll just be quick and say I will support Councilmember Kovar's proposal. I don't know what NDC is gonna say, but I want to go on the record and say I'm going to support.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I refer back to my earlier comment. I think that the additional public space we need that would be more beneficial to the community would be as a tenant in the, in the building rather than a few feet on the front of the building.
And I think I made my comments when we had this conversation back on May twenty-third. I would just say I agree with Councilwoman DeBala and Caustic and Councilmember Siemens on this one, and I think I was in a different place a few months ago, until we started looking at the layout of this and then talking to some people like David Cronrath, who has been consulting with the city on this project, and really thinking about how, how you do placemaking and create a space where people do want to gather. And so taking that with the considerations that have been said before, and then also thinking about what is really Main Street development and what that means, and where storefronts should be. I, I don't support moving forward with this in the next iteration. Yep, I just want to make sure, anybody else want to talk? All right. All those in favor of adding this to the? All those in favor of adding this to the resolution, please raise your hand. All right, that's two people. So that one doesn't get in. Next line.
So to be clear, that's just what doesn't get in now, right?
If you want to bring it back again on July 25th, that is your prerogative, but I think this is the second time that this council has voted, a majority has voted against it.
Okay.
Well, I would be happy to vote against it.
At some point, we.
How about we say the next time we vote on it, it's after 2:00 a.m. We don't vote on it again.
Don't say that. You can go with what you wish for, yeah?
All right, next one, line 423, the resolve, further resolve clause. Councilmember Kovar had an addition.
This is very simple. Currently, the language says that we're going to schedule a work session in September 2018 to discuss the extent to which the two negotiators in the mediation have reached a mutual agreement. And then if applicable, we may require, there may be required changes to the draft site plan to address those reasonable accommodations. So I think what's missing here is the idea that it's important for us to, after that work session, maybe it's all great and everything's set and we don't have to do anything. That's what I'm hoping for. But if there are some changes required connected to that mediation, or if the mediation hasn't been successful, then it's going to be important for us to go back to the county and say, hey, guys, we need to make, we need to make some changes. And I think it's important for us to flag for the county, you may be hearing from us. That's the purpose of this.
Okay, are you all right with that?
I would, I would suggest that we just take out that weather clause after, so if such changes are required, comma, we just take out the weather because of mutual agreement between NDC and the TBS co-op or otherwise. I don't think it's really relevant to specify that, and I think it's better to just leave it open.
Well, the reason I put that in, I appreciate that, but the reason I put that in is because when you read the initial language, it says, we're going to have that work session to discuss the extent to which they've reached agreement, and determining if the reasonable accommodations have been fully satisfied, and if applicable, that means if they've been fully satisfied, may require changes. What if they haven't been fully satisfied? That's not, that's not covered there.
I guess my intention on the way this, end of this part was written, was that if the discussions about reasonable accommodations had a site plan element, then, you know, that's, that's when you would have to do a change to the draft site plan. I mean, so.
Well, what if, for example, and I can't imagine what this would be, but there's some aspect of the mediation that's unsuccessful, and the way to address that lack of success, if we were still to feel that reasonable accommodations hadn't been met, called for some changes to the site plan?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, and it's fine, I think it's fine.
But that's what the weather is in there for.
Yeah, to me, it just seems irrelevant whether it's a mutual agreement between NDC and the co-op or otherwise, or it just seems.
Well, the language says it's only when they have achieved reasonable accommodations. That's what the language currently says.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
I mean, what the language says is if reasonable accommodations are met, then we, then we can tell them about it. It doesn't say what, that we could tell them if reasonable accommodation was not met.
Okay, that's reasonable, all right.
But is this okay? Maybe later today.
Yeah, well.
We, I mean, we'll be looking all this stuff over again, right?
Yeah. All right, so that's, Councilwoman Kostick had an addition regarding tree stuff.
Yeah, my brain is probably not going to work very well on this, but so related.
Before we leave the call, so will we, we'll get, at what point would we, if we get comments from the co-op about the language in the resolution, the second set of comments, at what point would we look at them?
We're also trying to schedule a meeting for next week.
Would it be a separate meeting? Okay, thank you. I just want to get that clear.
We, we're emailing today because of the Fourth of July holiday and other things.
Right.
You know, if there, it's better, I thought, it's better to sit down and actually understand the intent of some changes so that we could do that, so.
Does that work? Okay, that works, great.
No, no. Oh, that's like, I'm gracious, just saying.
I know, we got to get to the airport, we got to get done with this.
Yes, I don't want to miss my flight.
All right, so I'll go quickly here. This was in line 230, or after line 230, to add, and I don't know if that's the best place for it, but somewhere in the resolution to add, be it further resolved, that the council will, will require this project to utilize a standard tree permit process like a private property would, while providing for council to review, council review and final decision-making authority. I don't know if that's the greatest wording on it. Basically, this is to address.
To capture the.
What the city manager mentioned earlier regarding the change in our original understanding of how this process would work.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, do you, I don't know that this actually is the right way to word it, and I think that there was still to be a few conversations about that, but I understand the intent, and I think the intent is close to what it would be. The way that the city code reads is the city manager has the final authority. So it would be in consultation with you because that's how these things work. But, but the code is clear on this, on that particular element.
While providing for council review and final decision-making authority, even without the final decision-making, any decision-making, adding this is another task for the council.
Okay.
Do we want to be involved in that?
I was just going to say, I mean, I think we, I think we just want to provide to have like a substantively similar review process. But, but I think we do want to stick with the city manager having determination, but obviously, she answers to you all, and if she's hearing that you're not satisfied, then that'll influence her decision.
Deciding whether or not to fire the city manager is probably easier than deciding on a tree issue.
You're probably true about that.
So, I mean, maybe, maybe it's more appropriate for there to be a whereas clause regarding our understanding of what your role would be in that or something, or how you would handle that or something like that. I don't have a clear idea about what that would be right now.
Given our city attorney's communication earlier, late yesterday or whatever, maybe we can word this just a little differently to reflect that.
That sounds good.
And send it back out.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kovar had an addition to the resolve clause on line 438.
This is, just briefly, this is about how we're going to work with, we're going to work with NDC to minimize negative construction impacts on area businesses and residents, and also the Tacoma Junction businesses for continuity of operations. Again, that's, I agree, I thought we should put a little meat on that. I said the council will consider, I would take something stronger than that, will seek, but the adoption of a written agreement, memorandum of understanding, or something similar between the city and NDC in order to help ensure that those goals are achieved. So, you know, I think we would probably do that anyway, but, you know, things like how early in the day they're going to be able to do the work, I mean, this is the kind of thing that I think.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually a standard process with any construction project, that you have to have a whole, you know, what are the criteria for, the standards of operation. And so is that something that typically the city council would take a look at? It's not, it's, it's not usually, it's something that, you know, if there's a particular business interest that we share with that council member, but in this case, obviously, you're all interested, so we'd share.
I'm not sure the adoption of a written agreement, that seems like maybe.
Well, some, maybe the city will, the city will seek.
Again, it's the same kind of thing, I don't want this to get stuck in.
What, we just said the city will seek a.
Yeah.
A written agreement. I didn't mean to say we had to.
Yeah, we do it like a.
Yeah, and that's the only thing, I just don't want to add a layer of like.
Because often, there's the whole thing about what your noise plan is and all of the things.
Yeah, I don't need to look at that.
So if the city seeks it, are you fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are you fine with that, Susan?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, no, look at all of that for it.
I think so. I would, I would just personally, when we get that far, if we get that far, I would be interested, especially because the Greek construction stuff. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, it's a big deal.
Would it be possible for us to go ahead and add like a work session or something where we could bring NDC in to actually have them talk through some of the concessions that they're going to make for businesses? I know that, you know, as it relates to the purple line, that's been really helpful to have them come in, talk about what their plans are, and then to have people have an opportunity to raise concerns because they live in the area and they know what it's like every day. So that might be something that we want to consider adding.
I think that's fine. They actually are required to go out and do some, some of these public meetings in any event. That's still a requirement that they need to do. But on this particular thing, it's a very standard thing to have those kinds of discussions before construction projects so that you can make sure that you really talk it out. I'm, I'm certain that that would be something we'd set up, and I, whether or not it's a work session.
I don't know.
I think it's probably a different session makes a little more sense, but happy to share that also in a work session.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
While we're on the topic, I know it's late, it would be important to me to get periodic updates if we get, if this, if this resolution moves forward, if it passes and this goes to the county review process, it would be very important to me, and I think to a lot of the residents in the city, to hear periodic, like as in biweekly maybe, updates, even if they're brief, from the city manager at the council meeting, just so people know where we're at with the county process. Yes, I think we have referenced that. Yeah, I don't see why we have to have it in. No, we don't need to have it in here. The resolution, I just want it, while we're on the topic. Thank you.
All right. The next one, I think, is, was part of the confusion that Councilwoman DiBala and I created yesterday. So basically, on the next additional one, ignore the second paragraph and look at the first one. And Councilwoman DiBala, do you want to walk people through it? It's on page 12.
So are you, are you doing it with the affordable housing?
Yeah, so basically, yes, it's, be it further resolved that the council dedicates the revenues received from the ground lease on this project to the city's Affordable Housing Fund or its successor, and will consider dedicating a percentage of other project revenues to this fund when it is able to comprehensively discuss this action in context of other actions recommended in the draft Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. So basically, it goes back to.
So you recognize the ground lease goes up a lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just, you know, it, it doesn't for a while, but then it really does. And so that, that may be a, that may be more funds than you want going to one particular thing. My idea was that when we are able to put this in context with the other things that we're considering to deal with affordable housing and other equity-related issues, that, that, that at that point, we, we could adjust. But my intent was to say, as of now, we want to, as I said before, put a down, down payment on, we want to get started. We don't want to wait till we, till the fall or whenever we can get to the bigger package. So however, it makes sense to phrase that.
So should there be, should there be a number of years that are associated with?
That's a good question.
Five years, 10 years, 15 years?
At least five years and revisit?
Right.
I think you need a revisiting point. All right, let's do that. I mean, I think it's in general a cool idea, but I think you need a revisiting point. Well, and I recognize what people said earlier tonight, that it's not a lot of money now. But again, my, my intent is that we seriously address this in the fall when we can look at the other options.
If and when it becomes more money, it may be well needed, too.
Yeah. So we'll put some language in here about revisiting it. Or maybe it's just where, yeah.
So, so I just have a general question. So in my mind, something like this doesn't necessarily fit in this resolution because it pertains to how we, as a city, plan to manage the funds from this. So in, in my view, this would be something that we will table as we start to discuss the implementation plan from the Housing and Economic Plan, and then consider this as a funding source for implementing or acting on some of the recommendations that the consultants noted.
This is why we drafted a separate resolution yesterday, last night, and so it's waiting in the wings if that's the preferred way to do it.
Well, I, I was, I was thinking, if we can't just really have the money flow just from this resolution, why couldn't we just say, but it's important to make the point, couldn't we just say the council, you know, commits to dedicate this, subject to, you know, future implementing resolution or something like that, right? So that, because this, we can't just do it with this, right?
Every year, you set a budget, and so you're not, you can't really commit future years. There's, there are these things that, you know, you've set, you've set policies recently about the reserve level, that kind of thing, so you could put that as, as that kind of a policy.
But you can always revise it as you go along, each year, right?
So the idea of a policy is to not have.
I think it's great to do this, and I accidentally only credited it to Councilmember DiBala and not to Mayor Stewart when I was talking about it earlier, and they were both the leaders on this, and I think we should do it.
And I think Councilwoman DiBala, one of the points that she made yesterday to me is that, God, I'm really tired, I'm sorry, is actually like, is, is doing something now that was important to you, you said.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to demonstrate.
Demonstrate the commitment and move this forward, so.
So are we back to a companion resolution?
This is what got, this is what got me to the council meeting tonight.
Well, thank you, and I'm sorry it took till this late to get to the punchline here.
So I, I think we can, we can maybe work with staff and figure out if this and possibly the issue I brought to the table are more appropriate for a separate resolution, or does it go in this one?
Yeah, I'd like to work with the city attorney on, on how that works.
Yeah. Okay, is that good?
Okay, so as far as having an action now, whether it's in this resolution or in a companion piece, rather than waiting a few months, do we need a sense of the group, or is everybody kind of on board with that piece?
Are people comfortable with moving forward with some commitment right away of putting money from the ground lease into our housing reserve, adding language about revisiting this, and also revisiting it when we get to the draft Housing and Economic Development Strategy? How many people are okay with that?
We're doing both.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Good? All right. Next, line 442, the resolve clause. This is, wow, everybody liked this one, Councilmember DiBala, Kovar, and Kostick. This is, be it further resolved that the council supports improvements to the traffic load, including a reconfiguration of the section. All right, so this is just basically.
I think there's actually, there are actually three different, each of us had a slightly different wording.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Lord.
Wait, I only have one.
If you go onto the next page, there's.
Oh, I see.
There are two other ones.
I think Casey tried to blend the other two.
I tried to bring them together.
So if you look at number three, it might be a little bit more comprehensive.
Yeah, so I, I said, be it further resolved that the council will continue to work with SHA on reconfiguration of the Tacoma Junction intersection and/or other measures to improve traffic flow. The council will prioritize the safety and flow of people walking, biking, and using public transit, give consideration to historic preservation, and seek to minimize cut-through traffic on nearby streets.
Sounds awesome.
Okay.
Councilwoman Kostick and, DiBala and Kovar, are you good with that?
I would prefer if it said and other measures, not and/or other measures. So line two, and/or other measures. I would prefer to say and other measures.
All right.
And I totally agree on the, the walking, biking, et cetera.
Is that okay with you? All right.
Okay, so we're taking up or?
Or.
Okay.
I think we are done.
I would just like to end by saying that this has been a lot more fun than designing speed bumps.
Designing speed bumps. It actually really is.
All right, we're adjourned.
How long was that work session?